Board of Education, I would like to welcome you to the January 12th, 2022 Board Meeting. To comply with the recent state made mask mandate, we ask everyone to please wear a mask. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Citizen participation is scheduled on the agenda for approximately 5:15 and 6:30 PM. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby. Speakers are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Also, Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now like a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. I now would like a motion for the approval of the unapproved work session minutes of December 6, 2021 Strategic Plan.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I now would like entertain a motion on the approval of the unapproved Board meeting minutes for December 8, 2021.
Submit.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Kyler, I do have one comment on page two in the paragraph that starts Mr. O'Neill reported, just part of the way down, it says a 3% salary minimum guarantee salary increase. I think we want to just cross out a 3% salary minimum guarant-- there's some double wording there. If we pass out, if we cross out the minimum and second word salary. Am I on the wrong ones?
Yeah, I don't see where you are, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I must be on the wrong set of minutes.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't find it, sorry.
Oh, I apologize, I was looking at them, I thought we were voting before, we were past, we were voting on the main minutes, not the, not the board session.
Okay, this is the December 8.
Okay, I'm okay with those.
No comments?
No comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. The Carroll County Student Government Report.
So, good evening, Board members. First off, I would like to thank Devonchi for giving my CCSG report in December in my stead, so it's good to be back. CCSG held a staff meeting just yesterday to discuss our plans for the coming months, and we have another meeting planned sometime this month. We garnered more staff members interested in leading a session about the CCPS navigating difficult waters event and offering mental health resources to our community. CCSG values the mental health of our students and teachers, and of course, apathy has been growing rampant in our community since the onset of the pandemic, so we hope that an increase in outlets and mental health resources will reignite some empathy within our communities again. We understand that with COVID-19, our future general assemblies will most likely have to be virtual, but we are still optimistic about the turnout because just as CCSG has done in past years, we will be hosting a February General Assembly that focuses primarily on the election of the Shrub-Elect. We have just reviewed the process of electing the new Shrub for the 2023-2024 school year, and we are currently working on reworking our Shrub election procedures in our constitution and our bylaws. We are excited to see how this year's elections turned out, thank you, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Public comments, Ms. Pataglia?
To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session, however, if citizens have specific questions, the Superintendent will assign a staff member to make sure, to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The Superintendent Board reserves the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a really recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personal matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individuals, staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is intended for the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak, therefore the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation at approximately 5:15 and 6:30. Today we have 22 so far, so we will allow all 22 at the time. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes has passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for the Board members on the back table of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Our first speaker, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce last names, Josh Tripavoski.
All right, I have kids at Pine Ridge Elementary. This Board cannot proceed with its politically-neutral stance policy as written because you have included language in it that will allow bad actors like Moms for Liberty to use it to ban diversity, equity, and inclusion, and other good ideas. Parents, our kids are being used as pawns to gain political power at school boards and other elections. How do I know this? Because only those in an echo chamber walk around calling everything Marxist and Communist. That language comes from Fox News and Christopher Rufo. Christopher Rufo, as quoted in The New Yorker last year, quote, "We've needed new language for these cultural issues, and critical race theory is the perfect villain." When people resisted school integration, do you know what they called it? Marxist and Communist. Affirmative action? Marxist and Communist. The Civil Rights Act? Marxist and Communist. Gay marriage? Marxist and Communist. Don't allow organizations like Moms for Liberty to use our kids for their nefarious agenda. Moms for Liberty sounds nice, right? In Tennessee, the Moms for Liberty are using their anti-CRT efforts to ban the books MLK and The March on Washington and Ruby Bridges Goes to School. How fitting that on the eve of his federal holiday, Moms for Liberty tried to ban the teaching of Martin Luther King Jr. Moms for Liberty in Texas are part of the effort to ban books that you and I read in school like To Kill a Mockingbird and Of Mice and Men. Only fascists ban books, everyone knows that. Concerned parents of Carroll County, on your website, you whitewash Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech by falsely saying it advocates for colorblindness. Instead, MLK advocated for color kindness, and the only way we achieve his dream is by exposing our kids to the true reality of our country's history so they can build empathy for their fellow countrymen. How do I know MLK's true intent? Because his daughter, Reverend Bernice King, just spoke on this in Atlanta, quote, "We can't commemorate Martin Luther King Jr. on the one hand while also promoting false narratives under the banner of critical race theory." The whitewashed public education in America is a big reason why racial division has been a generational American problem. Again, from the concerned parents of Carroll County website, you say you want your kids to tolerate but not openly celebrate LGBTQ values. If I were LGBTQ, that tells me, you can sit in our schools, but keep your mouth shut and be happy we allow you to exist here, just like black kids were told in the 60s. Parents, do not fall for the fake outrage over CRT and DEI. Don't let Moms for Liberty drag our kids into their political agenda. Don't let minority and LGBTQ kids be the collateral damage that anti-CRT proponents will surely cause. If left unchanged, this Board's politically-neutral stance policy will be used by bad actors to further whitewash our public education and perpetuate the racial divide that has always existed in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Gary Foote.
Superintendent Lockard, Commissioner Weaver. It is a truth universally acknowledged that students in Carroll County public schools have suffered a year and a half of learning loss. This should be the focus of every school board conversation, the top agenda item for every meeting, and the central issue that guides every decision. I think everyone in the room agrees with that, and yet it is not happening. Unfortunately, we are the problem. We seem to be talking about almost everything but what is most important. At the high school level, our tutoring program ended in December, right when students needed help the most. We are ending the semester in 10 days, and some students are still trying to make up work that was due from before the winter break. We have students in and out because of sickness, quarantine, and other issues. Are we committed to eliminating this achievement gap, or will we allow it to persist for the next generation? I know what I hope your answer is, but I need to see you make a commitment with actions as opposed to words. Now, I am willing to basically keep plugging away, but how many others will do the same? And how are we going to recruit the next generation of teachers when this is what we offer them? And how are we going to recruit from other states knowing that there has always been a gap between the number of teachers Maryland requires and the number of candidates that are state graduates? We know what we need to do to dig ourselves out of this hole. First of all, our schools must be made safe. Am I telling you anything that you haven't already heard? But we need to make sure that we're washing our hands, and we have adequate ventilation, social distancing, vaccination, and of course, we need to use masks. And hey, let's use the masks that are, that have been proven to be the most effective, N95. You should be repeating these strategies every time you make public comments. Yes, the next month, or maybe a little bit after that, will be a rough time. What is our plan for weathering the storm? Everyone should know it. And finally, you have got to stop antagonizing the very people who are going to do the work of implementing whatever you decide. If your actions don't live up to your words, I guess you must really have nothing to say.
Next speaker is Tom Scallion.
It's Scanlon. We have a great school system, the best in the state of Maryland. I spent most of my adult life working here for CCPS, and it grieves me to see our schools and these meetings being torn apart by politics. Now is the time for us to work together to return us to our pre-pandemic excellence. I have three topics I wanted to touch on very briefly. Number one, the safety of our students and staff has to come first. It's in the strategic plan, pillar four, to provide a safe and secure environment. We need to provide N95 or KN95 masks to all staff and students who need them, and we need to provide home test kits for all staff, like other counties are now doing. And I hope you discuss this tonight and vote on it. Second thing, we say we appreciate our teachers, but we don't trust them to teach. We respect them, but only so far. Well, you can't have it both ways. Morale is already low enough. We have wasted valuable time and resources on an unnecessary update to the political neutrality policy. As I said back in October, educators are very aware that they are to remain politically neutral. There was an adequate policy in place, and it's also covered in the master agreement, Article 5. What I object to is the implicit message that teachers are not trusted as professionals and that they will be punished if necessary. It's insulting. If you're going to open that door, it has to swing both ways and include everybody. So please don't feed the false narrative that our teachers are indoctrinating our children. Let's be real, if teachers had that much influence, they would indoctrinate their students to do their homework. So, tonight, before you vote on this policy, first, discuss the costs involved and how it will be fairly implemented. The policy must include specific guardrails that need to be in place to prevent personal or frivolous charges made against educators. And if you've worked in a school system, you know it is going to happen. And finally, number three, I worry that the superintendent's search to replace Dr. Lockard will also be dominated by politics. There are no controls to prevent fraudulent use of the online search survey. The same individual or organization could fill out the form numerous times. There is absolutely no guarantee that the person filling out the form has a student in CCPS, or that the person even lives in Carroll County, or Maryland for that matter. The superintendent's search must be open, transparent, and free from political influence. So we have a lot of important work to do, so let's work together for our children and for our schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Sekesa?
Sasca. Sasca. It is such a perverse sense of justice that is possessed by those who advocate for critical race theory. CRT says that in order to right prior injustice, we must perpetuate the same crime on the white people, that's what was done to black people long ago. That is, white people must step aside from their positions in society, whether it be in the workforce, political office, wherever, solely so someone with a dark skin tone may occupy this position, regardless of their qualifications. It is an injustice to white people today who are far removed from the sin of slavery and an insult to our black citizens in that they may know that they only occupy such positions because they are black. Only in a fool's mind will this seem reasonable, and no way can it produce the effect for which it is intended. Instead of building black people up to the same capabilities as whites, we take the easy way out, don't solve the problem, and simply lower the standards by which we measure our fellow man. The ignorant can take solace in that they create some measure of equality, if only it be equal poverty. But I reject the premise, as all the good and wise amongst us do, that a person, especially our youth, should be divided up and told they are either a good or bad person solely on the basis of their skin color. This is the essence of critical race theory and is repugnant to our way of life. We see the results of this doctrine in our criminal justice system. The perverse sense of justice lets black criminals go free while they terrorize our communities with the justification that it keeps another black man out of prison. But this is not the way to do this, and who can say it is good when we see the crime statistics? Instead of punishing the wicked regardless of race and keeping them from poisoning another generation of our youth, we feel pity and show leniency that they might change their ways. The ignorant pat themselves on the back for their benevolence. This same perverse sense of justice is now present in our schools where black kids are showing leniency for misbehavior. This compounds the already precarious upbringing of many of our youth by denying them the lesson of discipline and a stable educational atmosphere. Here we now see the folly of critical race theory, which puts forth the notion that if we simply use a shorter yardstick, we can help achieve equal outcomes between blacks and whites. Thank you.
Next speaker is Belinda Lawson.
Hi, my name is Belinda Lawson, and I'll be back every single Board meeting until I know my daughter will eventually be in a politically-neutral classroom when returning to CCPS. Frederick Douglass, Booker T. Washington, Rosa Parks, Martin Luther King Jr. and Senior, Harriet Tubman, Archer Fletcher, James Weldon Johnson, Edward Brooke, Edwin Williams, Leroy Cleaver, William Thaddeus Coleman, Charles Evers. One thing all of these amazing black leaders have in common, they were all Republicans. Say their names. These are heroes, they changed this country for the better, not the worst. These are the names that should be written on the walls in major cities and taught to our children. Why don't they want us to know these names? Instead, they want us to remember criminals who aren't successful in their lives, and they want us to idolize them so minorities can continue believing the narrative that we can't do anything. Yes, we can. This isn't about eliminating history, this is about teaching accurate history, instead of demonizing a party that helped eliminate racism and actively worked to improve our civil rights. They want to stop teaching these kids the truth about who helped this country become great. Why are they trying to hide the truth? Why do they want to constantly drill the deeply emotional history of my ancestors into these kids' class every lesson, every minute of the day? Why? Don't you have confidence that our family has already taught this to us at home? The answer is to create an emotional response and to spread misinformation so these kids can grow up uneducated, misled, and manipulate them into becoming part of a party that actually does more harm to them. This is why. This is political, and it needs to stop. Division does not equal unity, just like equity does not equal equality. It is two very different things. It shouldn't matter what color a teacher is in our children's classrooms. Your scores on your ACTs get you into college, not theories. You may not be able to stop certain things coming down the pike from the state, but this politically-neutral policy is something you can absolutely put into place to protect these children from being political pawns in a political-driven society our world has become. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Canfield.
I'm here tonight because I'm disturbed by the direction this Board is moving in terms of respecting and retaining its incredibly talented staff. I'm a parent of a fifth grader and a sixth grader in the Carroll County Public School system and a toddler whom I hope will attend in a few years. Dr. Lockard, when you first became Superintendent, you spoke with my children's PTA. That evening, I voiced my concerns that teachers in Carroll County may travel short distances to make up to $20,000 more per year than they do here. Your response to me was that the sense of community and positive work environments here continue to draw new teachers and teacher candidates and retain excellent teachers. While I think our teachers deserve competitive pay, I've seen that you were right. Certainly, the Board wants to keep this positive culture and retain its excellent staff. I believe you are trying to do your best. This is why I'm extremely troubled to hear Ms. Sivigny's proposal.
Please refrain from addressing Board members, okay?
Complaints. When you think about this system, what do you imagine? Do you imagine that it will be used responsibly by parents and students who have gone through due processes? Do you imagine that your teachers will feel supported? Do you imagine that teachers will accept this disrespect along with all the other difficulties they're suffering this year? Do you imagine they will stay? Do you imagine that they will forget that they have a choice? While I know that not all Board members have a background in education, I expect that thoughtful, intelligent adults like yourselves would understand that children sometimes misinterpret words. Teachers are trained in recognizing, addressing, and correcting student misconceptions. It's a skill that teacher evaluation tools require. Teachers are lifelong learners. They are professionals. Most teachers hold at least one master's degree, many hold more. They're trained and retrained over and over again to do the best they can to serve our children and our community and Carroll County teachers and staff. They're doing an amazing job. A few people who need support should not force all hard-working, thoughtful staff members to look over their shoulders constantly. The form the Board has added to the political neutrality policy currently under review has been thoughtfully developed. It is still a bad idea. Teachers are not children. The proposed system is disrespectful. By approving this, you will make this crisis of shortages in people willing to do this job more severe. Please respect the professionals who make this school system great. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Caitlin Edmanson.
Hello and good evening. My name is Caitlin Edmanson. I'm wearing my facial decoration tonight to make everyone feel comfortable and feel safe, which brings me to my main point this evening. Feelings aren't facts. Just because something makes you feel safe or feel good does not make it true. If children are taught that their feelings are facts, soon we will have a generation of narcissists on our hands. Narcissists operate under the guise that their feelings are fact. This is a slippery slope, and here are some examples of why. I feel like a man, so therefore, I am a man. I feel like my pronoun should be plural, so therefore, refer to me as they. I feel like I'm vaccinated, so therefore, I am vaccinated. I feel like anyone who disagrees with me is assaulting me, therefore, you have assaulted me. I feel like I paid my taxes already, so therefore, my taxes are paid. Feelings aren't facts. Here are some facts, though. COVID has animal reservoirs, fact. Using a cloth mask to stop COVID is like trying to stop a fly with a chain-link fence, fact. All 92 U.S. cruise ships with 100% of guests vaccinated had COVID outbreaks, fact. The NBA is 97% vaccinated, the NFL is 94% vaccinated, the NHL is 98% vaccinated. All have had COVID outbreaks, fact. An Antarctic outpost with 100% vaccination rate has had a COVID outbreak. 11 of 33 people have tested positive, fact. The feelings of a few should not dictate the choices for the majority. When you allow feelings to be facts, you get ridiculous notions like minor attracted persons, aka pedophiles, previously known as pedophiles. This is the type of political indoctrination that we do not want to enter our schools. Every part of this has been about control. It has nothing to do with health, safety, or progressiveness. It has all been 100% about control. If you feel better wearing a mask, you can make that choice. It does not give you carte blanche to make the same decision for everyone around you. You can choose to stay home, you can choose to get all the shots for the rest of your petrified life. I say this not only in regards to anything COVID-related, but also in regards to political indoctrination at our schools. So I ask that you all vote for political neutrality within our schools because the last thing we need right now is anyone else forcing their feelings on our children. Thank you and God bless.
Next speaker is Paul Allen.
During the winter break, in case you didn't know, bus drivers, aides, school hourly workers did not receive a paycheck to help support their families. We are here to voice our concerns and frustrations with the school board over pay, benefits, and lack of respect towards us. We can all agree there's a shortage of bus drivers, aides, and hourly workers. Some things are out of the school board's control, but there are some things the Board can address. Let's look at what's to expect as drivers, aides, and hourly workers during your shift. First, being exposed to COVID every day. Female aides being groped. Fights on the bus. Police having to be called in the schools and buses. Being told to F off multiple times. Aides getting hit. Constant change of routes each day to make up for the shortage. Students who won't listen to drivers and aides. Referrals put in and nothing happens. Drivers mirror driving 60% of their run to keep the peace. These are just some of the things to expect to work as a driver, aide, and hourly worker. So, for putting up with this, this is this is what to expect from the school board for compensation. Aides and hourly workers making less than sheets, McDonald's, and now even Walmart. Drivers, aides, and hourly workers not getting paid when the school is closed from meetings, winter breaks, spring breaks, and snow days. How does a person plan their budget when two hours before they start school, school is closed and no pay for the day? Winter break when people are spending most of their saved money and no pay? The board respects us so much that when we, as drivers, aides, do our summer training, our pay drops to training pay instead of our normal pay. How does your pay drop when you do training? That's not respect. We, as driver, aides, and hourly workers, are dedicated people to deal with the challenges each day. We choose to come to work. We see the bus contractors every day struggle to fill the routes. We feel taken advantage of by the school board. Your pay scale for your drivers, aides, and workers are outdated from the 80s. We now have a mix of retired people as well as people who rely on this job as a way to feed their families. Do you think they can do it with the pay rate we're paid as well as the time off with no pay? I personally know several drivers not coming back after the year. They want better pay, steady pay, and a steady paycheck, and it will only get worse until the school board does their part to make it better. John O'Neill said today in Carroll County Times, drivers are paid $23.83 and aides $17.70. Let's make that happen. That's a good idea. This is how we, the bus drivers, aides, and hourly workers, feel. In closing, it took one group of drivers in another county to form a union to feel appreciated and be heard, drivers and aides in other counties to have job actions to be heard. We are asking you, the board, to hear us now. The ball's in your court.
Dr. Lockard. Next speaker is Wendy Novak.
One of the pillars for Carroll County Public Schools is to create a safe and secure environment. Everyone needs to feel safe. As adults, it might be that we block people on social media that disagree with us. We might go to places we don't physically feel safe. We can't prevent bad things from happening, but we can at least try to lessen the chances. We have some control. Our children have much less control over their environment. They need to be safe, safe from physical harm, such as bringing home a dangerous illness that has killed three children in 10 days in Maryland. There's been 11 since the pandemic began, and three have died in the last 10 days. Children need to feel comfortable to go to school and be themselves, not hide their identity. Some children will have no problem shouting it out loud. Others will need to be given the opportunity to share. There's no harm in teachers asking children their preferred pronouns. It's inclusion. If someone doesn't understand about pronouns, then this is a learning opportunity about someone different than you. For those uncomfortable with the idea, education is key. Everyone has pronouns, whether you go with what you were assigned at birth or something different. Different is not wrong. Even if you don't understand why someone would be different from you, that does not make it wrong. Lack of understanding why "they" would be used as a pronoun for a person means it needs to be taught, not censored, because it makes someone uncomfortable. Public school is open to all. It should not just be open to white, able-bodied, non-LGBTQ Christians. Discussions should include all types of people. When a child is bullied, there should be a system that handles it properly. The website for reporting bully does not get brought up at the BOE meetings. It should be publicized more. I understand that we must protect everyone's privacy, but there does need to be a clear resolution to the issue. Everyone should be taught not to blame the victim. This includes other students, teachers, and even members of the BOE. I have witnessed the BOE respond to students pleading for help with bullying that they should have gone to someone else without acknowledging that the students stated that they did start with someone else. I agree that having a mechanism for if a teacher is behaving inappropriately, such as saying, "Come here, little boy," to only the black students or teaching history that includes a narrow view, it is a concern. The current policy is that the parents communicate with the administrator, then the superintendent. That works. The biggest issue is that parents don't understand the definition of politics. Human rights are not politics. A child's identity is not politics. History is not politics unless it's political history. If a parent considers these things politics, then public school is not the right place for their child. Another pillar is family and community partnerships. How can our students be prepared to interact in our community if they are not exposed to all types of people? Parents that don't want their children taught about other people should not send their children to public school. Public school is open to all, not just white, able-bodied, non-LGBTQ Christians. Everyone's story should be heard, and everyone should be included. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next speaker is Jeff Lawson.
Hello. Thank you, board, for your time, for your service. I'm Jeff Lawson. I've been a resident of Carroll County for about 38 of the last 40 years. I've got two kids who attend Carroll County Public Schools. I attended Carroll County Public Schools. Actually, if I can call out Dr. Dorsey. She was my vice principal when I went to Eldersburg Elementary School a number of years ago. I'm here tonight to speak out against the political neutral policy. Honestly, when I read through it, I don't see where any of the changes really are very substantive. I don't think it's really going to accomplish what a lot of people think it's going to accomplish. But what I'm more concerned about is this reporting mechanism, this maintaining and tracking. How many resources is that going to take? How much time are people, CCPS Central Office, going to spend? You're going to be paying those people instead of paying these bus drivers. You've got teachers. You've got teacher shortages throughout the nation. And here we are, looking at, rather than try to attract and retain good teachers, we're coming up with this thing that I really don't think is going to have any teeth, but you're going to have to spend time to put things to it. And then you're going to have... But what it has to perception of is telling teachers, hey, yeah, we don't like you. We don't trust you. So where everyone else is trying to do what we can, we're looking at something that's going to dissuade teachers from coming here. It makes really no sense. Let's support teachers rather than make them adversaries. The core to the education system is the teachers, and I hadn't thought of it, but also the bus drivers, especially in Carroll County, where you don't have many walkers. So rather than, like, last month, the board spent an hour talking about this, not talking about learning loss. My son has spent 25 days in quarantine due to close contact symptoms, et cetera. Luckily, we can afford a tutor for him because he needed it. Because the virtual learn... No, it's not virtual. The quarantine learning, it's no good. It really isn't. So I was angry seeing all the attention, all the focus on this policy when there's so much other issues going on. There's teacher shortages. There's teachers that are overworked, unappreciated. Bus drivers going through the same thing. So if this passes and we lose teachers and bus drivers, because, I mean, they're going to get caught up in it with the resource allocation, you have failed our community. You really have. So please do not pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Richard Stem.
I'd like to say welcome to everybody. I'd also like to thank you for letting me speak tonight. I spoke last month. I'm here representing the bus drivers. Who are the bus drivers? Retired firefighters, retired police officers, people who have been in the service. Why do they do it? Because they like the job. Do we get paid enough? No, we don't. Okay? Myself, I've been doing this much over 40 years. I said that before last month. It doesn't seem like it helps to stand here and talk to you folks because nothing's being done. I had a meeting with somebody the other day, and I won't mention any names. But the thing was, no, don't say anything about things that are going on for the bus drivers because we're working on something now. And if you say something, it might be lost. My point is, there's no communications with you folks or the other folks that are talking to me. There's a rumor floating around that we might strike. Okay? I'm not going to say that's a rumor. I will tell you that right now. There's also a rumor floating around that all you folks are making $100,000 roughly a year. You just asked for $4,000 a raise and a $5,000 raise. What did I get? 40 cents an hour. Does that make sense? No, that don't make sense to me. It's a slap in my face. It's a slap in every other bus driver sitting in this room or on the road somewhere. We're all professionals. We haul your students, your children, and folks out here, students, every day. We fight the weather, the ice, the snow, the rain, everything else, the wind. If you don't think it's funny, how many of you folks drive a bus? Have you driven a bus? That's my question to you. I bet you can't raise your hand. Maybe a few of you, but I bet you all don't. You don't know what the problems are out there. We face the folks that don't want to follow the school bus. Oh, it's one of them school buses in front of us again. It's going to stop 100 times down the road. Let's get around him. They like cut us off. They drive down the road like idiots. But we have to sit there and just drive normally like a professional should drive. I'm asking you to hear my plea and the plea of other bus drivers. Please, take in consideration the giving us a raise, not the 40 cents an hour that you're trying to give us. Give us some money. You know, you're going to lose bus drivers. It's not a rumor, it's a fact. Every other county around this county is giving bus drivers more money. They're forming unions. They're striking to get the attention of the folks that run the Carroll County Public Schools and any other school district. Again, I'm pleading. Give us some money, please, or there's going to be a lot of us quitting, and then you folks can stop up and drive the buses. I thank you for your time.
Listen, Ms. Herbert, if you want to correct...
I want you all to know that I do have a CDL license. I do ship my own horses. I have nine horse, I have four horses, I have six horses. And I just want to let you know that, that I do travel and stuff like that. And we only make a little over $8,000 a year. So I just wanted to let you know that. So, very false rumor. So I just want to let you know, I'm not sitting there doing nothing.
Also, we would like to correct some misinformation as well. Bus drivers are not school system employees. Okay?
But your money pays our wages.
The next speaker is Terry. I'm sorry, I can't read the name.
Mahoney.
Mahoney. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I do remember, yes.
And I was a sergeant in the Marine Corps, so Sergeant Mahoney. Reporting. All right. Mary and I have lived in this county. We're newcomers. It was, what, '95? Yeah. So we've lived in this county in New Windsor since 1995. We've come before the Carroll County School Board only once before to speak against what we thought were ill-conceived and geographically biased actions by the body. We did it because our children needed to see that our values, the values we taught them at home, were worth fighting for. For that is a parent's responsibility, to guide their children morally, protect them, provide for them, and try to mold them into self-reliant citizens. We chose to move here after my service with the Marines ended, in part because of the school system. It was then, and is now, a quality system that challenges students and offers valuable opportunities. Witness the Herculean efforts by the staff over the last few years during the pandemic. Where our role is to instill values in children, the role of the teacher is to give knowledge, and more importantly, challenge our children to use that knowledge so that they can think creatively, solving problems, and attain greater understanding and capability. We hope that our children would take our values as a framework to apply this newfound knowledge and skill in ways that build our community in a positive way. And that, right there, is the crux of this issue. When those values clash with knowledge and reason, the student is grist for the mill of the conflict between the ignorant and those that seek to educate their children. Some examples of these conflicts would be the Scopes Monkey Trial, opposition to integration, and book banning efforts in this very county in the late 90s. In every case, those reactionaries were both incorrect and wrong. Members of the board hold fast, reject the political neutrality update, do the correct thing, which is also the right thing, and ignore the bloviating of those whose values are challenged by truth and knowledge. It is their prerogative to remain in their bubble of ignorance while it is yours to teach all the children in this county with a focus on truth and reason. We conclude by applying the ideals of St. Augustine, one of the greatest scholars ever to commit their thoughts to written word. We apply it to the current situation. It is disgraceful and dangerous to witness someone whose values, when shown to be in conflict with fact and reason, reject that fact, reject that reason, reject the truth, and not only cling to their ignorance like flotsam on a stormy sea, but force the entire community to conform to their miserable condition. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Kit Hart.
Good evening. As you know, Moms for Liberty and Concerned Parents collected close to 400 pairs of shoes and displayed them outside the building last night. Each of those shoes was donated for the cause by a student in this county, a student who was prepared to walk away from their county schools due to the restrictions imposed upon them by the state. Our role as parents is to give our children a voice when they do not know how to express their frustrations. That peaceful protest last night was our first step in giving a voice to our youth. We have always felt indebted to the board for making the difficult decision to vote for optional masks. The parents of this community felt that you, our elected officials, heard our concerns, and you made our voices heard for the whole state. The members of the State Board of Ed are not the people who we voted for. They know very little about the needs of our children or the circumstances of our county. As Mrs. Herbert said in August, As Mrs. Herbert said in August, when you all courageously voted in favor of parental choice, Carroll County is different from the rest of Maryland, and not in a bad way. When the state overruled your decision, they were telling you, the Carroll County Board of Ed, that they know your community and your constituents better than you do. They were sending a message that Carroll County is laced with ignorance and they can take it from here. The biggest problem of it all is, as we have seen time and time again, once local power is lost, it is close to impossible to regain it. Indeed, the restrictions continue to only get worse. Recently, CNN's medical analyst, Leanna Wen, admitted that cloth masks are little more than a facial decoration, her words, not mine, and it is highly likely that cloth masks will be abandoned and N95s will be required in schools. I cannot imagine this. Yes, my four-year-old son, who comes outside every day with a drenched mask, will be forced to have a form-fitting, incredibly uncomfortable and distracting medical device plastered over his smile for seven hours a day. My asthmatic fifth grader will be denied the privilege of breathing fresh air for no reason. And trust me when I say, if my children were, if children were affected by this disease, I would be all for masks and all for any kind of restrictions, but they are not significantly affected at all. Parents do not just stop fighting for our children when we are a little inconvenienced. We scream from the rooftops until we are heard and understood. Those shoes were not just our cries, but the cries of 400 of your students that feel that no one is fighting for them. Unless you interfere now and demand the decision-making authority that we, the people of Carroll County, entrusted to you, this is the future for our children. This is what we are asking now. We need legal counsel that is willing to pursue this fight. Moms for Liberty of Carroll County are prepared to fight for our kids until they can breathe again, and we hope that you are willing to stand with us in that fight.
Next speaker is Kate Martin.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I know you're not allowed to respond to my questions. But why would CCPS have a written policy that they don't enforce? I've seen community members and candidates who are running for the Board of Ed commenting on why they think Concerned Parent Group is focusing on this. We support our teachers and believe that most of them are following the policy. This isn't a slap in the face. We're not questioning their professionalism. It's to hold those accountable who are not following the policy and who are taking advantage of their captive, very impressionable audience. We have been made aware of several instances throughout the county where teachers are violating the policy. If we're not tracking these instances, there's no way for us to figure out if it is deliberate or a result of a lack of training. Almost every profession has a tracking accountability of their employees, from police officers, mortgage bankers, medical doctors, real estate agents, used car salesmen, home contractors, et cetera. A lot of these professions have fines and other consequences if the employees violate the industry standards. What are the consequences if a teacher is found to be intentionally violating the policy? You can't put a price on corrupting our children's minds. The damage is done. The political environment has evolved over the years, which means it's time to allow our policy to evolve. We're not asking you to fire teachers on their first offense. We're not asking to be made aware of when a complaint is filed against the teacher. But we do expect that when a violation happens, the teacher be held accountable. And if they're a repeat offender, then it needs to be handled accordingly. I ask that all of you that oppose this accountability piece, why? Doesn't your employer have steps in place if you violate the rules? Don't you want to make sure that your children aren't impacted negatively by a teacher abusing that trust that we place in them? From the time we're young, we're expected to be held accountable for our actions. Isn't that what we want to teach our children? This isn't about breaking rules. They're violating the public trust. They're undermining the entire system. If we expect to raise responsible children, how can we do so when the people we're trusting them in aren't held accountable themselves? If teachers willfully violate the public trust by peddling perversion and political propaganda and poisoning our children's minds, the public has an absolute right to know, and those individuals need to be held accountable and removed. If someone violates your children, wouldn't you want them to be held accountable? Do you actually think it's acceptable? Those are your choices. Hold accountable or consider it acceptable. That's the reality of what we'll be deciding. If this board doesn't support the people's right to protect all of our children, then it is our mission to hold you accountable. It'll be our mission to remove and replace you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marsha Dolan.
Good evening. This is just a follow-up to an email that I sent you. I am the CCEA retired member on the board, and I'm also chair of the Retired Teachers for CCEA. And we were just asking if you could give permission for Stephanie Rowland to just make a phone call to find out if we could piggyback onto your dental and eye insurance. We're not asking you to subsidize. We'll pay the full amount. Like, I know for like 30-year, 20-year, you subsidize our medical. We're not looking for that. We're just asking you to allow Stephanie to investigate it and let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Next speaker is Batino.
Wachter.
Wachter. Sorry, ma'am, I could not read the last name.
Good evening. Thank you all for your public service. It is so appreciative, appreciated. Again, I moved from Howard County in April, and I'm so impressed with what I've seen with the Carroll County Public Schools thus far. I am a representative from Carroll County, I'm sorry, Concerned Parents of Carroll County, and a parent sent this to me to read on their behalf. Hello, Board, I am reading this on behalf of a concerned parent. The parents that want a politically neutral policy, simply put, do not want the woke liberal agenda pushed down their kids' throats when it directly contradicts the ideals of their family values. It seems to me that the liberals preach tolerance and acceptance of everything, except conservative values. Just because Christian or conservative people hold different values doesn't mean they should be marginalized, demonized, or disregarded. This is why God and religion was taken out of schools. Non-Christians didn't want it shoved down their kids' throats. This is the same thing, and the only way to guarantee that well-meaning teachers aren't pushing their personal beliefs and ideologies onto their children in the school setting is to hold them accountable. If they are not held accountable, then they could be given a free pass, and the policy will mean nothing. This is not okay. Do we not teach our children to be held accountable when they err? Please write the politically neutral policy in such a way that there is a clear consequence for breaching the set guidelines. We aren't looking for a witch hunt. We simply wish to stick to robust civic conversations and lessons and keep personal political opinions of teachers out of the classroom. On a personal note, if teachers didn't violate the policy, then there are no additional resources dedicated to monitoring the teachers. I follow my employer policies daily, and I am confident that our teachers can too. Thank you.
Next speaker is Justin Had. Hey, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, let me just start with Florida, where there are no mandates. Last week's deaths per 100,000 was the fourth lowest in the country. There was an average of 37 deaths daily since the beginning of the pandemic. In Maryland, last week's deaths per 100,000 was the eighth highest, average of 41 deaths daily since the beginning of the pandemic. I encourage everyone in the room to take their masks off, because, I mean, what are we doing here with these things? Our country's lost if we do not show the next generation how to stand up and take back their rights. This is it, especially in the light of the continually emerging proof that we've already known about the efficacy of masks or lack thereof. Unless you're involved in healthcare, you're not being fit-tested to ensure the proper seal of an N95. Children are guaranteed an even less efficient seal. So how do you care to answer your child's question, why am I wearing a mask that isn't designed for my face? Don't ask questions, son, just trust the government. Are we bringing up the next generation of conformists, encouraging them to put something over their face for no apparent reason, other than that's what we've been doing for the past two years? Or are we raising the next generation of leaders? The children are very rarely affected by this virus. To put higher value and importance on our lives and comfort, having our safety blankets mounted to our faces, and remember, the politicians' faces, but only if there's a camera around. Meanwhile, forsaking the mental health and stability of Carroll County's future generations showcases our inability to demonstrate that we would sacrifice everything for our children, which I have a six and eight-year-old in school, and just how low our morality has sunk in recent years. I say "generations," plural. Do not be naive enough to believe that the insanity stops with this generation. I hope everyone will not concern themselves with the consequences of removing their masks. Why should we fear consequences? Because the state will promise to let our children remove their masks in a year and a half if we're good? That they'll say, even though we only expect 30% of children in Carroll County to be vaccinated, we'll just go ahead and forget about the arbitrary 90% off-ramp number we mentioned earlier? And there's CRT. It's hard to say what we should go after first. Our children are experiencing political indoctrination through both means right now. They're told to wear a mask because the government is telling them to do so, regardless of the science that indicates they are virtually unaffected, and the equity above equality that is CRT. I believe that the promotion of inequality through the teachings of CRT must be stopped so that no group of children is made to feel inferior to another group, whether through degradation or guilt. We need to move on as a society and learn from the past, not repeat it. Signaling out one group as the evil oppressors, though these children have done nothing, children, by the way, have done nothing to deserve this title, will only result in their being discriminated against, and the cycle of racism continues on for future generations of a different group. According to the principles of CRT, this is equity. My goal is not to discourage differences of opinion. These differences, when discussed constructively, will make our country great.
Please finish your thought.
No, sorry. Only contrarian, my goal is to eliminate indoctrination, the pushing of only one point of view because it's popular, mainstream, or woke. We want to create generations of critical thinkers, not those who have followed the mob to their own destruction. So I implore you guys to support the political neutrality measure, showing that Carroll County stands with their parents. And I'll just end it right there. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy Parker.
Good evening. You've had a lot to listen to. My name is Amy Parker. I am a parent of two current students here in Carroll County Public School System. I'm also a teacher for the last 27 years. This may seem nothing to Dr. Dorsey or Mrs. Herbert. I am here to advocate and show support for our teachers. In addition, I'd like to address concerns about the political neutrality policy. After watching last month's BOE meeting, I was left wondering, one, why are we looking to develop a new policy if there's already one in place? Two, what are you truly hoping to gain by policing your already stressed and stretched staff? Three, how will political be determined and by what authority? While I think we in this room would all agree that teachers should not share their political views, such as who they're voting for or why they're voting for them, with our students, I do believe we would disagree on what is considered political. I worry that some members even of our board would deem things like embracing diversity or being mindful of gender identity and sexual preferences as being political stances. What else could then be labeled political? Who will determine that? The process that is currently available can help parents share concerns about teachers. It's my observation, after teaching for 27 years, that only a small percentage of teachers do not follow this policy and end up needing to be addressed, while a much larger teaching population follow the teaching policy and are masters at being able to lead hard conversations in class, allowing students to share on sometimes polarized topics without ever indicating their own belief system. Why put a policy in place that makes teachers feel fearful of everything they say? How about we work on a policy that would help staff and students actually engage successfully in discussing controversial topics? Please reconsider your position on this topic. Let's work together, supporting our teachers and developing global citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Mealy, if a speaker chose to come up and speak for someone else and use three minutes, can they again come up and speak for themselves in you three minutes? Which, how?
I would say no, they gave up their time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Brian Thompson.
Good evening, Board. I'm Brian Thompson from Concerned Parents. I want to talk about the political neutrality policy tonight, but there's two things I wanted to hit before going into it. First, you had heard from Kit Hart about the shoe display this morning organized by our group at Moms for Liberty. All 400 pairs of shoes represent just some of the students that are hurting and want to return back to normal. Stop the state overreach and keep fighting for our kids. Second, I wanted to thank our teachers. Despite COVID and the extra burdens placed on them, they continue to do an excellent job. Despite, you know, what people think about our group, we appreciate our teachers, and we appreciate their hard work and commitment to keep our kids in schools, because we all know that is what's best for our children. Now, for the political neutrality policy, there's a lot of heightened emotion around this policy, but I struggle to understand why. All that we ask of our school system is that they stick to teaching our children reading, writing, and arithmetic. As a parent, I'm responsible for shaping my children and instilling the values that will carry them through life. So in short, we just want our school system to stay within their lane. Let the teachers do the teaching, let us parents do the parenting. And I firmly believe that most parents and teachers agree with this. And in most cases, this is happening as expected, but it's becoming an increasing problem. In one of our prior board meetings, Mr. Mealy acknowledged this problem of growing new teachers coming in with mindset of being change agents and not teachers. Our group continually receives reports from parents crossing this boundary. One example you're probably aware of is in English class where the students learned about racial and gender privilege and had the students complete a privileged scorecard to see how privileged or victimized they were by society. It's not the values I instill in my children. Personally, I want to teach my children that life isn't fair, but if they work hard to maximize their individual potential, they can achieve anything, regardless of race or gender. But again, it comes back to staying within our lanes. As a teacher, you know, as an English teacher should be teaching English, parents want their kids to be taught, if parents that are here, and I'm sure there's many, want their kids to be taught about racial privilege and CRT, let's look at creating additional programs so that they can enroll their children in these topics. But don't embed this in an English class or a math class and force all of our kids to participate. Give us the choice, so it doesn't have to be a political issue amongst parents. And we need to make sure that when parents or teachers don't do their part, we hold each other accountable. If my child has a behavioral problem, that's on me to solve, because I'm responsible for their behavior. And if a teacher drifts from their lane, they should be held accountable too. It's not a witch hunt, it's accountability. And all of us are accountable to someone. If the policies worked, we wouldn't be rewarding teachers, as some have, for being political change agents. And yes, track it. Create a Google form that parents fill out and make a spreadsheet to track it. It's not that complicated, and it can be done in a way that doesn't add work to teachers. So we ask the board to please pass this political neutrality policy, and please ensure that we have accountability with it. Thank you.
Stephanie Brown.
Carroll County's outdated policies are failing our students. We're not living in the 1950s, we're living in 2021. You claim to promote an inclusive and diverse culture in our schools, yet here you sit pushing divisive and political agendas. I get it, two of you are running for commissioner. One of you is willing to abandon the seat on this board that allows you to say that you you so very recently won to further your own political goals. You both get that wonderful little feather in your cap that allows you to say you were president of the BOE. Yet what have you truly accomplished in that role? An ever-increasing COVID positivity rate amongst our students, teachers, and staff? Overworked, underpaid, and undersupportive teachers, bus drivers, and staff? Promotion of a political agenda in an attempt to further your political careers? How about an all-out attack on our teachers that you've supported? How about an all-out attack on our teachers?
Mr. Mealy, is this board line?
Are you going to try to push me off the board or off the podium again?
No, ma'am, I was just making sure that we are within the guidelines. I called out other ones that were doing the same thing, so I'm asking you not to do as well.
How about an all-out attack on our teachers that you have supported and encouraged and now plan to vote on in this new political neutrality policy? I hope that you took the time to go through some of the links that I sent you earlier, including the document from Maryland Department of Education dated from 2015. My child stood here and spoke to you all just a few months ago about the hate that they have experienced in our schools, because their gender identity is not what is considered normal for Carroll County. You actually stopped the public comments to speak directly to my child. You all gave the appearance of wanting to do something to make change. One of your members even stated that he believed that every teacher should be allowed to display the pride flag in their classrooms, so the students would know the teacher was a safe person to speak to. I want to thank you for that. Because of that, Northwest now has 50 pride flags displayed in their classrooms. Because of that, Northwest now has 50 pride flags displayed in their classrooms by their teachers that my child donated to the school. I plan to speak and get this done to all the other schools in the system as well. There is no harm in asking a student their pronouns. There's less harm in asking a student their pronouns than not asking a student their pronouns. Everybody has pronouns. You're she, he's he, they're they, I'm me. We all use pronouns. Institute a policy tonight that allows our teachers and even encourages them to ask our students their pronouns and preferred names. Do this tonight. You have the power to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next speaker is Margaret Barnes.
Hello, thank you. I first wanted to address the proposal about having our children wear N95 masks at school. Before you even think about doing such a thing, please start reading studies on N95 masks because there are plenty of them and they were actually written before this whole COVID pandemic started. Doctors and nurses have had years of struggle with these masks when they're in surgery and there are studies to illustrate that, okay? If if you do implement N95 masks, I'm pulling my kid immediately because there's no way my child is going to be able to breathe and get enough oxygen in a in a school day with that mask, okay? So that's number one. Also, I I support everything that Kit Hart said. I'm also with Moms for Liberty. These masks have got to come off our kids. This is enough. We're going into year two. And, you know, it's just more of the same. And, you know, if you keep repeating the same thing and you keep getting the same result, then, you know, that just shows that we're not learning. We have to get beyond this. We have to start exhibiting some courage here and stop living in fear of this disease, which, by the way, you know, if we had therapeutics, I have a feeling that the stats would be extremely different, okay? So that's a real frustration and, you know, we're we're all wondering what we're going to do. But you, it's in your court. You know, I had suggested before we do a health impact assessment, have stakeholder involvement, talk about actual studies instead of what you read on the news or see on the news. Actual, real, peer-reviewed research. I don't think that's been done at the state level, frankly. Anyway, so and the other thing I wanted to say is, you know, I I am a mom, I am a part of Moms for Liberty and I'm actually floored that someone would say that we are for censorship. That was a real shock to me because I do not support any kind of censorship whatsoever. I do believe that we need to curate, but censorship, absolutely not. And as someone who, you know, studied anthropology and who grew up with a history, my father was a major history buff. I've studied lots of history in college. I was I was studying Indian history and African history and African art and Indian art and all over the world. So, you know, I think we need to make a distinction between what is critical race theory? What are these equity teachings? Let me just finish this one thought. And what is history? I absolutely believe we need more history. I am, I would love to have more African-American history taught in our schools. I think it'd be fabulous. But my point is, is that CRT and teaching equity are not the same thing, okay? So enrich our children with actual history, but not through the lens of that. Thank you very much.
That was the end of all the public comments. Did we have any others that came in late? Do we have a card or anything?
I filled out a card. I'm not sure what he did with it. Am I okay to speak or not?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name's Megan Bunting. I have four children in the school system. I'm here tonight because I'm beyond frustrated with the lack of accountability for decisions made by the central office staff. Next month, my daughter is scheduled to attend outdoor school. However, she is currently being denied the full experience. Outdoor school is designed to be overnight, to push students out of their comfort zones. In doing so, it forces students to take personal responsibility for themselves without mom or dad jumping in. When I attended the curriculum council meeting at HESW this past October, I asked specifically why it had not returned to being overnight. I was told they had every intention of doing so, but couldn't because of a shortage of school nurses due to COVID. Dr. Dorsey, you were present at that meeting and yet I was astonished when you failed to share that key piece of information with the other board members during your report of the curriculum council. Who is responsible for the assignment of school nurses and what is being done to prioritize nurses for HESW? I'm sure like most things, the standard line is to blame it on COVID. That excuse is no longer acceptable. The failure of our school system to hold central office accountable is preventing my daughter and others from receiving the education they deserve. Just last week, one of my daughter's teachers expressed her frustrations to us parents via email. And I'm quoting, "Middle school is always a big transition for students. This year, it was an even bigger transition due to virtual learning and not being in the classroom for way too long. Some students got into some nonproductive work habits. This is my 44th year in education. I have taught pre-K through graduate school and have been an administrator. I have never experienced what I'm seeing this year in the classroom. If I give an assignment to work on in class, I often only get 50% who will complete it." Fifty percent. Let that sink in for a second. Has this become acceptable in the name of COVID? I hope not. My daughter and all other sixth graders need HESW now more than ever. I am begging you to figure out a way to return HESW to normal overnight and allow my daughter to attend overnight next month. End the pointless quarantines that are draining our school nurses and administrators and preventing them from providing our children with a quality education. And when the teachers' union asks for more time off or any type of virtual learning for our students, I beg you to share the message I just shared with you. Our children receiving a quality education must come first. Thank you for your time.
And that concludes, is that everybody? Republic speaking? We had to have cards in the beginning, sir. And you came in later. Unfortunately, we can't. Ms. McCullough, you have the floor.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Superintendent Lockhart, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Weaver. I am Teresa Bazler McCullough, President of the Carroll County Education Association, the Teachers' Union, who represents the teachers, counselors, RNs, speech-language pathologists, OTs, and PTs who make up the union. I am pleased to introduce another proud union thug, Uniserve Director Nathan Curtis, who covers CCEA from the Maryland State Education Association, known as MSEA. It also pleases me and does my heart well to have our executive board with us tonight. While I had hoped to focus the first year's board report on the need to recommit to education and how we all need to reaffirm our primary goals of educating children, I feel that I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the elephant in the room. It is time collectively to move forward and not get swept up in matters that are out of our control. We recognize the teachers' union often serves the purpose of the boogeyman for many, but I have known this was the case for as long as I have been teaching. No problem. I don't appreciate people making assumptions of what our motives have been, but let me go on the record and set a few things straight. Number one, our priorities since the pandemic began have been on health and safety, then education. Our educators will recognize the concept behind Maslow's hierarchy. The basic premise is that it's a hierarchy of needs. If you are hungry or sick, you won't be able to focus on your studies because they are the priority. If our educators are fearful of taking an illness home to their loved ones or that they have a target on their backs, they can't adequately provide the quality education that Carroll County children deserve. We know that educators do their best when they have adequate time for planning, feel safe physically and mentally, and when they are given the time to plan and assess. I have asked for relief for our educators a number of times, but am immediately attacked for having a political agenda. Yes, I have a political agenda. And that is to make sure that our educators are given what they need to be successful and to provide the best damn education they can deliver under the circumstances. There has been a lot of effort put towards separating teachers and the union. Let me speak clearly. The vast majority of our educators are the union. For those of you who insist that the union is responsible for all your woes and issues, take note that we are doing the best to ensure that your kids do get a quality education. And if that means wearing masks so that they aren't quarantined and out of the classroom, so be it. You can't have it both ways. To ensure that schools remain open, we need to mitigate the spread of COVID by social distancing and masking. Get over it. I don't like wearing this mask any more than the rest of you, but I will continue to do my part in preventing others from becoming ill. I also wear seat belts and cover my mouth when I sneeze. Three, this political neutrality issue is out of control. And the idea of a hotline is as un-American as it gets. CCEA has always agreed with the policy, whether it is the administrative regulation, the board policy, or the language in the collective bargaining agreement, that it is inappropriate for any teacher to solidize their personal beliefs to a captive audience. This has always been in place. What our educators are hearing, however, is that they could face discipline for having a conversation that may be overheard by students at their school. This manufactured crisis must end. And CCEA also has no desire to contact the American Civil Liberties Union, known as the ACLU, to put Carroll County at the forefront of national news. I hope that we are not forced to take that measure. Four, the last concern that we need to address is the fact that there is a national teacher shortage and Carroll County will likely be harder hit if we don't get past some of these distractions to education. I have had more conversations than I can count with educators who are leaving Carroll County or leaving education entirely because they know that there are other jobs, opportunities out there that don't require them to sacrifice themselves and their families. So all of you out there who have been bashing the teachers and the union because we are one in the same, better step up to serve as substitute teachers or become certificated because what I've been told by people sitting right in this room, that the pool is dry. On a personal note, being a Carroll County native, born, raised, educated, and a 30-year-plus educator in the Carroll County Public School System, I can't think of a single time that has created more anxiety and worry over the future of public education. And at the risk of being overly dramatic, I cannot stress enough how it is time to get back to the business of education for our students and the future of Carroll County Public Schools. It is time to trust the dedicated, hard-working, caring educators who genuinely have the best interest of their students at heart. It is time to let these professionals use their professional judgment and teach. It is time to focus on education and not mandates that we have no control over. And it is time for us to show our kids that we can achieve when we put their interests first. Let us together create a brighter future. Thank you.
Any other employee groups? All right, that concludes that.
Thank you, everyone who spoke. And if we want, we can take a couple of seconds if any of you want to leave. I encourage any of you interested to stay. I keep hearing what we spend half our meeting on. And 20 minutes out of six hours isn't half the meeting, so you're welcome to stay and run a timer. Next on the agenda is the COVID-19 update. Dr. Lockhart.
Thank you, Mr. Kyler. We miss. Doyle's making her way to the podium. We'll get her set up, get the, we have the slides ready. Susan, thank you for joining us. I know that Mr. Streaker, Mr. O'Neal will also have some updates for us as it relates to just some general attendance and and staff numbers, some of the some of the challenges we've been wrestling with here. I want to start by thanking everybody for the incredible job of keeping our schools stood up during this time. It's a Herculean effort each and every day. And our employees have done an incredible job, so I want to thank them. So with that, Ms. Doyle.
All right, let's see if I did it right this time. Good evening. It's been a little bit of a struggle because we still don't have data. But I have data this time. At least I have statewide data and a little bit of county data to share with you because of our relationship with the hospital. So we can flip. Maryland COVID case count. There's some statewide data that we're now able to access. We have limited local data, as I said. 9,693 cases were reported in Maryland on Monday. Our statewide positivity rate is 27.6. I can remember when it was 2.6, and that was not that long ago. Our hospitalizations are coming in pretty high throughout the state, 3,452. And some regional health systems have moved in to stay. regional health systems have moved into crisis standards of care. We've had multiple meetings over the last two weeks with commissioners, as well as the hospital and the health department, and the director of fire and EMS, so that everybody is well aware that some of our ambulances are sitting at the hospital for three to four hours, unable to offload the people that are in there. We are looking for mechanisms and developing mechanisms to address the overload of our healthcare system. We are diverting people from the ER who are going there for COVID tests because they can't find them anywhere else. We're looking for other resources. I had a meeting today with multiple people at the state expanding our testing efforts, which will probably not happen until next week, but it will be four days a week and up to 400 people a day. So that's significantly more than what we're able to handle on our own. You can go to the next slide. General community guidance, so lots of things to discuss that have changed, but we're continuing to say because of the high case rates and the high contagiousness of the variant and the crisis levels of care at our hospitals, we continue to recommend well-fitting masks in public and around people that are at high risk, avoiding crowds, practicing social distancing, gathering outdoors. Obviously, that's not too easy to do in 14-degree weather. Postponing travel and gatherings if possible, testing when you're symptomatic or exposed to COVID, or before visiting people that are at high risk, receiving recommended vaccines or boosters as soon as possible, and isolate if you have any symptoms until you feel better or can get tested. Next. Complete series of COVID-19 vaccines includes boosters that provides the best protection against serious illness. Recent study of 2-point million vaccinated adults, only 36 died of COVID. Of that 36, 75% had four or more comorbidities. When we look at that, we're looking at pulmonary diseases, heart disease, diabetes, those types of things. For otherwise healthy adults, vaccination provides stronger and more durable immunity than natural infection. Recent study in Texas, unvaccinated of all ages are 20 times more likely to die from COVID, and unvaccinated people in their 40s are 55 more, times more likely to die from COVID than the vaccinated. You can, next one. Our Carroll County data. This is last week's report. We're up 1,514 since last week. Our positivity rate's 27.5, and our total deaths from COVID since the beginning is plus nine. It's important to note that this data lags, so sometimes there's a death and it's not determined to be COVID-related for up to two weeks or four weeks. It all depends on if it happened in another jurisdiction, a backlog of cases, or they're not found sometimes for a while. Next. COVID cases by week in Carroll County, 1,629. Note that this data is from last week, the second. That's what we have access to. Next. These are hospital stats. This is a news slide. I'm not sure I had it the last time. I may have, but it might have been that week that we started working much more closely with the hospital. So as you can see, the solid line are the new COVID admissions, the kind of beige dotted line are the new admissions that are not fully vaccinated, which is significantly higher than the gray dotted line, which are the new admissions that are fully vaccinated. Again, we need to note that those individuals are usually greater than the age of 65 and have multiple comorbidities, usually on average four. Next slide. ICU and acute bed usage. As you can see, we were up around 62. It looks like last week, this week coming down slightly. We've been watching this, and it's important to note, because I don't think I have this slide in here, so I'd like to just share this information, that when we've looked at all of the other waves and surges that we've had with COVID, usually there's a surge that goes up, and then there's a continuation of that surge for two to four to six weeks, and then it goes down very slowly. With this, what is being predicted and what we're looking at in the other countries that have had this for a longer period of time and were able to study it is that it's going to continue to go up for maybe a week or two longer, but when it comes down, it's going to come down as fast as it went up. So that is the good news on the horizon, that, you know, once we get to the peak, what should happen is it should come back down as fast as it went up. Next slide. Let's see. We're still having reporting issues, so it's most likely that this number is out of date. These are the confirmed deaths for January 2nd, so it was six that week. Next one. This is just an update on our vaccination efforts. So we've vaccinated more people with first doses who didn't come back to get their second doses. We have done several people with single doses. However, the most concerning number to us is that only 3,900 individuals have come back for their boosters. There has been a change in all of the information that we're getting. In order to be considered fully vaccinated, you're supposed to have your booster. The entire Carroll County population of all ages, 75%, have had at least one dose, 69.9 are fully vaccinated, and 32% are boosted.
Ms. Doyle, I have a quick question. When did that get approved? Because the last I heard from the CDC, that had not been approved yet, that they weren't including a booster as fully vaccinated.
I think it's in another slide, so let me get to the slide. Keep going. This is our population vaxxed, 99.998. So you can see that the older population are very much more vaccinated than the younger's. The number of interest is the five to nines, which were just rolled out in December, and we have done 36.2% of that population. That is evenly divided between the health department's vaccination clinics and the local pharmacies, pretty much have done most of that work and will continue to. Next slide. All right, vaccination. Our clinics have moved. We have outgrown the health department. The recent Omicron variant really paced up our testing and our vaccination clinics that we were running in the hospital. The important thing to note is that our services are scaled back greatly because half of our room that we use as our clinic room is taken up with PPE that we're still getting out to providers and to nursing homes and anybody else who needs it. So we've moved and relocated to the community college in room K100. There's usually three to four vaccination clinics going on a week. We have been looking to do more in the afternoons, evenings, and on weekends to be more family-friendly. You can go to our website to register. Boosters are now recommended for everybody over the age of 12, so all, most, I shouldn't say all, because some of our clinics are just limited to five to 11, but any clinic that says adult can cater to the 12-plus population and can do first dose, second dose, or booster at that location. There was a push, I think by the CDC, that they are recommending our mRNA vaccines, meaning Pfizer or Moderna, over the J&amp;J. So the state has moved more to just stocking those vaccines with us. We are looking at using the J&amp;J with populations where we don't think that they will come back for a second dose, meaning incarcerated or homeless population, where we think we're going to have a one-and-done opportunity and we're not going to be able to get them to a second clinic. Booster shots remind the body's immune system about the virus and that it needs to defend it against thus giving it a boost. Data shows that the COVID-19 boosters help broaden and strengthen protection against Omicron and other SARS-CoV- variants and protects from serious illness and death. Vaccinations are available at most pharmacies and some doctors' offices. All of that's available at our website. It'll point you to the link that tells you where in Carroll County you can get that. Next slide, testing. Okay, so the health department is offering PCR testing by appointment only for people who have been exposed or who have symptoms of COVID-19. If you've been exposed but do not have symptoms, we are asking you not to get tested until day five after your exposure. If you're tested sooner than this, you may get a false negative. Obviously, if you have symptoms prior to day five, we would recommend you come and get tested. Some people, as soon as they're exposed, are running out, and it's maybe day two. They're getting tested, they're testing negative, but then five days later, they have symptoms and they're testing positive. So we're asking people to wait till day five unless you have symptoms. If you have symptoms, get tested right away. Please don't go to the hospital or the emergency room to get tested. They do not do testing there, and they have multiple other issues with resources right now. Testing guidance may change as we learn more about Omicron, and we will keep you updated on that. Testing is currently available at the Ag Center on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 to 1:00. Link for the appointments are on our website, and many of the pharmacies and urgent cares are offering testing. We know that, I think the next slide talks about home test. Look at that. I'm sorry, I've had a really long day, and I looked at these an hour before I got here. Our at-home tests, we have limited free at-home test kits that are being distributed through the library branches. We felt that that was, we tried doing it at the health department, we kind of backed up traffic all over the place. So for people who were exposed to COVID-19 or have symptoms, not for work, travel, or medical procedures, are not recognized for those things. Also, they're available at many pharmacies, currently in very short supply. The registration is on Tuesdays on the library websites, and pickup is on Wednesdays. Health department is actively working to get more test kits. We were supposed to get a delivery last night before midnight. They did not come in. When they do come in, we will have a large delivery of 150,000 test kits, which we will be getting out to all the municipalities to make sure that there's easy access for everybody. There is a new portal that the state of Maryland is using for reporting of home rapid test. The reason for this portal is so that you can log in, put your results in, and you will get access to what the quarantine and isolation standards are if you have a positive test. In addition to that, if you need a note to return back to work, it will do that for you if you follow the directions and you go into the portal. Next slide. Okay, new isolation and quarantine guidance. This is what caused a bunch of grief from the CDC, only because they did immediate release prior to releasing guidance, which is never how they've done anything. So the CDC updated isolation and quarantine guidance is for the general public. The guidance applies to schools, but additional guidance also applies. Isolation when you are ill or test positive, stay home for at least five days. Day one is considered the first full day after your symptoms started or after your specimen was collected. Some people test positive and have never had a symptom because they were exposed, so we consider that the day one is the day after you started with symptoms or the day of your specimen collection. You can end isolation after five full days if you do not have symptoms, you're fever-free for 24 hours without medication, and your symptoms are significantly improved. Take precautions until day 10. Those precautions are wearing a well-fitted mask for 10 full days anytime you're around others inside your home or in public. Do not go to places where you're unable to wear your mask. Avoid travel and avoid being around people who are at high risk. My understanding from everything I've read from the CDC was they decided to make these changes because most individuals, after day five, their symptoms have improved, they are no longer shedding the virus. However, it's contingent on not taking fever-reducing medication to ensure that that fever is actually because your body is improving and not because you're taking something to reduce that fever.
I just want to make sure. I had someone contact me today that turned, was positive, and the doctor told them that they can go forward if they don't have symptoms.
We are getting a lot of misinformation.
Okay.
We're getting a lot of people calling us, trying to clarify what they were told. We've had individuals who've told us, their providers have told us, they tested positive, they have no symptoms, they can go back to work. There is different guidance for different people. The general public guidance is if you tested positive, you should stay home for five full days. If you do not have a fever and you still don't have symptoms, by then the shedding should have stopped, and you can go around others. If you wear a mask, you provide some distance, and you avoid travel and all those things.
I just want.
It's, we're.
It's, we're, it's all over the place, so.
Correct, and.
And that was from a local physician, and I just.
Quandary because the state did not change their contact tracing software. To my knowledge, they are not changing it till tomorrow. We decided last week, because the CDC had put this guidance out, the state had assured us they were moving towards the guidance, but they couldn't change the software until then, that we moved to those instructions. We put some information on our website so that people could reference it, and that our contact tracers who are calling people could reference that when they were talking to people, because we knew that it was very confusing to the public, the situation that was going on, and we were trying to not add to it. We were not assured until we made that decision last week from MDH that they were moving towards the new guidance. We were told that until the CDC answered their questions and issued the guidance, they were not willing to make that change, so we were stuck with a script that we had to stay with. Once we were told they would move to that guidance, and they were moving to the new five-day quarantine and isolation, we changed our script internally to avoid any more confusion than what was caused.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask, because there was a situation I had heard of actually today, where a family member tested positive, but the student's now been told they can't even return to school now for 10 days, and they have no symptoms. So there's a lot, there is a lot of, well, there's this, and there's this, and I think that's the problem, is this changing constantly.
It is changing constantly. The fact that the childcare guidance does not align with the K-12 guidance has caused us multiple issues. The fact that childcare programs have before and after school for school-aged children has proven to be problematic for us, and we have been advocating for MDH and MSDE to change that guidance. We have been assured for three weeks now that it was changing, but we have not received anything. We are just as frustrated because a lot of times what happens is that there's a case or an outbreak in an infant room. Obviously, they can't wear masks, as long as the teachers were wearing masks and it wasn't teacher-created, it's one set, but then there have been false positives who have then come back negative. And at that same daycare, there's an incident that happened at school with a brother or a sister who was exposed, and now you have a family member where they're living at home with no mask on, and the guidance says that we have to tell them because they're a family member of this child that was exposed. So we've been advocating for those changes. It's putting people in a very difficult position, and some of the changes that were made and decisions that were made have put us in a difficult situation. The CDC changed their guidance on boosters from six, their recommendation on boosters from six months to five months, that then put people out of compliance with being considered fully vaccinated, which changes what we have to tell them. So we're trying to be as lenient as we can and to make decisions that seem like they're in the best interest of the agency and the public while still maintaining what we have to for the protection of the other people. Do I have another slide? I think I do? Oh, yeah, this is where it gets fun. Who has to quarantine and who does not have to quarantine? This is where the information, Ms. Pataglia, is that you wanted. If you come in close contact with somebody who has COVID-19, you do not need to quarantine if you're above the age of 18, you've received all your recommended vaccines, including boosters, and additional primary shots for those who are immunocompromised. You're ages five to 17, and you've completed your primary series of vaccines, or you have had a confirmed. or you have had a confirmed COVID-19 case within the last 90 days, meaning you tested positive for COVID-19. You do not need to quarantine. If you come in close contact with someone with COVID-19, you should quarantine if you're older than 18, and you've completed the primary series of recommended vaccine, but you have not received your recommended booster shot, when eligible. Which is where we ran into the issues last week, when the CDC flipped from six months back to five months, because it put people who were no, who weren't eligible for three weeks into a category of that they hadn't received their booster, and they didn't do it in a timely fashion. So, we're trying to address those on a case-by-case basis. You received a single dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, completing your primary series over two months ago, and have not received your recommended booster, or you are not vaccinated, and you've not completed a primary vaccine series. So, this is straight out of the guidance from the CDC, so it does say boosters in there. I have another slide, I think. Okay, why the guidance was updated. In just a few weeks, Omicron has become the dominant virus strain, and is causing very high case rates. Early data suggests that Omicron is up to three times more infectious than Delta, and that some people who get COVID-19 can still be infectious after day five. With the new shorter isolation and quarantine periods, it's critical that people continue to take extra precautions for at least five days more after the end of their isolation or quarantine. Those precautions are wearing a well-fitting mask in public and around others, distancing, improving ventilation, and testing when symptomatic or exposed. Follow-up slide, I think. School guidance. Additional guidance for people returning to school after isolation or quarantine. CDT continues to recommend indoor masking for K-12 schools, for all indoor, all individuals over the age of two, including students, teachers, staff, and visitors, regardless of the vaccination status. The school should ensure that there's a plan for people returning from quarantine or isolation to stay masked at all times while indoors until 10 full days after their close contact with somebody with COVID-19. During times in the school day, when students or staff members may typically remove masks indoors, like lunch snacks, band practice, I guess athletics would fall in there, too. Have a plan for them to adequately distance themselves for others, to ensure that they wear their mask when not actively participating in those activities, such as when they're not actively eating. MVH/MSDE note for people who are returning either from isolation after a COVID-positive test or quarantine after exposure. The recommendation is that masks may be removed only when eating and during nap time. Unmasked time should be minimized, and physical distancing and ventilation maximize during these times. People should not be participating in any other activities unmasked. And then, do I have a last slide? That might have been my last slide. That was it?
Yes.
Oh, goodie. I'm at the end. I want to make sure I hit everything. I guess I have a note here that on January 12th, the Biden administration announced, which I guess is today. It's been a very long day, I apologize. That they will be increasing the number of COVID-19 tests approved, provided to schools, and the effort, every effort is being made to keep schools open. That's what we all want. We're all, I think, on, we all want the same thing. We want happy, healthy, well-educated, mentally stable children. And we just have to find a way to make this all work during these very trying times. I'm hoping that this is the last search. I can't guarantee that. I don't have a crystal ball. I know that the more people we get vaccinated, the better off we are. I know that we really need to work on our booster numbers. We're going to be doing a lot of messaging around that, and if there's something we can do to partner with you, or get supplies to you, we are here to help you.
Doesn't seem to want to work. There we go. Ms. Doyle, you had said that we have received 150,000 test kits, or we're going to receive 150,000?
They were supposed to be here by midnight last night. I was all excited to walk into my building with 22 pallets all over the place. They did not arrive. I have not seen an update, but I can tell you, I haven't been on my emails much today, because I've been in meetings with the state, trying to expand our testing, and some of our other... As soon as I have them, they will be out. We have been working on getting these. We have had our last three shipments confiscated by the federal government, who is supposed to be getting out home test kits to everybody. And I'm not poo-pooing on them, I'm just saying, I could have had them out if they hadn't taken them from us. They've confiscated them, we've moved to another test that another county is using, that we were able to get access to. We were told they were leaving New Jersey last night at 8:00 PM, and they would arrive here before midnight. I haven't seen them. So, as soon as I do see them, they will be out. We're trying to work with the municipalities, the libraries, possibly the fire departments, and a few other community partners, so that they're out, and people don't have to come to one site, or one location, or travel to get them. They can go right into their own community and be able to access them. The other, I think, big news yesterday, or this morning, was that insurance companies are now responsible for reimbursing or procuring home test kits for people. So, I think each individual is allowed up to eight per month. Obviously, the supply is not meeting the demand. So, having that doesn't do any good if we don't have tests on shelves that can be purchased. Each insurance company may choose to do that their own way. They may send them to the person they insure, or they may just reimburse from your purchase at the store.
So, I have some things that I'd like to discuss. It's not necessarily in connection with this, but under the header of COVID-19 and protocols.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Doyle, I appreciate it, yep. I had said at the beginning, in whatever order the board wants to, I was going to have Mr. Streaker provide just an update on attendance. One of our challenges for students is number of cases, as well as quarantines. That continues to be a factor. And then, I was going to ask Mr. O'Neal just to provide an update on staff attendance as well. Like I said, our staff done an incredible job of trying to backfill and cover, and make sure that we continue to stand up, be able to stand up our schools. So, I thought that might be good information for the board to have. Mr. Streaker?
Sure, and we certainly are keeping an eye on the attendance, because with, we have a lot of students, as reflected in our dashboard, who are symptomatic with COVID as well, tested positive with COVID as well as are quarantined. So, I look back at the 2018-19 school year, back before COVID was a thought for any of us. What glorious times, I guess those were. Our attendance rates in January, as return to school went out, were around 94.5% system-wide. So, when I looked at the data this year, our short week back, you know, we came back, we started with a two-hour delay, so that had an impact to attendance. That week, our attendance was 88.5%, but I looked at the number of students who were quarantined, and that's about 6%. So, it was, it was kind of close to bridging that gap, pretty close that way. Police report, our attendance has come up a bit. We're up 2.5% that this week, we're hitting about 90%. So, we're still in the ballpark of 5% lower than we usually are. But we do have a lot of students in quarantine, and certainly a lot of students who have tested positive for COVID, and that's where we are there. So, as you saw on our dashboard, we have roughly 1,300 positive active cases of COVID right now with students and staff combined. And 1,200 students, 1,288 students in quarantine.
I'm sorry, could you give those last two numbers again, Mr. Streaker?
Sure, as reflected in our dashboard today, CCPS total is 1,313 active positive cases. I don't want to steal Mr. O'Neal's thunder, but that's 131 staff and 1,182 students. And our quarantine numbers are 1,288, which is significantly up from last week. But last week, students weren't around other students to be placed in quarantine. That's right around the same number as we were the week leading into the winter break.
Yeah, it's just a little lower than the week entering into the winter break. And I, just a little back-of-the-envelope math, I think that COVID-positive cases for students is right around 5% of our entire student population, and for staff, I think it's around 3%.
Any other questions about that part?
What was, what is Mr. O'Neal going to come up with?
So, when Carl speaks, it's fine, and when I get up, people leave.
John, we can't leave.
I see, I see. So, I won't, I won't repeat what Carl said. I would just say, our biggest ongoing challenge is staffing or providing coverage in the schools every day. And we won't repeat the quarantine or the COVID numbers, but the way that we've been trying to monitor that and draw some comparisons is, what is the fill rate of substitute teachers in our schools on a given day? And so, maybe this is more of a staffing challenge, not just with teachers, because there'd be any number of reasons why somebody could be absent, they could have COVID, they could be in quarantine, but also, their child could be ill for some reason, or be in quarantine, or any other legitimate reason. But what we've been pressing up against is historically low substitute coverage, or what we call fill rates for the vacancies in schools, or the absentee slots in schools on a given day. We've tried to look at some points in time, and go back a few years before the pandemic, and say, what was our fill rate on average, or on any given day then? And it tended to be 90% or higher, or at least pushing up near 90%. And this year, it's more on good days, above 70%. And we've had some days, I think, historically low, as low as the mid-60% fill rate. So, that, you know, if you're a school administrator, that's your biggest challenge. You wake up early in the morning, trying to, trying to figure out on a, on a daily basis. Is that... Any questions on that? If you have a lot of questions, Mr. Diaz might have a more, more of a grip on those data.
Like I said, I'm so appreciative of our, the work that our directors, our principals, our central folks who are pitching in each and every day, teachers, assistants, and other staff in the buildings, who are working to figure out ways to keep our schools operational when we face some of these challenges.
Dr. Locker, could you talk about the nurses, the nurse situation?
Right, Mr. Streaker is very familiar.
I thought, I thought Mr. O'Neal was getting up behind me to run to the podium. I thought, huh, that's good. We're struggling, we're struggling with nurses. We, you know, as everybody knows, first of all, I mean, our nurses are working like crazy, and they're doing a great job, as all of our staff, and the system is to keep the system open. I think we have four current vacancies, and will soon be six, that we're short-staffed in nursing. We are interviewing, hiring, training, onboarding, and then, we have some other folks. So, it's kind of a, it's a significant challenge. And Ms. Gomes, and Ms. Tesh, and Ms. Fletcher, their clerical assistant is, they're constantly working to fill, and make sure that we can keep our schools open, moving staff literally from one school to the other, the morning of, in order to keep, make sure we have a nurse in a school. We are very close, we've been close a few times, to not having enough nurses to keep buildings open. So, we work really hard. And Dr. Locker, you said, like, principals wake up early, Ms. Gomes is up probably 5:00 in the morning, jumping on, switching, moving. And we, you know, like everywhere else, our nurses are exposed. We have students coming in that are sick, and we've had nurses that are exposed as well. So, it's a significant challenge.
I wanted to touch on that, because we just got really hit hard about not having outdoor school. But we've had up to 11 nurses out in a day, and I know we've been scrambling just to have our regular schools open. So, I was, I was hoping that lady would, would be here to understand. I wish we could hire more, but it's, we're all in the same boat. I, you know, if somebody can go out, and as I advertise for bus drivers, I'm advertising for nurses tonight. Please, if you have a nursing degree, and you don't have a job, we'll be glad to take you as an employee. Thank you.
And I think one of the constant challenges, I know, that our nurses in our schools are really wrestling with is the, is the, sort of chasing the tail of the contact tracing and that piece. And the Health Department, I know, struggles with that as well, as a challenge, in the volume.
Sure, and the ever-changing guidance, you know, we, we don't have, one of the biggest differences this year versus last, and this is just an observation and to share. You know, last year, we spent about every Wednesday, when we weren't administering vaccines with our nurses, training them on the new guidance and the new updates, and, you know, these things just don't happen. So, when we have a significant change, like December 27th, the CDC changed guidance, you know, we're implementing things, getting them wording out to the nurses. So, that inconsistency that some of you spoke of earlier is just a matter of our inability to get every fine detail out to everybody. When you layer it with all the complexities, we're going to have those things happen. So, we ask for the patience and kindness of our community as we work with them, and, you know, know that we are doing the best we can, and our nurses are really, you know, they're, they're really drowning. And our focus is on the students in the building, and caring for them in the building, and making sure their health needs are met. We have students with chronic health issues and other situations that they need day-to-day care, and then, we're layering, you know, as I say all the time, our nurses were really busy before COVID. And now, we've added a significant layer of work and challenge to them.
And Mr. Kyler, on that note, can I, can I ask some questions? First off, let me say, I just want to thank everyone for, we recognize how hard the nurses are working, and this is just, I mean, it's been a terrible situation for so long. We appreciate everything that you guys are doing. We know that, you know, guidance is changing on a regular basis, and you're constantly trying to adapt to it. We really do appreciate everything that our nurses are doing, that our teachers are doing, that all of our educators, our central office staff. We know that this has been tough. And I know, at the, at the last meeting, Mr. Streaker, I had challenged you to try to help me understand the dashboard, right? Because it's tough to interpret the way that we're tracking things. I know that, you know, we don't have the time or the ability to change it, to make it more logical at this point, but I had tried to understand, what is the effectiveness of the quarantining measure? And you had laid out a method to calculate it, right? Like, okay, like, okay, we don't report on that directly, but if you go and look at the outbreak numbers, and you go and look at the rolling quarantines, and there was a way to kind of calculate how many kids that were in quarantine actually ended up testing positive. And I know that I had, based on the discussion that we had, I went and did a calculation, and I came up with about 1.5%. I had heard through Mr. Kyler that you were coming up with closer to 2%. I would say that that's...
I think we call that fuzzy math.
That, that's like rounding error, really, right? I mean, so basically, what we were saying was, according to the calculation that I did, back-of-the-envelope, it was, you know, for every 75 kids that we quarantine, only one was testing positive. Your number would say, okay, well, maybe it's 50. For every 50 that we quarantine, one is testing positive. I would say, and in the words of what Ms. Doyle was saying, we want to get, schools need to stay open. We need to have as many kids in the school as possible. I think that we're doing our kids a disservice, not throwing fault for our own, or what you guys are doing, but we're doing our kids a disservice by quarantining 50 healthy kids for only catching one positive test. And so, for that, I truly appreciate, as soon as the CDC changed the guidance, that you guys jumped right on it, and changed our guidance to the five days as well. That's great. But I would like to talk about the possibility of, and our nurses are drowning, you know, as you were saying. How do we help that? And I would say, because of the caseload, it's taking us three to four days to notify families, like, to do the line tracing and notify families, and then, you get to, you get to day five, like, and it's only five days that you have to quarantine. I would say, for the one day, and the fact that we're only catching one positive case for every, somewhere between 50 and 75 kids that we're quarantining, I would say, I don't see where the bang for that buck is. Can we actually stop the quarantining and say, if you have symptoms, stay home. If you don't have symptoms, come to school. And that would potentially help the nurses dramatically, and it would also help with the fill rates and absenteeism with staff due to quarantining and things like that. So, I just want to open...
I'd, I'd love to entertain a motion, since you're halfway there, that starting tomorrow, we will only quarantine symptomatic students and staff. Include the staff in it, too. Can, you want to make that motion?
I would like to make a motion that, starting tomorrow, we only quarantine... I would like to make a motion that, starting tomorrow, we only quarantine, well, okay, let me ask a question before I make that motion. So quarantine implies that we have done the line tracing and know that someone was exposed.
Correct. A layered challenge right now is the, with the depth, the number, the volume of testing is the turnaround time. You know, in November, we were getting PCR tests back in 24 hours from our lab. We're currently at about five days, which, to your point, we find out the person's positive on the day they can come back anyway. So that's kind of a curious challenge that we're in. And then we're, we actually would be notifying somebody that they're exposed to a positive case, but there's no impact, because they can continue to come to school, because by now, it's already a moot point.
Right.
So, yeah, we, right now, we only quarantine students who are close contacts in unmasked settings, like lunch and recess, if they're around each other for 15 minutes, or phys ed, or athletics. If they're close contacts for 15 minutes or more, to a confirmed positive case. And again, with the speed at which this is happening, in a laboratory confirmed positives. We're not quarantining students, except for students within the household or the individual student, based on home tests. So we're only doing that based on confirmed lab tests.
Right. So there is an inordinate amount of work going on to do the line tracing to minimal impact.
I would agree with that.
So is there a way to say that we don't need to do the line tracing anymore, and you only quarantine or stay home if you are symptomatic?
Yeah, I think, or, if we just do the motion the way we were talking it, can you guys implement change in the process and everything? Does this help you maybe minimize the process? I don't think we want to sit here and, and say, well, you ought to do this, you ought to do this, or a nurse ought to, you know. I think that process is your expertise. But I personally just felt, if we just went to only quarantine symptomatic, in theory, you could really minimize the contact tracing. But if for some reason, you guys don't think you want to do that, we need to minimize the, we need to keep students and staff in school. We need to minimize the work that the nurses are going through. And I'm not sure, if this is a step, I'd love to see us do it. If it doesn't help...
Okay. So I'll make a motion then, so we can continue the discussion. I'll make a motion that we quarantine only symptomatic students and staff.
Okay. A second?
I'll second, we can have the discussion.
So I think our role is to operationalize any decision that the board makes. I don't see this different than any other type of situation. So from an operational perspective, I do think it's important that we communicate this to our families. The inherent challenge of the motion, that I see as it stands, is tomorrow gives us less than 24 hours before kids hit a school. But again, well, you know, that's a challenge, and, you know, that will be a difficult piece. But we would just need to spin up communication, and I guess I would say upfront, we're going to have a little bit of crossover challenge with getting that messaging out, getting that training and that guidance. So we'll, we'll take a couple missteps in the beginning. I'm just going to be clear, that's going to be its challenge, if that's the board's wishes and the way you all decide. I do also think it's important for us, is when we're informed of a positive case, that we notify people that they may have been in contact. And I think we could expand that, similar to what we did actually in, boy, back in like September, I guess it was '20, when we, when we kind of opened in the hybrid model, we would notify families if there was a student in the class that was confirmed positive or symptomatic. We were even doing that back then. So we could, we could create a communication plan, where we would send a communication to a family, say, you know, your child, your child may have come in contact, essentially, with a student who's confirmed positive. Monitor for symptoms. If your child's sick, keep them home. That's what I would, from an operational perspective, if the board would vote this direction, that's what I think our obligation to the families is, to notify them that their child was in proximity. Because the contact tracing, the actual line listing and all that, is a significant effort. And I think if we move to just notifying people, especially with the volume of the cases right now, I think that way, we're notifying families that, you know, their kid could have been exposed. And given the, what we're hearing about how, you know, much it can spread, I think this is, you know, a good communication to families. The challenge for all of our families is going to be, as I said earlier, by the time we hear the kid that's positive, it was probably days before. But that's just the world that we're in right now, because the speed at which our testing, you know, is able to get results.
Okay. So if we did follow this approach of quarantining only on symptoms, that would help students and, get healthy students and staff back in that are asymptomatic, it wouldn't necessarily help the nurses?
I do believe it would help the nurses, because as, we would be operationalizing it to notifying families. We, we can do some automated notifications, like we did before. We automated some of that. And it was, because it's broader, you know, we're really identifying a larger audience, that if your child was in a class with a student who tested positive, that's a broader audience. And that's what I would do operationally, should the board vote to do that. That would be my recommendation, how we move forward.
Dr. Locker?
But I do have some concerns. I know that there are at least three other counties I'm aware of in Maryland who have adopted a similar approach, I believe, Anne Arundel, Hartford, and maybe Kent?
I believe that's accurate.
All right. I, I could be wrong, but I believe that is accurate, based on conversations. But I would, I would certainly insist on what Mr. Streaker just outlined. We need to notify people at minimum, if they're considered a close contact, so that parents can make that decision, and monitor their, their children's, you know, symptoms that much more closely. Like I said, I recognize the, the challenge we face with, you know, thousands of kids sitting at home, who never develop COVID. I also recognize why we're trying to do that, to mitigate things. So I do have some concern, but I appreciate your input there, as it relates to, a minimum is, we do need to notify parents who are close contacts, so that, so that they can make the best decision for their child.
Dr. Locker, while you're speaking, what kind of feedback has those three counties gotten, or how is it working?
I don't know that it's been in play for very long.
Now, I checked with my person, Anne Arundel County, they were closed the first week we came back with snow. So I said, how's it going? He said, I don't know, we haven't been open. They haven't had any complaints. If I, I do believe that they actually had a motion at their board meeting for somebody to overturn it, and it did not pass. So it's still in play. So that's my, that's the feedback I can give you about Anne Arundel.
I would recommend not, I mean, if we vote on this tonight, I think tomorrow is too soon.
Yeah.
It's, that's not...
As soon as possible.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that part's wrong.
Yeah.
I agree with the philosophy. I've had, not me, but I've had granddaughters and daughters have it, and I know. And I think we just need to give the community a day or two. So everyone knows, we're all on the same page. I like the idea, because I, my granddaughter was quarantined, like, for five days, up before Chris, the holiday, and, and she was fine, driving me crazy.
I will say, just feedback on that, Ms. Herbert, given that today's Wednesday, and we have the holiday on Monday, and we're five days anyway, I'm just, I did that in my head really quickly. If we were to implement this on Tuesday when we return, what that would basically do is, any students who are currently in quarantine, would just, would finish out tomorrow and Friday, give us a chance to notify nurses, notify schools, get messaging out to the community, and then put it in place on Tuesday. I, that would help us with our nurses, because one of the challenges they have is, you're throwing stuff at me so fast, I got to take care of a kid, I misread it. I'm more confident that we could get that messaging out in the next two days for implementation on Tuesday.
Do you want to amend your motion?
I like the timing on that so much better. I mean, it's not fair to our nurses, and, you know, it would cause chaos.
Always, always chaos.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, so I'll amend the motion to say, effective on Tuesday, the, is that 18th?
18th.
Tuesday, the 18th, that we would...
Implement it.
Quarantine only symptomatic teachers and students.
Students and staff.
Yes.
All staff.
All staff, sorry.
Second?
I'll, I'll...
So that's the amended motion that I'm making.
And I'll second the amendment.
And technically, we vote on the amendment first. So any discussion on the amendment? All those, I will say, yeah, amendment first. Any, all those in favor of the amendment?
The amendment is just to make it effective on Tuesday, January 18th, versus effective immediately, right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Wait, 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 in favor?
In favor.
I think we missed you on the, okay.
Opposed? Okay, the amendment passed. Any more discussion on the motion?
Dr. Dorsey, you seem like you have a question. I wanted to...
I was just thinking about, you know, this being the time when we talk about this variant being a little, it's more transmittable. So I guess I just question whether this is the right time to be doing this or not. Believe me, I understand about, you know, the quarantine situation. I know that it's, it's been rough, and I know that we've had kids at home who certainly, even though they may have been exposed, did not develop symptoms or did not get the virus. I'm just wondering about the numbers that you and Mr. Streaker had shared earlier about what the rate was, you know, when you looked at the number of quarantine. I think you were saying you had, like, 1.5, and you had two. I wonder if those numbers would look any different from the, the stats that we would have currently with our number of students in quarantine?
Dr. Dorsey, if, if you don't mind, I could, I'll give you some perspective on that.
Okay.
We haven't had a lot of experience with the five-day quarantine. That just started, like, we just put it in place coming back from break. Given the timing of the five, so, given the timing of a five-day quarantine for exposure, if a student is symptomatic on a Tuesday, and they go and get a test, even at our testing center, and they are, and if they get a positive rapid, and we do have students, of course, getting the positive rapid, we would use, we would then put students in quarantine. Those students would generally get quarantined, the, the students that are close contacts would be quarantined, and those students would be quarantined right now for five days. Operationally, we know it's difficult on families to pick up students, but most, most students who are symptomatic on Tuesday aren't honestly getting, available to get a test till Wednesday, Thursday, right?
There is some lag time there.
So by the time we get them in for testing, and then they get their test, we're now going to, we'll be notifying families to quarantine, and the, the human resource manpower to do that, essentially, the students end up being quarantined for one day, because then by Monday, they're back anyway, from the five, you know, you add that five days. So I don't, I would say to you, I don't have a lot, we don't have a lot of long-term experience with it, because it just happened. But given the, the speed at which we're getting the test results back, and the availability of testing, and the ability for families to get in, our testing site is full, day-to-day. Like, we're, we're rocking it over there, because the Westminster High, we're full. So I do think that's, that's part of the challenge. And we always go back to the onset of symptoms for the student, not from the date of the test, unless they're asymptomatic, and we're not right now talking about testing an asymptomatic student. So just globally, what I'm trying to give you the perspective of is, I hear that, and certainly with the transmission rate of the current variant, and then the, you know, how much, you know, the spreading, which is the transmission, there is some, you know, valid concern of the timing. But the challenge is, by the time you implement a five-day quarantine, we're, we're doing a tremendous amount of human resource work, contact tracing, calling parents, putting kids out for a day, or, we've had multiple cases where we're telling people, you were exposed a week ago, your kid never had, your kid was a close contact, but by the time we know about it, I get calls from principals all the time, what do we do when it's already over and they can come back? And we say, well, you still need to notify the parent that their child, so they can monitor their symptoms, but the child never has to quarantine. So that, I think, is the result of, right now, with the volume of testing and the five-day quarantine, that's really quick, especially when you think of, when you add a weekend in, or a three-day weekend, as we have coming up.
Okay. And again, I'm trying to understand the amended motion. And again, it does look like it's in line with what Mrs. Doyle just shared, as far as who has to quarantine and who does not. But again, you know, if you come into close contact with someone with COVID, you do not need to quarantine if you're between 5 and 17, and you've completed the primary series of COVID-19 vaccines. So that part, we would be in compliance with this. But again, we're not asking about vaccines, we're just going to be looking at symptoms.
I, I think what the proposal, as it stands now, is that we wouldn't be quarantining any students, regardless of their vaccination status, as long as they remain asymptomatic.
So we'd be looking at the symptoms, whether they have symptoms or not.
Right. The guidance that Ms. Doyle referenced, that, if that's what that's still, no, it's the one before, talked about the, students need to be fully vaccinated, and described that part. So this, this would be for students, regardless of their vaccination status. That is, that is different than what Ms. Doyle was presenting earlier.
And, and I understand the concerns. I've just seen, and part of the reason I said tomorrow, I've seen so many kids quarantined that don't test positive, don't have any symptoms. Most of them go to their rec sports and do everything else, because they think it's a joke. And I think we, we need to get rid of the joke and keep them in school. And no offense to the professionals, I, but it's just, and then especially, and a lot of the extracurriculars are being cut out, but kids were meeting a concert, they were mixing a concert, or a play, or something they had really planned to be part of, and they had zero symptoms. I just think, and I'm sorry, but I think they need to be in school, and I think we're safe. We haven't said much about it tonight, and I don't want to get into it. I'm obviously not a scientist, and, and don't follow them maybe well. Everybody's also saying this is much less severe with kids. And that seems to have proven out. I wish we'd have had better info. Every, I don't know that any other kids have gone to the hospital that didn't have three or four comorbidities already. So again, my optimistic side is, if this is one of the last strains, which I don't blame her for wanting it to be, we're getting to where it's the flu or the cold, and we need to learn to deal with it. And I think this is a step towards that, and that's my humble opinion. Dr. Locker, you had your card up.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Kyler. I sense the direction of the board here. What I'd ask is, for opportunity, as we continue to monitor our own metrics, as we continue to monitor the outbreak data, if we're seeing, you know, it's high right now, in terms of the number of cases. If we're seeing significant numbers there from Tuesday, or whenever this goes into effect, then I want the ability to be able to come back. I'm going to share that with you, as I do each week, anyway. But to revisit that discussion, if we're at a place where we feel we need to.
Yes. I think, I think it goes without saying, if, if this causes issues, you need to address it. And again, being optimistic, it does appear like, according to Johns Hopkins, we were maybe at the peak, or just past it. And they gave it two more weeks. If this truly starts to decline, and we're past the peak, then hopefully, things are going to get better.
Right. And Ms. Doyle even, Ms. Doyle even referred to that information, that, like, it, the, so the peak went up very quickly, and it's expected to come down very quickly as well.
Yes.
So I hope that comes to fruition.
Any more discussion?
I just wanted to bring up, and I think, Mr. Streaker, you can comment to this, too, is, you know, we've heard a lot about the whole test to stay, and the problem is, number one, you have to have tests. According to a press conference the other day, you know, it might be another month, but the federal government can get a lot of these tests out to the school systems, which goes to the states and then the school systems, from my understanding, correct?
We haven't had any trouble securing tests for our test facility. We're, we're really well-suited there. We have not looked into or pursued tests in the schools, because we do not have the human resources to do testing in schools.
And that was the point I was going to make, is, you know, you have to have the staff for those type of things. You know, you would have to potentially probably have two to three more nurses.
We'll take two.
Well, two.
But we can't find six.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, and that's the thing is, I mean, it wouldn't be just at one facility, though. They, the way that sounded like they were talking about the press conference was, at each school, there'd be all these tests. And that's the problem, is you have to have the proper staffing to do those things. You know, it's a great idea, but at the same time...
And I know, Dr. Locker, I think you had said before about possibly sending a test home to have a child checked before they came back to have a child checked before they came back in or something of that magnitude, if they had a symptom or something like that.
I, I just learned with my mother, and I don't know what you guys have seen, the doctors at Carroll told me it was foolish to test her again. She might test positive for 20 more days. So because of the personnel and the work they have to do, I mean, my personal philosophy, I don't need to take a test unless I have symptoms. But again, that's up to everybody out there, but I'm, I'm not looking to have tests crammed down their throats because that means you gotta use them, and, and I'm not sure how valid they are once you've had it. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any, any more on COVID? Thank you, everybody. Board member activities and correspondence, who, who wants to start? Okay.
I'll go ahead and start. Happy New Year, you know, everybody's, you know, it's supposed to be a great New Year, but it seems like it's still the, the same as it was before. It doesn't end. So hopefully, that, at some point this year, we can put COVID behind us at some point, that'd be great. Basically, the only new thing is I started my social psychology class the other day, and we have the CAC meeting getting ready to come up next week. So that's about it, you know, it's been quiet so far. So let's hope it kind of stays that way, that'd be good. And I, I do wanna get into our, our schools, but I, I don't wanna take time away from our administrators. I do get emails from some people that come into our schools and see what our teachers are doing, and I do appreciate it, and I would love to do that, but I, I don't wanna take the time away from our administrators that are doing what they need to do in our schools because it does take a lot of time away from them. And, you know, I, I mean, I do appreciate the invitations, but for right now, I think it is important to make sure that the staff in our schools can do the job that they need to do without any disruption from a board member coming in, and everyone gets in a frenzy, so, but I do appreciate it.
Good point. Can we keep going that direction?
Sure.
So just a couple of quick things. I just wanna say I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season and a Happy New Year. Hopefully, 2022 will be a little bit better than 2021. But, you know, we had some really nice celebrations with the central office staff for the holidays, so I hope everybody got some time off and got some rest. The other thing that, that I wanted to mention was the curriculum and instruction group that we had, the meeting in December, and Mr. Anderson and his folks, they presented a lot of the preliminary MCAP information, and it was very eye-opening, also some information about the, the ELO programs and how effective they've been. And I'm glad that, that information is now on the agenda for tonight, so we'll be looking through a lot of that information because that really is gonna help us focus on how do we, how do we do the recovery learning and what is effective moving forward. So I'm really happy to be reviewing that information tonight, and also the, the World Languages Program that, that we'll be hearing about tonight as well. So some really exciting stuff that we're hearing about and, and working on in the CNI group, so. Thank you.
All right, Happy New Year, everyone. On December 11th, I attended the MASCE Executive Board Meeting at South Hagerstown High School, where MASCE adopted new rules and regulations for the student member on the State Board of Education elections, including all students across Maryland regardless of MASCE membership, the opportunity to run in the state's MOP election. Along with that, we also passed certain restrictions on state's MOP nominee campaign guidelines. On December 14th, I had the privilege of accompanying the current state's MOP Kevin Bockum on a visit to Liberty High School, Oklahoma, Homer Road Middle School and Eldersburg Elementary School. I'm a big thank you to Liberty High School SGA, who greeted and met with Kevin, as well as Dr. Lockard and Mr. McCabe, who were also present there that day. On December 20th, I know the Superintendent Student Advisory Council met, which Emily and I could not attend a Shrub and Shrub luck. However, I received a lot of feedback from the students that were present there about the things that went well, as well as some critiques, and I hope to discuss them with you, Dr. Lockard, in the future as we attempt to improve student voice in the county and the advisory council as a whole. Yesterday, on January 11th, in the morning, I met with CCSGA. As Jamie had stated, we had an executive board meeting where we discussed the Shrub election process and certain changes that will be made to that. Shrub elect applications have been sent out, and I highly encourage eligible freshmen and sophomores to apply. Yesterday evening, Carroll County mock trial competitions began again after a two-year gap. As someone who had done mock trial before the pandemic, I was absolutely elated to be back there in the courtroom. I'm a big thank you to Mr. Melhorn, Mr. Carr, the Carroll County Circuit Court, and Carroll County State's Attorney's Office for organizing the event and allowing us to compete in person. I know I speak for all mock trial participants in saying that we look forward to future competitions in the upcoming weeks. And later, yesterday evening, was also the first rehearsal for all county middle school orchestra and all county high school orchestra. It was so great to make music again with some of the county's best musicians, and we look forward to hopefully seeing some of you at next Saturday's concert on the 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Herbert?
Nothing, it's late.
Dr. Dorsey?
Yes, thank you. Again, Happy Healthy New Year. I know a lot of times we sort of say that, and, you know, we sort of say it in passing, but in this current day and age, again, we really do stress the healthy part of that. So hopefully, everyone will remain healthy as we move forward in this new year. On December 13th, I had my visit to Mrs. Eckles' Teacher Academy class at Westminster High School, and I shared a presentation on the role of school board members. And again, that was a wonderful opportunity for interaction with the students in Mrs. Eckles' class, and I certainly thank them for that opportunity, and I appreciate the, the nice notes that they sent me in response. On December 17th, I attended our Council for Education Equity Meeting. On that day, we received Equity Action Plan updates and supports needed. And another part of that meeting, we were able to listen to some school climate concerns that we are experiencing in our schools, and some of these concerns go from teacher burnout to the uptick in school discipline issues. So again, these are areas that we are going to have to make sure that we address in a meaningful way as we work together in our school system. And finally, on December 20th, I attended the MAAB Equity Committee Meeting. And again, our members added final input for our MAAB Equity Workbook that we hope to have used by all of the school boards throughout the state. And I'm not sure how we're going to roll that out, but certainly when they're ready, I would certainly encourage our board to participate in using this workbook that we've spent a lot of time on.
Do we need to vote to allow Commissioner Weaver to say something? Do you have anything?
No, not really, not at this time.
Okay, and I just, I just wanna thank everybody, staff, parents, students, teachers, nurses, bus drivers, everybody. This, this isn't easy. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kyler. I want to begin the evening by recognizing our high school students who won awards in the Rethink Recycle Sculpture Contest sponsored by the Maryland Department of Environment. So we want to congratulate Lacy Dust, Lacy Dustin, South Carroll High School, second place for workmanship; Griffin Farquhar, Century High School, first place for creativity; Abby Jenkins, Liberty High School, first place for craftsmanship; and Kirsten Lang, Century High School, second place for use of materials. This contest allows students to display their creativity and challenges them to use recycled materials to create artistic and innovative sculptures. It also promotes recycling, source reduction, and buying products made from recycled materials as objectives to a more sustainable society. So congratulations to those students. I'm guessing you know one of those students, Devachi, very good. I'd also like to congratulate Sean Moran, a history teacher at South Carroll High School. Sean was recognized in the University of Maryland's Philip Merrill Presidential Scholars Program. Sean served as a teacher mentor for Stephen Uanides. Stephen's a South Carroll alumnus and University of Maryland senior. Stephen was named a Presidential Scholar in the Robert H. Smith School of Business for Supply Chain Management. This is a program that recognizes seniors for their accomplishments, prestigious internships, and impressive GPAs. It also honors faculty and K-12 teachers who helped mentor them. All of this year's Philip Merrill Presidential Scholars credit their grade school and high school teachers and university faculty who helped guide, inspire, coach, tutor, and challenge them in both big and small ways. The program also provides $1,000 scholarships, which are awarded in the K-12 teacher's name to another student from that school district who will attend the university in the fall of '22. So again, congratulations to Sean Moran. Board members, I want to take just a minute to make a few comments about our employees. You heard me say a couple of times earlier just about how incredibly supportive, helpful, tireless they've, they've been, they've worked, they've given us their fullest commitment throughout this entire pandemic. So many people in so many roles not only have worked hard, but have gone above and beyond the normal call of duty in various ways. And you've heard examples of that over the last two years at every meeting. Last year, in recognition of their service to our system, our students and our community, we were able to work with our designated employee groups to provide some one-time bonuses to all of our staff throughout the year. While there may never be a sufficient amount to reflect the level of commitment that we see every day, I do think overall the recognition bonuses were well-received and certainly well-deserved. Therefore, I wanted to share that I believe that we need, once again this year, to work with our employee groups to provide another recognition bonus to our employees. This might be similar to what we recently did with $1,000 bonuses you approved in November for the bus contractors, drivers, and assistants. I understand we must formally discuss and agree to the particulars with each designated employee group, but I do believe our folks should hear and understand that we're aware of their extraordinary efforts again this school year. I also realize this adds up to a couple of million dollars, but I leave the, I believe the board's fund balance is healthy enough to support this effort and still leave us in a very comfortable position as it relates to fund balance. Again, we're talking about one-time funds, not ongoing funds. And so I believe it's an appropriate use of those funds under our fund balance policy, and I really can think of no better purpose for a portion of these funds than to recognize and reward our dedicated employees. I wanted to share that with you and ask for any feedback or comments.
Dr. Dorsey?
I certainly concur, Dr. Lockard, with your recommendation here because, again, we have to invest in our, our, our human resources. And again, we know it's, it's, we're only able to keep this school system afloat by the efforts of, of people stepping up to the plate, and people are going above and beyond, and we do need to recognize that. And so I thank you for bringing this to us, and I concur with awarding them this bonus.
Ms. Herbert?
I can't thank all of our employees enough. They have gone above and beyond, and it hasn't been easy, and I definitely agree. And I think, Dr. Lockard, that's a wonderful idea.
Ms. Patagel.
You know, COVID has been a very trying time, and it's been a very trying time for everybody. And, you know, we, we completely understand, you know, if you've been out working in this, you, you totally get it, you know? And everyone is doing the best that they possibly can. You know, there's gonna be challenges for years and years to come regarding COVID, with our kids, economy, but, you know, we do, we do need to, if we have it, you need to give back, you know, to our, to our staff as, as the best as we possibly can. And I think it's the best thing we can do.
Ms. Sevigny?
I'll just echo that. I've already said several times this evening how appreciative I am of, of our employee, all of our employees and, and the efforts that they've put in this year. So I absolutely support the recommendation.
Ms. Ms. Drey?
So we, as students, have been witness to the immense abilities of our teachers these past few years, getting through everything and trying to get us through everything. With the strain mental health-wise that we have been, we can't really imagine how much teachers have been. And we can see this year that many of them have been, are literally hanging on by a thread. So I think this small contribution goes a long way in helping our teachers.
And, and I'd like to, to compliment Dr. Lockard for, for recommending this, and, and I want to make a point, and, and the teachers, nurses, we've talked about them, the administrators, but this is the, the food service people who have been busting themselves, all the maintenance people, and we're stretched thin every place. So I, I appreciate that, that you're bold enough to say, let's do it across the board.
It's all our employees. I appreciate your support of that, board members. I will direct our, our teams to work with our employee groups to, to begin that process. Thank you.
Presentations, World Languages, Dr. Lockard?
Thank you, Mr. Kyler. As Ms. Sevigny mentioned, the Curriculum Instruction Committee hears many different presentations and reports. This was a discussion at the December meeting, I believe, and, is it the December meeting? November? World Language, right. And so it was recommended that we bring that information to you this evening for discussion here at the board. So Ms. McCaslin, you want to introduce those important folks you've brought with you this evening?
Sure, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Lockard, members of the board, Commissioner Weaver. It's great to be here tonight to provide an overview of our World Languages Program. With me tonight is Ms. Amy Pritchett, Assistant Supervisor of World Languages for Carroll County Public Schools, and Mr. John Lowe, who is a world language teacher at Wintersmo High School.
Thank you for the opportunity for us to present to you an overview of our current reality, successes, challenges, and a vision that we have for the future for World Languages in Carroll County Public Schools. Next slide, please. Thank you. So I just want to briefly highlight four initiatives that we have going on. We are looking to expand world language offerings through virtual options in schools where they don't have more than one language available in their homeschool. And we also have been working on and are piloting currently a Spanish for native speakers pathway. And we have John here to talk about that this evening briefly. And we have two other initiatives for the future that we're looking to implement and provide opportunities for our students. One of those is the Critical Language Pathway, and another is a Dual Language Immersion Program. Next slide, please. I wanted to start with the current reality and give you a little breakdown of the languages that are taught in our school system and the schools where they are taught. So I'm gonna give everybody just a second to look at that chart. Going down the side, you'll see all the schools, and then across the top, you'll see all the different languages. And how many teachers are currently in those positions in those buildings? I think when you look at it, there's some things that jump out at you, such as some of the schools only have one language. Other schools, where there are more than one language, it's not a full position, and the teachers often teach two languages, or they teach their language and out of their content area for the remainder of their teaching position. So this presents a challenge for our students because not every student, depending on what school they attend, has opportunities to select more than one language. So this has led to the development of the idea of doing the virtual option where students would be able to have a teacher in one of the buildings that doesn't teach a full schedule of their language, to have a virtual section in their day where students from other schools could then join them via their devices. And our teacher, who is a CCPS-trained person with our curriculum, would teach them, but virtually. So they wouldn't be in an online class, but the class would be done virtually during the school day. And there would be no travel, which in the past has been a barrier for us because of the cost of transporting students or having teachers go between buildings. So now with the infrastructure in place that we have, we would be able to offer, for example, I'm just gonna pull, I know that this has been mentioned before at board meetings by members, like Frances Scott Key only has Spanish available right now. So a student there would be able to elect to take a French or a German or a Latin, and then they would take that for one of their class periods during the day. So that's one of the ideas we'd like to, to do.
And Ms. Pritchett, just a quick question. So there would never be a hybrid situation going on for?
No, the intent is never to have a hybrid. So the, the teacher, what we would ask for, and on the next slide, it talks a little bit about like what we're asking for, which would be one FTE among separate languages. We would ask to obtain one FTE. And then that teacher would have some face-to-face sections during their day. that teacher would have some face-to-face sections during their day, and then they would have a virtual section in their, in their schedule. So they'd remain in their building all day. They maybe would have their first class period with students that attend that school, their home school. Then maybe they have planning, then another of face-to-face course. And then the last course of the day, students could join them virtually from around the county. And so, yes, no, no hybrid situation.
And, and looking at the last slide, how many of the feeder middle schools have a language program? Is that consistent across the board? And will any of this filter down to the middle schools?
Currently, Carroll County Public Schools only offers Spanish at middle school. We have one teaching position at each middle school. And that does not allow for all students to take world languages. So this, this breakdown is simply for high school. I could, I could get you guys information, but it's basically one teacher at each school. It is a full position, but it doesn't give access for all students in the middle schools. We don't, unfortunately, we don't have any other languages available at the middle school at this time. We would love to be able to expand. That would require more positions.
Okay. I was just wondering about the numbers. I see the, a number of teachers that we have per high school. What are the student numbers like, as far as how many students are actually participating in the world languages or in the class?
So currently, for graduation, students have to take two courses in world languages, or they have to do a CTE completer. That, that's the only way that they wouldn't take two courses during their high school career. Are you asking, like, how many students take each language? Is that the?
I was, that's really what I was wondering.
Okay. So where you see, like, the .33s, the .5, those would be much smaller numbers of students enrolling in those courses?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yes. And a trend that we see, if I were to put up data from multiple years, unfortunately, is that when we have a teacher that does multiple languages for us, when they retire, the smaller language usually gets terminated by the building because they say that they need to use that FTE or that teaching unit somewhere else. So when someone retired, let's say, recently at Westminster High School for French, then French is now, you can see it's now zero. French is gone. Westminster used to be the only school that had all five languages that we offer, that taught all five. And there, there are no, currently no schools that offer all five languages, unfortunately. So I was hoping that this virtual option, it's, it's a solution that would require one FTE to be spread over multiple teachers to allow them to teach in their content area where they're an expert and not be farmed out to other contents. Like, some of our teachers teach things in, example would be wildlife management, some of them.
Financial literacy.
Financial literacy. There's been other places, like, to fill in their schedule. So this would allow them to teach in their content area where they're an expert. And it would also give students in schools where they don't have the opportunity, the opportunity to do that without us hiring a lot of additional staff, kind of making better use of what's already there.
And I think this is a great thing from an access perspective. I know, Ms. Pataglia, you had made comments in the past about, you know, when Man Valley lost their ASL program. And, and you just referenced the French issue at Westminster High School, that this would really help beef up the access to, to additional options for our students. And, and it wouldn't be an issue with, you know, number of kids in a particular high school really being able to justify an additional position. So I think this is a fantastic and creative way of, of really giving much more access to our students for a varied program.
And, and I know so many people talk about private schools and, and kids going there for sports. Again, I actually was a wrestler but decided not to wrestle in high school. He picked a private school because he could take Latin and German as a freshman. And he said, "I can't do that in Carroll County, so I got to find a place where I can." So it, it is, it is important.
And I remember town hall a few years ago, the parents at Frances Scott Key were really sharing that something like this would be helpful for their children.
And so I guess kind of a silver lining of the pandemic has been that everyone now has, has a device, and teachers have the capability, and it's all already available to us. We don't need new programs or software or anything to be able to do this. We just have to be able to get it scheduled and to have the one FTE that would be dedicated to these virtual sections rather than the face-to-face school sections.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's kind of like the, the one silver lining of COVID is, we've learned how to, to do virtual in multiple ways. And, you know, that this is a phenomenal way. You know, I'm, I'm excited to have this go into effect.
And we have amazing teachers. And I just want to advocate for them to be teaching in their content area and to get kids excited. And we don't want to lose them to other places that will give them a full schedule of, of that. And we, of course, I obviously also want to increase the access for students. That's, you know, it shouldn't depend on their zip code, what they're able to sign up for.
I absolutely agree. Yeah, that, the equal opportunity in, in a course selection.
Yes.
And a lot of that doesn't happen. And I, this, this is a great way to make sure that does occur.
So world languages would love to be kind of the pioneers of starting some virtual options in the school system.
So do you want to go to the next slide?
Yes, can we go to the next slide?
Spanish for native speakers.
So our Spanish for native speakers is a course that's being piloted this year at Wintersmo High School. And it is a course for students who are native or heritage speakers of the language. It is a Spanish course intended to increase their study of their own language. And so we decided, based on demographics, to pilot it at Wintersmo High School. And I want to, Mr. Lowe, to just share a little bit about when this class started this year, and then what, what is happening currently and the registrations for next year.
Sure. Thanks for having me, everybody. Pardon my less informal dress, but Mr. Kyle understands I came directly from wrestling practice tonight, so keep your distance a little. We, we decided to start this, this was a brainchild of Amy's, largely dealing with need. And we tried kind of to start it last year, but of course, we couldn't have anticipated having to do it virtually. The, the numbers in terms of getting word out to native and heritage speakers at the middle schools to sign up for these classes, very, very difficult. So I think we only had maybe nine people in my class last year. Instantly, it went, when we started getting word out and we got back into hybrid, and some of the kids were actually in the building and dealing with counselors, the numbers went up, and then they went up, and then they went up. And I think I started with a roster, seeing it in August at 11, and I'm at 31 now. And, and they're still coming. I think I had a new addition literally yesterday. So in, in the past, when we've had native and heritage speakers, we've actually kind of had a problem of what to do with them. Some of them are kind of extreme ESOL. Their, their English mastery is almost nonexistent. And often, they were placed in Spanish classes so that they would feel like there was someplace that they could speak. Often, the default to that was Spanish III, which is an honors-level class. But to, to be quite frank, we were giving kids second-grade vocabulary, and maybe in some cases where they were less formally schooled in their home countries. They still, getting a few pieces of grammar here and there, wasn't serving their needs either. When we created this, you could instantly see, we were discussing things in their language, about their cultures, and...
Using authentic resources.
Yes, absolutely. And, and so we kind of backwards mapped in terms of how to create this, using themes from AP and from the, the, what's the acronym again?
The ACTF National Standards?
ACTFOL, that's what I meant. The American Councilor teaches a foreign language. And not, not only did we use those themes, but we also decided to, to break it down regionally. So we are teaching native and heritage speakers about Spanish-speaking countries. So in my class alone, I have individuals from Mexico, Honduras, El Salvador, Peru, Chile.
Puerto Rico.
Puerto Rico, like, from all over. And we, they are actually learning a little bit of history. They're learning some geography. They're learning some culture. They're learning some political science and social studies and all kinds of things that are current. And you usually start with things that are more historically based and then move up into, into topics that are facing their countries right now. There could be anything from ecotourism in, in Costa Rica to, you know, migrational patterns or Native American rights and things like that that occur in different countries. So they are really getting exposed to something that's, that's pertinent to them, it's relevant to them, and it's in their own language. And we're serving them in a way that, that the previous Spanish classes simply never could.
So Spanish classes that we offer in world languages are intended for second-language learners. And these students that we're discussing, this demographic of students, are native and heritage speakers. They are first language learners. So they needed a different course pathway for them that met their needs, so they could also take their language courses. And of course, if they're in a school where it's an option to take a different language, they could also choose to do that. This pathway is intended to expand to other schools where we have the demographics currently. And as the need arises, which I'm pretty confident it will continue to be a need as, as time goes on. So we would expand then to another school where we have enough students to form a class. And then as we build that up, we would have the courses labeled as SNS, Spanish for Native Speakers, ninth, and then 10th, 11th, 12th, Modeling After English. And so that would be the intent, doesn't exclude students from taking AP Spanish if that's a goal of theirs. And so that is what we are going to finish the pilot. And for next year, I believe you have even more students signed up.
Hopefully. I'd love to get a second, a second section of that, you know, if all of the allocations take place. But what, what I've noticed, is kind of being in the trenches, is that a class that is filled with everything from ninth graders to 12th graders, the, the ninth graders are very hesitant to speak, to contribute. They're not really certain about themselves. This is, this is the case in every class. And the seniors are going to dominate the conversation and, and probably know a little more about the, the current events in those countries. So trying to engage all of those is, is a little tougher. And if we could have a little more separate target audience and, you know, address the, the, the educational aspect of it, that way, I think it would be, it would be awesome, I think, for, for everyone across the board.
So that is where we're headed with that. We're looking to expand to South Carroll High School for next year. We've been in talks with, with them to have a second school be doing that. And like I said, in, as we move on, based on demographic need, we'll expand it to other schools as well. And then...
Ms. Pritchett, is there, is there a request for an additional FTE for that, or that can be done with existing Spanish teachers within the system?
Eventually, I would think we would need an additional, additional FTE. The pilot course was, we didn't do it that way. Originally, so the students would typically have been in a Spanish IV class or Spanish III class. And so what will happen is, if you only have one section, then they're basically coming out of one, and then they would move into the Spanish for native speakers. So just like transferring of sections. But as, if we're going to implement the full pathway, we will need FTE.
Eventually.
Eventually, yes.
Board members, you know, I'm presenting the proposed budget to you this evening. This is something for us, along, we have other priorities in the system as well, but this is something we want to put on your radar. This is a pretty minimal request in the grand scheme of things. It's something as we look at, as our budget process plays out, is that something that we can look at and afford for the, for, you know, including in next year's budget? Is it something we want to continue to keep in the forefront with all the other priorities that we have? So note to, Amy answered the question. We haven't expanded yet. We haven't obtained the future piece.
The current one that I would be asking for this evening would be for the virtual sections.
Right.
That would, that would be current that I would ask for next year. Because we, at the October CNI meeting, they, you know, they were indicating that they would love to have this in place possibly for next year.
Right.
So the last two things that we wanted to highlight are two things that are in the future and in development and planning currently. One is the Critical Language Pathway. So we would be looking to implement a program for students where they began language learning in grade three. This will be a limited program, not a, not a county-wide program. We would select a location and select a group of students. And starting in grade three through eight, they would begin their language learning and then continue into the high school level. A critical language is identified by the government, looking, for example, at NSA, critical languages would be, you know, something like Russian, Chinese, things that they need people to be able to speak to work for government jobs. So the pathway that we would look for, they would take that, starting when they're little, continue it possibly all the way through high school, with the possible goal or the option as a senior to apply for an NSA internship as a language analyst internship that they offer. We've never typically had students do that because we've never taught a critical language to our students before in this county. So this would, we would be looking possibly at Russian. And the reason why would be because Russian is a language right now where a lot of the Cold War era people are retiring, and they do not have people available. And another critical language would be Chinese. A lot of our counties around us though teach that, and they also have native speakers of that. So Russian would kind of give our kids like a unique advantage when they go to apply for the internship. So it's just something that we've been looking at and possibly thinking about. That would require, and even to try it out, would be an FTE in the future. And then the last thing that's just in the very beginning stages, not for other places but for our county, is a dual-language immersion program, starting in elementary school, where they would learn two languages at once. They would learn to read and write in both languages as littles, and then continue their, their language learning throughout their, their career.
That is pretty exciting to hear that you'd be offering it at the elementary level. I can remember, you know, even years ago, some parents, as they were transferring their kids to our school, they would say, "Well, do you offer any foreign language at this level?" And of course, the answer would be no. So those last two, in fact, it's all very exciting because, again, you know, the need is there. And as you're saying, we'd really be preparing our students then for future pathways and future jobs.
I agree. I really think, you know, this would be, go a long way in supporting the goal of, of creating global citizens.
Yes.
Board members, any other questions?
I just want to thank you all for your time this evening, but also for the, the thinking and continuing to move our system and opportunities for our students forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present.
Yeah, I'd really like to echo that. Just, we, Ms. Pataglia and I really enjoyed the presentation at the October meeting of the CNI. And, and we were super excited about it, which is why we're, we're so glad to be, we're like, we need to get this in front of the rest of the board. So thank you for all of your creative thinking. And this, these are exciting ideas.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And into reports, the first one is the Pillar One update. Dr. Lockhart?
Thank you, Mr. Kyler. So January is the update for the Strategic Plan Pillar One, progress towards access and credit to a well-rounded curriculum, adjusted graduation cohort rates, academic achievement and progress. We have a team that's available to, to share this evening. You'll see that based on the last year of interruptions and some things being given to students and other things not, as far as assessments at the state level, it's not the typical report that we'd give, but we do have some updates that we wanted to share. And so, without further ado, Ms. McCuslin.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Lockhart, members of the board, Commissioner Weaver. Tonight's Pillar One report consists of access and credit to a well-rounded curriculum, Extended Learning Opportunities, or ELO, Special Education Recovery and Compensatory Services, CCPS Recovery Timeline, Fall Kindergarten Ready Assessment, or KRA, and Fall Administration of MCAP. And with me to help answer questions and give you a brief overview, Director Nick Shockney, Supervisor of Early Childhood Education, Ms. Pam Myers, and Coordinator of Local Accountability, Ms. Lauren Wilder Schafer. So the first section of access and credit to a well-rounded curriculum, in the credit section, we did have a decrease of about 8% on the credit side in both elementary and middle school. And as previously reported, obviously, there were interruptions to learning in 2020, 2021, which resulted in an increase in the number of students who received F's, which is why you do see a drop in the credit percentage on that side.
Ms. McCuslin, does, does that mean that we promoted fewer folks from fifth to sixth grade?
I do not believe that's the case. So you want to speak to that, Mr. Warren?
That is not the case. When we're looking at, you know, the credits, we're really looking at just those areas of physical education, health, fine arts, you know, and social studies. So it may have been that they received one F in one, in an area, so that would then, you know, then have them, you know, not have full credit. So students still, you know, received, you know, was promoted from fifth grade to sixth grade, but it's based on really, you know, any F that a student received in any of those content areas.
Okay.
And, and the other, you know, and so they also don't discriminate between the four, so they don't, you know, take out, so one F in social studies, it's all combined together. So if you received an F in any of those, you then, you know, do not receive credit based on the MSD report.
Okay.
And many of those students participated in summer recovery?
Correct. But summer recovery was really for the language arts and the math portion. Social studies and, you know, of course STEM was combined in that, but they may not have had, you know, summer recovery for PE or health.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Can I ask one question while we're here? I'm looking at the middle schoolers' access versus... I'm looking at the middle schoolers' access versus credit for 19, 20. Why is the access lower than the percentage?
So last year with the move of in and out of virtual hybrid and, and face-to-face learning, you know, there were times where administrators would notice gaps in student learning. And as far as the, the access, students had to be enrolled in all of those. And so if we noticed a gap in a student's learning and maybe had to pull them to, to provide additional instruction on the, on the math, ELA, social studies or science, then there, there may have been a case where maybe a student may have missed a fine arts section.
Okay.
And just, Dr. Dorsey, on that note, I did want to actually bring up just something anecdotal. You know, I went to my son's middle school concert just the other night. And we saw that the sixth grade orchestra, there were only like six kids in it. And you know, the seventh and the eighth grade orchestras were much larger, but a part of the problem was because these were the kids that would have been in fourth grade at the, at the short year and fifth grade during the last year and then moved into sixth grade. So they didn't really get access to a robust orchestra or band experience for the, the fourth and fifth grade years, which is where they're really learning those skills. And so I, I don't know if that was just, just happens to be at Shiloh or if that's a uniform thing across the county. But, and that's going to impact, I, I would think that that actually is having an impact on, on our, on our fine arts component.
I think that's across the board actually with, with the, with our music program. Because a lot of kids don't, the only access they get to instrumental music may be at the school level. And if they didn't have the appropriate amount of time or face-to-face instruction with learning their instruments. We, we do know that enrollment in, in those areas, we're going to have a little bit of a dip for the next couple of years. But we're going to continue to, to meet, continue to meet with students and talk to them and, and get them engaged in the, re-engaged in the program because we know it's extremely important. Yes. So at the high school level, access pretty much stayed, stayed the same. On the credit side, 3.6% dip. There were decreases in the number of students who took and met the standards set by college board on the SAT and the ACT. There was decrease in the number of students who met the University of Maryland system requirements, as well as complete a CTE program or study. We did however, see increases in the number of students who earned dual enrollment credit, completed a CTE industry certification, and earned the seal of bilingual literacy, and also who obtained a Maryland school certificate of program completion. Four-year adjusted graduation rate, slight dip in, in that as well. But we do know that there were a number of students who needed additional time with classes, possibly withdrew from the system or were disengaged, which caused that, that 1% decrease in the graduation rate.
And Ms. McCoslin, is that consistent with prior years, like a 98% level? Cause I know we, we typically report as the, it's greater than 95%, right? Like we don't, we don't normally see the specific number. Okay. So the 98% is more in line with what we had seen prior to the, the pandemic?
98, 99 is, is where we typically are, yes. And as far as attendance is concerned, there again, you see some slight dips. But we also know that attendance was something that, that all of us, school, school level directors, Mr. Streeker, Mr. Shockney, all of us worked very hard to make sure that when we were in virtual, students were entering their Google classroom. They were self-reporting their attendance. And I do know from being out at schools different times, that there were struggles sometimes with that attendance getting reported. Even though the students were present, they, they weren't always reported and those kinds of things. So I think just the, the change from virtual to hybrid to face-to-face, back to virtual for a period of time, that's one of the areas where, you know, we, we see a little bit of inconsistency with that. Okay. Fall 2021 extended learning opportunities. We had 840 students attend ELO across all three levels, 293 students at elementary school, 260 students at middle school, and 287 students at the high school level. And I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Hardesty, who worked with his department to get all the transportation taken care of for, for our kiddos, as well as Karen Sarno, who was able to provide food for our students who, who stayed after. And, and just a shout out to all the teachers and school administrators who put in extra time and effort to make this go. Because we did see really, really good results with our fall ELO program. As presented at the CNI committee meeting, we've seen dramatic increases in students who had zero Fs from midterm quarter one to the end of quarter one. And we have also seen significant decreases in the number of students who had one or more Fs from midterm quarter one to the end of quarter one. So exciting work and we're looking forward to gearing up for spring ELO and continuing that program as well.
And Ms. McCoslin, I did just want to tell the board, I, I'd asked a bunch of questions at the CNI meeting about these for the ELO results. Just trying to understand if, if there was like a control, if we had these numbers for the control group.
And Mr. Alisakis has those numbers for you next week.
Okay, great. Cause basically we're saying, okay, well, these are the kids that were in the ELO programs and we, we see definitely improved results, right? But just trying to understand, okay, well, the kids that didn't attend the ELO and may or may not have had Fs, like did we see significant improvement during, over the same timeframes? Cause we're trying to understand, okay, i- if that group improved at same rates, then that would indicate that the ELO program isn't necessarily as effective as we had thought. But if, if there's a, a big disparity in those two sets of numbers, and that means that the ELO is incredibly effective and we might want to start, if, if at all possible, you know, pushing more research in that direction.
And I will say anytime we can work with small groups of, of students, you know, four to one, three to one ratio with teachers, it's a great thing for students because not only is it about the academic, closing the gap academically, but it's also building the relationships with the students and meeting their individual needs. So that's always a great success.
You know, I was gonna, you know, so when we had the curriculum meeting, you know, we hear a lot of times like, what are you doing regarding extended learning, tutoring, helping our kids? I mean, this shows, we are working on it. You know, are, you guys are working on it. Those that are doing the tutoring are working on it. It, it is being done. There is outreach to do it. Yes. It's not being ignored at all.
Do you think it was different types of kids that, the ones that opted out of this and, and the ones in it? Do you think there were different types of kids? In other words, maybe these kids got a lot of, they wouldn't have succeeded if they went on, even the other ones did because of the small groups, because of everything. Is that, is that your feeling or is it hard to judge till you see the numbers?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking. I apologize.
It, regardless of how the kids had opted out of this, whether they did better or didn't, do you think this is more suited for certain kids irregardless of the numbers of success? These kids kind of needed this kind of a program or?
I'll, I'll be honest with you and it's, it's been a while since I've been in the classroom, but from a teacher perspective, I think anytime you can meet with a student, regardless where they are in their learning is a good thing after school. And, and even if it's just a matter of opening up a lab and, and allowing students come in to do homework and, and to engage with each other and have those conversations, regardless if they're an advanced academic student or if they're one of our lower level students who are, who are struggling to read those reading standards, I think it's a great thing for our kids.
Good. Thanks.
And can you remind us, so we had 840 students that attended. How many did we invite?
I don't have that information in front of me, I believe. I do not. I'll have to get you that information, Ms. Sivigni. I'll have that for you next week.
Oh, that's fine. I was just, I was just trying to remember because clearly the, the results here look quite strong. And that can be a case, that can be a case to say, okay, can we reach back out to some of those kids that maybe didn't improve as much?
So, so we went through these numbers several times as Ms. Herbert will, will attest to. We had about a 50%, I think it was about 48% positive response that are attending. Directors, I think that's about right. There was about 48 to 49% that decided not to attend for the fall.
Okay.
And before we segue into special education recovery, compensatory, keep in mind too, we'll, as part of our blueprint implementation, we'll offer a summer program along with extended learning opportunities throughout next school year as well. That's a requirement of the, of the blueprint. For our students that, that receive special education recovery compensatory services, there's our updated data there. We have about 3,000 students in CCPS that receive special education services. About 1,500 were eligible for compensatory services. We've started providing services to 891 and as of December 1, we're at 306 completed. I know that's a little bit, for me, I get, I get a little bit worried about our progress, but keep in mind too, we started with our students who have, who had the most amount of services first and then we're working through. So we'll continue to provide our compensatory services throughout the spring, throughout the summer as well. We also have those 11-month staff. The majority of the 11-month staff worked this past summer. I did have about 15 staff members that are currently working kind of a compressed 11-month calendar over 10 months. They're working right now in addition with a bunch of hourly staff as well. So we're making progress, but it's estimated that we'll be about at 600 completed by June. But we'll also be able to, to provide a significant amount of services because all of the 11-month staff will be working full-time this summer. And their primary focus will be extended school year services along with recovery and compensatory services.
And Mr. Shockney, so the, it looks like you're expecting to complete the services for about 600 students by the end of this school year?
By the end of this school year. It's an estimate.
So the other 900 that, that need to be completed, is there like a timeframe estimate for that?
There isn't. I mean, prior, prior to the pandemic, the typical timeframe that we would operate whenever we owed a student compensatory services was about a year. It was 12 months. MSDE from the beginning of the pandemic said it is not feasible to provide those services within a calendar year. So there, there is no timestamp on that. However, we know that these services are critical to our kids. So we're trying to get them done as quickly as I can and as we can and as our staff is able to do. The difficult about these, part about these services, they'll have to be outside of the student day. So we're getting really creative and working with families. We also know that there's some families who have, we've reached out to them and said, hey, we're available. They've said the time isn't right now. So it's been deferred a little bit. And we'll continue to work with families to, as much as we can on that. But, but again, you know, we're limited because these services have to be provided outside of the student day, which is, which presents a bit of a challenge. But we'll continue to parallel along with the extended learning opportunities, take advantage of transportation and meals and all those great things in place.
Good evening. I'm Pam Myers and I'm going to give the update regarding the kindergarten readiness assessment. I'm an early childhood supervisor and so it's my pleasure to oversee the implementation of this particular state assessment. It is completed each fall. It starts at the first day that the students enter our classrooms and it runs till mid-October. Much of the assessment is items that are assessed directly with a teacher asking students questions, but there's also observational notes that go into the assessment results. For Carroll County Public Schools, we have been doing a random sample. That means about 30% of our students are selected by the state and those selected students are based on our demographics. So we have a very nice sampling that is representative. We could make determinations based on the overall scores as to how our whole population would do. With a random sample, that is going to change in the fall of next year. The state is requiring that all school systems will be assessing each student. So we will go to a census administration for KRA in the fall. So that's very exciting because this is the first data point that we get as a school system on our incoming students. So at the very first portion of the school year, we will be able to determine the needs of our students right away. How are they coming to us ready for their instruction? So that readiness will be looking at language and literacy, mathematics, social foundations and physical development. The very nice thing about this particular assessment is that we do get that data point early on in a student's educational career. And there have been studies done at the state to correlate the data of the students, how they come into kindergarten and how they present in third grade testing. And so if a student is emerging, meaning that they need some more extra support, they will typically score in a low level in third grade. So what this means is that we can actually use our data when we get this census assessment. Every kid, our teachers, our schools, our school system as a whole can look at that data and actually make some resources available to students, intervene for them and try to change that trajectory in those early years. So that's something that I'm very excited about. The other thing I'd like to celebrate regarding KRA is that for this fall, when we did our administration, we were, as many of us were looking at how would we have been impacted on last year's schooling? If you can imagine, you know, little four-year-olds on a computer getting some of their instruction, not the same as obviously in-person instruction. So what is very exciting is that our students still came to us ready to learn. And that is shown by 54% of our students are demonstrating readiness. And that in comparison to the state as a whole, we're actually 14% higher. So the state showed 40% of the students coming in demonstrating readiness, but our school system ranked second, 14% higher than the Maryland overall. The other highlight that was very exciting is that we actually saw movement. And again, we're comparing from 2019 fall because 2020 fall data was waived across the whole state. We did not actually do the assessment. So I'm comparing the 2019 to the 2021. And we also saw movement of our students in the demonstrating. And that was also exciting to see 5% more of our students were coming and demonstrating, or I'm sorry, approaching. So we want to see demonstrating, approaching, and then emerging is the, the lowest level there. So overall, 87% of our students were either demonstrating and approaching, which is great news and a, an excellent data point for us to see our learners coming in ready. And we're ranked second and we're super excited about that. Are there any questions or? Yes.
Hi Pam. I just wanted to comment again, now when our, our students come in, we're tracking how many come in with pre-K experience.
Yes.
So that percentage is still pretty high, the ones who come in with pre-K experience.
Yes. And so thank you for asking that question. One of the things that's really exciting about our incoming kindergarten data is that we are partnering in our community. So we have childcare partners, we have Head Start, we have Judy Centers, and then our own public pre-K. And so with all of the work that we're doing in collaboration through an early childhood advisory council, we're all working towards that same goal of getting kids ready for kindergarten. This past year, we really did significant effort to get all of our pre-K classes to the highest capacity. We have 20 classrooms and we have room for 20 students in each of those classrooms. So we did a, a pretty big effort to get that enrollment up. And so we're pretty excited. We have 376 public pre-K students in our schools currently. And the other nice initiative that we're doing in pre-K in collaboration with special ed, we're doing some inclusion opportunities. So we've been working with our special ed staff to provide general ed environments and settings for students who may have been in an alternative pre-K setting in the past, a more maybe restrictive. So we're, we're having more and more inclusive opportunities for kids. And so we think all of those things are helping us to, as a community, support our children at the foundation level, bringing them in strong so that we can continue to build their skillsets and set them up for success in their education career. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm Lauren Wilder Schaefer, the local accountability coordinator. My main role is overseeing our state assessments. I have basically just our basic data from early fall. I know you guys have seen this ahead of time. So I don't want to go into too much detail and bore everybody. But of course, ask questions if you have any as far as the data is concerned. So Carroll County Schools did administer an early fall administration of our MCAP for science, ELA and math to our students in three through eight and high school courses. What you have, the data that you have is how we compare to the state overall in each subject area. We will have additional data. Hopefully by the end of this month, we'll receive data for our disaggregated groups and how individual groups of students performed overall. We don't have that currently yet, but we hope to get that soon to use for our instructional purposes and just kind of dig in a little deeper for that data. As you can see in science, you can see how we compare to the state and, and different counties overall. On the early fall administration, you could achieve three, one of three levels, a level one, level two or level three. Level one being approaching, level two being met, and level three exceeding expectations. So the red that you see is level one, the yellow, level two, and the blue, level three for each subject as we go on.
So I have a question. Now where it gives the grade level, so are we looking at this as our sixth graders who took the fifth grade test?
Yes. Sorry, I've delivered this data about three times and sometimes I forget the minimal pieces of it. So yes, we, this data counts towards our 2021 school year accountability reports. So yes, our sixth accountability reports. So yes, our sixth-grade students took a fifth-grade assessment to see how they, how they achieved overall for their fifth-grade curriculum. Not only did they participate in an assessment that was for their previous school year, they were only received a score for machine scored responses. So any written responses that they did in the assessment are not scored or a part of this data. It's basically only multiple choice questions on the assessment. It was also a shortened assessment, so it was about two sections rather than four, which they would normally receive.
And Ms. Schafer, the splits that they provide where the lowest category is approaching, and that's not very descriptive, right?
No.
So there are probably a good group of kids that are actually approaching, and then they're, but there, there needs to be segmentation, saying, no, but, but there's a significant group of kids or not that aren't even close.
Right. That's correct.
Right. Is there, is there going to be any future splits between that data so we can help understand that a little bit better?
So don't get too attached to these levels because for spring 2022, they'll be different.
Okay.
Already. So it's just ever-changing. We do, as the students receive their reports for, that they take home, there is a description of the three different levels and where they fall, kind of what that level's going to mean to them. Because this is, this is not a true administration of our MCAP assessments, we only receive raw scores, which means there's no definition of a level one, a level two, and a level three. As we move forward for our spring 22, and we get that data later on, we'll have true standard setting take place, and our psychometricians will give us those details of where each student falls within those levels and what that means moving forward. So really, we just have this basic information to use for instructional purposes, as it is our preliminary data and truly not quite finalized yet at this time.
Okay.
Do you want me to go through any specifics as far as scores for science, ELA, and math?
Math looks particularly bad across the entire state?
Yes.
Is there some, is there a hypothesis behind that, why math is so much worse than everything else?
I do not have a hypothesis for that. I'm not sure if any curriculum-wise, they want to share anything. As you said, it is a trend across the state. It typically can be a trend. It's more standard-specific, whereas it's, you know, each grade level addresses those specific standards, and ELA can be more, you know, we teach a skill, and it just kind of improves as our text level gets harder. So I think, you know, as we go on and we provide these supports moving forward, we hope to see an increase, of course, in both areas. Did you want to add anything for math?
I was just going to say that the ongoing use of local assessments as well are driving, will drive curriculum and instructional decisions. So that data will, will help us also move forward. The tests are also, they're developing new tests and new test questions. So we continue to also wait for MSDE to provide more guidance with the different state, state-level exams.
Okay. Are we seeing that trend in our local assessments?
I would have to have the appropriate content supervisor pull that information for me, but yes, they do have that information.
And something that will be super helpful moving forward is, we can see school level, we can pull the assessment and specific standards that we assess for MCAP and how we achieved overall. We can go as far down, as far down as to what students answered question number two correctly. So we'll be able to really focus on that standard and use it for our instructional purposes and planning moving forward to increase those scores.
I think it's, it's good, well, not good, it's amazing to also note that, you know, the percentage is for CCPS is better than what the state required was. So that is something we really need to, like, celebrate. I know, you know, everything else, you know, because of everything, it's kind of like, oh, that doesn't look good, but that, that is something, is a testament on getting our kids back in.
Absolutely. And we comparatively trend higher than the state in our assessments, which is great. So hope, and it's nice to see that we did keep that trend during this really difficult time.
So Ms. Schafer, I did also notice on the MISA scores that we were definitely much higher than the state percentages, but there was a big disparity between the grade six and the grade nine results for Carroll County. Do we have any thoughts as to what that means, and are we, are we changing, are we making any changes based on that information?
No, I'll take, I'll take that one. So great, great, great catch. So what we're, what we've done is, as you know, we're working tirelessly to create common assessments across our school system. One of the things with our new content supervisor, Ms. Weaver, she's actually taken upon herself and those that, that she oversees to bring them in, to, to begin to develop assessments that are clearly aligned to the standards that we're responsible for. Also, as Ms., as Lauren said, that it's, it's, it's the whole idea of this was selected response, right? What we do know about the MISA is there's a significant writing piece. In fact, we were just talking about it yesterday at, at Mountain Area Elementary, talking about the significance of, it's truly a reading, writing assessment at both levels. So what we want to be able to do is to create common assessments here locally that we can predict then how well these kids are going to do, this ongoing physical, if you will, instead of an autopsy when it's too late. So what we want to be able to do is then provide linear relationships on our local assessments to say, well, we're seeing a proficiency rate here at this, at this time of year. There's a high predictable, predictability that these kids are going to be proficient in these particular areas. So that's why we're, we're creating common assessments and putting so much time and investment in them, because the assessments are always going to change. You know what I mean? But the standards do not, and how they're assessed will always change, and they should change. If you know the content and you know, and you know your content, then you should be able to take any assessment and do well. But we do see that disparity between the elementary and the middle school. But Sarah is on it, and she's, she's taking that on.
And I do just want to add, especially with MISA, because this is, I don't even know what year we're in for MISA, but they do have released items on, as a, for our state for support, whereas ELA and math, because this is a new assessment, we don't have a huge bank of items built up that we, that teachers can access to really use as instructional pieces. MISA does have that. So we can go in and look at how these questions are being asked, and there's a variety of different techniques that they're using during testing within the site. So we definitely have access to that information and certainly use it to improve instruction and how they perform overall. So, and that's also something that parents have access to, our practice tests for MCAP, and just the accessibility features throughout the test, especially our younger students, really giving them that first look at what it looks like. And I know our teachers do that as well within the classroom.
Also, our content supervisors spend a lot of time on their own professional learning, getting on state committees where a lot of these test questions and different things are written, and, and then how they're scored and those kinds of things. So that also is very beneficial for us down the road. So our, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
So our next steps, as, as Lauren stated, we'll be getting that disaggregated data by the end of the month, where we can dig deeper into that. And then really, we want to spend a lot of time focusing on those evidence-based interventions and continue professional learning on school-based performance of our historically underserved students by continuing, having a performance academy in June of 2022. Performance Matters is a huge tool for us in looking at the data and having the data at our fingertips not long after the student has, has assessed. So that's also very beneficial, and we'll continue to use that, that information to drive our instructional decisions as well as revising curricular, curriculum and, and assessments as appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. COVID-19 fiscal impact report.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. This is the monthly fiscal report. We continue to finalize numbers on summer recovery and ELO. You'll see, we've also recognized the additional air purifiers, as we've discussed previously, and Mr. Hartlove, of course, is here if you have any questions.
I just have a comment. I'm glad to see it printed landscape-wise rather than portrait-wise. I was having a little bit of problem reading it earlier, but this is great. Thanks.
Schools construction report.
Okay, this is your monthly construction report. It contains the status updates for our two major products, projects, the Career Tech Center project and East Middle. And Mr. Marx, who's been running temperature control for us, thank you, this evening, is available if you have any questions or comments.
I did have.
Mr. Vigney.
Just a couple of quick questions. So on the Career and Tech Center, when is Phase One expected to be complete? I mean, the, the whole thing is expected to be complete in, in 2024, but...
This summer. This summer, we will finish, you know, with the first phase. That's what you see from Washington Road, and we'll be moving all those programs in to start for the fall of, for '22.
Okay, so next year, they'll be in, next school year, they'll be in the, the new portion of the building?
Correct. Those programs plus administration.
Okay, okay, great. And I think this is the first time we've ever seen only two, two projects on here at one time. So, but I guess there's, there's probably a bunch of roof and HVAC projects that will start shortly.
We're looking at that. Obviously, I only have two project managers at the current time, so that's fulfilling both managers easily with what we have. But, but yes, we are looking at some HVAC jobs. We're having some potential funding, help from the state to help launch some of those right now. So we're looking forward to seeing how that portrays out in this, this winter and into spring, and then we'll begin those. Now, obviously, I don't, with, with lead times of equipment and supply chain issues, having equipment available for this summer is pretty impossible at this moment right now. So if we do launch something like that for another job, like an HVAC job, we would plan it for the following summer, you know, with, with making it happen.
Okay, so we don't actually anticipate having an HVAC job going on this summer?
For construction, right.
Okay.
Right. We would be in procurement. We could be doing a lot of other things with that job to prep for it. We wouldn't be in, in actual installation of it. We are looking at some paving projects that we could, that we could do. That's about it for, for right now. Yeah, maybe some security items, too.
Was that reflected in the CIP? That we wouldn't have, the, the recent CIP that we approved, that there wouldn't be an HVAC project this summer?
Right, right. We were, we were right in the, in the cusp of trying to figure out whether we could make that happen. We're still making calls to vendors and people that are involved in the designs of them, to seeing what kind of experiences they're having right now in other counties and other LEAs, and it's becoming really more difficult. So that timing was right at that threshold when Mr. Kane was revising that. So if a miracle happens and, and things turn around in the weeks ahead, and we, like, for instance, Spring Garden has already been designed. So if there was a way that we could make that happen, we'll certainly do that.
Okay.
But it's really tough right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like Ray has something to say.
You'd like to sneak up behind him. Yeah, the, the, what we were able to do, what Mr. Kane was able to do, was to continue to work with the state, and we were able to fund the, the HVAC project, but it was later in the game. So a combination of getting those funds later will always take money, but also the, the issues with procurement, it's just going to have to push those. At first, we didn't think we were going to have a project, an HVAC project, but now at least we have that to plan for, for the following summer.
Okay.
Okay, into action items. I'd like to get a motion for the approval of the Ethics Panel appointments.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members. Members of the Ethics Panel served two-year terms, and these terms are set to renew. Our current members are interested in renewing, and I'm happy to recommend their reappointment to you this evening is outlined in the agenda packet.
Any questions? All those in favor, oh, sorry, Dr. Dorsey?
Well, I was just wondering if it would be helpful to have staggered terms for these members, or?
That's, that's certainly something the board can recommend, and we could look to institute in, in the future, I would think.
Yeah. I was thinking if all five choose not to re-up, we might be in a bind there.
So, good question. In, in your board policy, you actually do have staggered terms, but we had vacancies for a while. So when we finally filled them, I guess, two years ago, everybody ended up on the same sequence at that time. I guess we could, I don't know, we could figure, I don't, we'd have to think about how logistically we, maybe as people want to rotate off over time, we could, we could stagger from there.
Is there a significant amount of work that these folks do? I mean, do they meet like once a month, or?
No, they, so they meet at least annually, if for no other reason to review the disclosure statements that many of us are required to fill out under the ethics law. And then they meet as needed. If they, it could be at their, at their own choosing, if they wanted to work on rules or bylaws or something like that. But then they also meet whenever there is a request for a decision or, or an opinion of them. And sometimes that could be three or four all of a sudden in a row, and sometimes we might go six months without any person or entity requesting a, a ruling or a decision from the Ethics Panel. So it's not a scheduled, a monthly schedule. It's sort of once a year and then as needed.
Okay, okay. So it's not terribly burdensome. You, you could get a couple back-to-back.
Yeah, we've had years with higher volume than others, and we've had periods of time with a lag before.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, one of the things we could do is check with the, the members if there are two or three that would be interested in just serving a one-year term if we want to get back onto a staggered schedule. We could ask them that, there might be, and then we could bring two or three new appointments in the, in the following year so that we're back on a staggered rotation. So we could go ahead and ask the, the members if anybody's interested in that, and that would get us back to staggering.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Approval of personnel appointments. Could I have a motion?
Send it.
Second?
Which one did you pick for the motion?
Who was first?
Dr. Dorsey was first.
Dr. Dorsey was first, and you second.
But you said you heard Tara first.
Okay.
Doesn't matter. Whatever.
She was quicker.
Good, okay. Board members have seven recommendations for appointment this evening to you. First, recommending Michelle Brillhart, art teacher at Francis Scott Key High School to acting coordinator, facility use activities and athletics, athletic director at Francis Scott Key High School. Second, recommending John Code, who's currently the acting principal at Piney Ridge Elementary to principal at Piney Ridge Elementary. Jenna Eman, reading specialist at Winfield Elementary to acting assistant principal, Winfield Elementary. Bryn Felice, who's currently assistant principal at Winfield Elementary, we're recommending to coordinator of special education, birth-through-kindergarten program in the Special Education Department. Recommending Kristen Huffman, who is an administrative coordinator at Carroll Springs, to coordinator of special education non-public placements in our Special Education Department. Recommending Katie Neflin, currently assistant principal at Westminster High, to acting principal, Westminster High School. That would be, these next two are retroactive to last week. And Erin Robinson, social studies teacher at Westminster High School, to acting assistant principal at Westminster High School.
Board members, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like a motion for the approval of personnel action items.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Board members, this is your monthly personnel action items. There are four new hires, one broken contract, and two promotions, as outlined in the agenda packet.
Don's got him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Dr. Lockard, I just had a question about Ms. Thompson. Just with the .5 at one school and .5 at another school, is that, is that doable? Because that would assume that one day a week, she'd probably have to split up her days. Because that would assume that one day a week she'd probably have to split up her days. I'm assuming that that's been addressed. It just, I was just curious about how that works.
Yeah, typically, you're correct. There's, there's potentially a day there where there'll be a travel between schools from AM to PM, and that's built into the schedule. If Ernesto or any of the directors want to comment on that, but that's typically how that would work.
Is that something that we do with a fair number of?
Yeah, so people, people who are split between schools, yes.
Okay.
Yes. If it's, if it's a .5 and .5, that's how it has to work. Sometimes we have some .8s where it's two days here and two days there, or .6, I guess that is. But yes, to answer your question, that might be two and a half days in one place and two and a half days in another. And one of those days, you're, you're traveling from one spot to the other middle of the day.
Okay.
And we build that into those schedules to accommodate planning, lunchtime, and the travel time.
Okay. I was just curious, because I know most of the times that we see it, it's a, it's a split that it could be, you know, just a certain days at, at certain schools, right? Like, it wouldn't be a half-day split between two different schools. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like a motion for the credit change orders for Winfield Elementary roof replacement. Second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. So here's a bit of good news. The Winfield Roof Project required less flashing and insulation than anticipated based on the existing structural steel, resulting in credit change orders totaling just over $203,000.
Board members, any questions?
And Dr. Lockard, that just gets credited to, it gets moved to a count that can then be used for other projects where needed?
That is correct. I see Mr. O'Neill coming.
It, it would be credited to the project. If you recall from your last month's board meeting, eventually, as you close out a project completely, the state might show up and say, okay, based on our, our cost share, how much do we now receive back to, to keep our percentage the same? So once all of that reconciliation is, is, is done, then, then it's available to be transferred. And we typically work with Mr. Zaleski's team to make those transfers annually or every so often.
Thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like a motion for the approval of a ward of bids.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. Okay, board members, we have six items on this month's Ward of Bids. I'll give you a brief, brief summary on each of those. And then if you have any questions on any of them, please let me know. The first is an architectural and engineering services for a scope study for health suites. This item is something we, we wanted to approach comprehensively as a school system even before the, the pandemic. But certainly, the, the pandemic adds some weight to the matter. As with most other programs or physical aspects, our schools vary in size, age, layout, et cetera. Therefore, depending on those factors, the available space and location for health suites and isolation rooms can vary by building. In order to best address the needs of all schools, we believe the best approach is to have a system-wide study by an architectural and engineering firm to help us define the health suite specifications, and then work through the local capital process to plan and develop funding to best meet the needs of the schools. And so this will be funded through the local infrastructure renewal project accounts. Next up is the food services supply and small equipment. This is an item that, part of the renewal of Food Services Program and is funded by the Food Services Fund. This first item is a buying contract for one year for supplies and small equipment. The next item, item three, is for the installation of convection ovens in three schools. John, do you know which three? I can look back in the thing and see if it's here. We'll, we'll find out and get that to you. We didn't include that. I'm sorry. Number four, this is an item to increase the, the buying limit of a contract previously approved by the board with Nexus Systems, which is used to provide services to student in the home, students in the home and hospital instructional program. And so really, this just sets a, a limit, an up-to limit that we can spend. And we just wanted to make sure that we had room there. With the ongoing pandemic, with students, you know, higher than normal in, in the home and hospital services in traditional years, we felt that to be prudent to have that ability and, and, and seek that from you here. Number five is a buying guide for schools to purchase musical instruments as needed for next year. And number six is the Hampstead Elementary School playground. And this is to purchase and install new playground equipment. As you're aware, when schools need to replace playground equipment, fundraising happens at the school level. In this case, the PTA was responsible for raising these funds, and we were just the vehicle to which they run through to purchase that equipment. So those are the six, and we'll take your questions.
How, how bad is getting things? Or is, is it flowing or pretty hard? Particularly for us, but yeah. But thank you.
But we're talking about construction.
Yeah, yeah, these, these, these bids right here.
It ain't easy. Everything is taking much, much longer. It's, it's a struggle. You know, I, there isn't a commodity out there that, that's not being pushed further out. We're, everyone's working, we're, we're trying to address as much as we can furniture and equipment-wise, for instance, as early, as much earlier than we would have in the past. So we, we recognize it, and we're, we're working to, to make it happen. I know our, I know our contractors are struggling a bit, but so far, we've been able to stay ahead of that, that curve.
And then I, I heard from some other school systems on struggles with the food supplies. Has that been okay so far?
That I couldn't comment on. I couldn't comment on food, food supplies. I, I wouldn't know that.
It actually, yeah. For us so far, it has been okay. And in fact, you know, Mrs. Sarno, we've been working with Mrs. Sarno and her team to, for a while now, to see if we could find a place for additional freezers, because she, at one time, at least believed she could buy an even greater bulk and, and have a better economy as a result of that. So I, I wish you hadn't brought that up, but, but so far, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Knock on all the woods you can find.
Dr. Lockard says I'm a jinx. Board member, oh, Doc, Ms. Vigney.
Dr. Lockard, I do have a question on the first one, because it says that it's being funded out of the local CIP. And this is something that we haven't seen on any of the CIP projections. Like, it wasn't talked about in the, in the upcoming, like, in the, in the most recently approved CIP. I didn't see anything in there about updating the health suites.
The infrastructure, okay. So in your, in your CIP, you have some projects that, some project accounts that are only locally funded. The state wouldn't participate at all. Among those, you have one project account, which we call.
Infrastructure renewal?
Local infrastructure renewal. And that's a project account that you funded. The Board of Ed funded through a fund balance transfer some years ago. If you remember, there was a budget, there was a series of budget years, but one ultimately where we removed the entire operating maintenance budget, and we.
Yes, I, I know exactly what you're talking about.
That's what, that's what that fund is. And so it, things that would be funded out of that project are not, are not the size and scope of projects that would go through the state approval, that sort of thing. It's sort of there for an as-needed, you know, as we collect a series of, of small projects and prioritize them and, and look at the remaining fund, then we bring them forward to you in this manner.
Okay. A hundred and $29,000 for a scope study, though, would indicate that it's a very large project.
There's a lot of detail involved in sort of all of the aspects of what should be in a health suite, not just layout, but things like air, air exchange and, and that sort of thing. Also, what do you call them, Carl? Isolation, the isolation, separate isolation components to it, and have, having access to supplies and that sort of thing. And where, like water, so where we are as a system is, you know, newer schools have a, maybe that was something that was part of planning. A, a scope study might reveal that this school or that school or these other schools already meet the specifications as defined. And in, in other buildings, we would need to try to figure out, working with the administration, working with Carl and Felipe over time, you know, how could we possibly bring all of the schools up to the same consistent place?
Okay. But if we did move forward with those projects, so whatever the scope study told us, let's say that it resulted in a $20 million project, is that something that, that, that those dollars would all be funded locally as well? Or are they, are they things that we could get state participation from?
I'll ask Ray to come up. There, maybe there are some aspects of the state program where that's possible, with aging schools being.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, you know, the, like, like John said, the, the difference, the disparity is, is great. So some schools are probably going to be fine. Other schools, it's gonna be much, much more complicated to try to figure out how to create the space in what could be a landlocked or, you know, a locked suite, nurse's suite. So that, that's gonna be the struggle. It's gonna differ greatly, but it's gonna differ, and it'll differ by school. We'll probably end up creating individual projects to address those individual needs. And once we understand the, the magnitude, then we can start to determine whether that would fit into the overall capital plan, or whether that's something we could handle, that we could handle a portion of them through infrastructure renewal. If it's, it's relatively minor, it may have to, it may have to progress to a, to a larger capital plan. But we won't know that until we do the scope study and then understand just what those needs are and, and how we can possibly achieve them. So there's.
But if, but if they do, you know, if some do arise to sort of that, that level, there may be some state programs that, that, through which we could participate, like the, the state's Healthy Schools Fund.
Possible.
I think they've become a little more flexible in what they're interpreting as, as applying, as applying under that program. I think, isn't that where the money for Spring Garden came from? So when Ray and Jim were talking about suddenly we have state funding to move Spring Garden HVAC forward, previously, we weren't eligible under that, that aspect of state funding, and now, now we are. So step one would be to define the scope and figure out what size projects we're looking at, state, state. Step two would be to then try to prioritize funding over time, whether it's local and/or state.
So what, what is precipitating the, the need or desire to do this project or do this look? I mean, obviously, COVID is, is bringing things about health suites to the forefront. But absent COVID, do we think that there's a significant problem?
Yeah, there's, there's a great disparity between, between the health suites. And there's, there's definitely a disparity in, in what MSD is, is determined are the basic, the basic offerings for the health suite. So we, we knew there was something on the horizon. We just, just recently, we were able to pull together, when Mr. Streeker and Felipe got, got a little time, we were able to pull together some, get, get some discussions and decide to, it was just more complicated that we could handle in-house in terms of understanding the, what we would have to, what we'd have to do to accomplish, to accomplish that, you know, to, to make things a bit more equal between schools.
Like, as I was sort of describing this in the, in the summary, some of these health suites are, are much older and, and much different than the, the newer construction we've seen in some of our buildings, even in the last 15 years. And needs have changed over time. And so now we see students who need to be tube-fed in the nurse suite or, you know, a different kind of care than they were originally designed for 40 years ago even. And so the space is not conducive for some of the, the, the current needs of some of our students and what we provide from a health perspective. And so, like I said, even before the pandemic, we were kind of looking at that, going, okay, we need to probably start to think about what are some of the modifications or changes we need, we need to make to sort of, to, to make these spaces more contemporary for the needs that we address in our health suites.
And even on, Tara and I were both on the last two construction committees. And even talking about a new building, it was a lot of how big and what should it be next to? And, you know, how do you share space? And what, how do you isolate kids? It was a lot of stuff about the new schools, so I can imagine we've got a bunch that don't match.
Yeah, whatever's the new requirements are, old school versus new school, things of that nature, I mean. Yeah.
Any more questions? Are we comfortable voting on them all together? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion for the approval of the politically neutral stance board policy.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lockard?
Board members, at your request, we were working on a policy regarding politically neutral stance. Ms. McCabe is here. We came to a work session in September, went over existing policy and regulation, and some of the FAQs that accompanied that, got board feedback and input for consideration at the November 10th meeting. We discussed proposed revisions, additional considerations. At the December 8th meeting, the board revisited those revisions and had future requests for consideration. So Ms. McCabe is, is now back to, to present that to you and for us to have some discussion this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. At the last meeting, one of the, one of the, the major requests from the board was regarding some kind of formal process for parents to use if they felt that they had a concern at their child's school. And so we did some research into what some of the other school systems around us did as far as formal concern processes. And what we found was that in Howard, Montgomery, and Frederick Counties, they're using a, a general form called a formal concern form that is available on their website. And parents can either download it, print it out, fill it out, and, and give it to the school, or they can send it electronically. And what the form does is it takes the parent through our regular process of how to deal with a concern as a parent. It, it advises them to go first to the staff member or the teacher that they are concerned about or that where the concern took place. And if they don't get resolution there, to go to the principal. The form can also be used if they've tried to get resolution from the principal, and they still don't have that resolution, then it would go directly to the school-level director. So at the elementary level, go to Mr. Wernick, middle, Ms. Gramada, and high school, Mr. King, and they would work through the issue with the parent. So again, the, the form would be available on our website, although it wouldn't have to be used. So if, if a parent calls the school and wants to talk to the teacher or the principal, they're not going to be forced to fill out the form. The, the concern will still be processed the way that it has been processed in the past. So the form is something that a parent can use, but they don't have to use. And it doesn't take the place of a formal appeal. So we have a formal appeals process in the system. And so this is aside from that. This is, this just takes parents through a, a grievance or a concern process. So the form is there. Does the board have any feedback on the form or anything that we may need to revise?
Ms. Vigney?
Ms. McCabe, I just wanted to say, I, I, I really like the form. I think it's, it's good, and it walks the, the parents or guardians who might have a concern through the process, right? Like, it says, look, have you talked to your teacher first? Have you talked to your principal next? On what dates did that happen, right? Like, so it kind of, because I think a lot of parents are out there saying, we, we don't know the right process to follow. We don't know exactly how this works. And so I really like the fact that it's, it's a broader concern form. It can be used for anything, right? And, and it kind of walks people through, okay, this is what you should be doing as, as a matter of course. So I think it'll be very helpful for the, the public to see it. I think it's well thought out, and nice job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Dr. Doris?
It's not a question. It's really just a concern. I really do not want to see any kind of tracking form that's a part of this policy. And again, I know that, you know, we're looking at the policy level and not certainly the, the administrative regulations. But again, I just think, you know, we've. But again, I just think, you know, we've got a professional teaching staff. We need to treat them as a professional teaching staff. We already have steps in place for when there are concerns or issues. So again, I'll just give an opposing view to having such a data collection form.
Ms. Herbert?
Like Pat, I've I've taught in this system for over 40 years. We have a policy. We have progressive discipline. And I am having a hard time with this too because who wants to come to Carroll County? And I think it's misconstrued. This will not this will not be a tracking form, correct?
No, it's not a tracking form.
Because I know parents thought tonight that they were going to be able to track things and keep tallies and all that, according to some of the comments. That's illegal.
No, I think and that's the thing that that what happened was.
Excuse me, I'm talking about the tracking part and and having parents know what's going on. That's they can and I understand. I taught, yes, I did see teachers go rogue. I'm not saying that you don't, but it was just a mini school handful. But I don't want a tracking system. I don't want a hotline. I don't want people keeping numbers. I want principals handling their own problems. So that's what I got to say about this. I just.
Mr. Kyler, can I respond to that? Just because I I want to say like, so just to be clear, like, I know there was a lot of comments.
Right.
It is this is not meant to and I think this is being taken way out of proportion of what the intent is, right? Like, we're not developing a brand new policy. We're we're expanding upon a policy that already exists just to address something that. So if if the if it's already sort of an unspoken policy in the county, then we're just codifying it, right? Like, we're just putting it into words like and it's getting it's getting blown out of proportion. Like, the the form isn't meant to track teachers and keep keep track of things and disciplinary actions. It's meant to help us as a board understand what is going on in the county. Is this a problem? Is this not a problem? Like, we don't want to know about specific teachers. We don't want to know about how principals are handling it. I think we just want to understand, like, what's the incidence level? And are there trends in different parts of the county or anything like that? Like, we don't we don't want to know anything confidential or specific to any individual teachers, right? Like, it's just like from a summary report level to see if it's a big issue or if it's not a big issue.
And I I don't I I don't mind. We already have a policy. But I I think some groups out there think we're going to track, we're going to do hotlines and and that they're going to go after these these individuals. But it's but we're getting into personnel and things like that. I don't want that. I I really, I do like your form. Because parents have a tendency, and I've lived through it. Instead of calling me about a problem in a classroom, they call either my supervisor or they they called Dr. Lockhart's father, you know? There is, I'm just telling you, there is a progression. I do like that form as long as it's used in the proper way. I do not want a witch hunt. So that's, you know, that's 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 my worry, that people are going to want to try to keep track and all that. And that's not for them to do. If if a teacher is not doing their job, it's the principal's job to do administration or progressive, whatever, discipline on that person. But I just don't want it to be a witch hunt. That's not fair to teachers. And who in the world would want to come teach in Carroll County if if people are misconstruing this? And I think people are.
Yeah, they really are.
And that's bad. That is bad advertising. And we need teachers. But as tonight, as people were talking, I just want to make sure everyone knows it could be a really good piece, but not what some of these people think it's going to be portrayed at all. And that's that's why I have a negative feeling about it because we we shouldn't be treating our employees like we're looking over their shoulders. They're professionals. They went to school. Yes, some of them do have some different ideas when they get out. I understand that. But they all get in line as as they get older and, you know, understand the policy. But I I just I just don't want it to be a witch hunt. And I think people are thinking that they're going to be able to go and track it and see, oh, yeah, this teacher did it 20 times a century and this. I don't want it to be that part. That's all. I'm very concerned about that.
And I'm not sure anybody that did public comment about it was close to write about what it is. And and I think just for everybody's benefit, you had your card up a long time and Dr. Lockhart's next. And then I think Commissioner Weaver. So go ahead.
I just think that community perception plays a really big part in the passing of this policy. Everyone's definition of the word political is different. And from the way that this policy has been portrayed or seen in the community, I just it's generated such a culture of fear in our teachers right now. And I really don't want our teachers to feel significantly hesitant while teaching the curriculum. And I know that many already feel that way because of certain actions and certain things that have been said at board meetings, not only by the board members, but also by the public. And I also have like similar misgivings against this policy because of that, because we already, again, have these teacher shortages. And if we want to attract teachers to come to Carroll County, I just really don't think this is the best idea going forward.
Dr. Lockhart?
Thank you. Yeah, I I concur with that sentiment. The my concern, I think the content of the, you know, policy as revised is fine. It reiterates the intent of our expectations. And the intent of our expectations all along is that students can freely engage on issues and teachers have to carefully moderate those conversations and not use the class as a captive audience to insert their own political beliefs. That's something that's been in place for a long, long time. Frankly, I I'm not even sure I think there's a need for a form in this context. The systems that have had these things in place, they put them in place under a different context. It was trying to inform people about just in general, hey, you have a concern of any kind. Here's here's what you can do. Here's how you can, you know, connect with your child's teacher, your child's principal, or if you're not satisfied with whatever that is. I feel like frankly, putting that in place right now sends the wrong the wrong message to our teachers. I'd love to try to to elaborate and communicate moving forward with our parent community, the the tried and true approach of if you have an issue, go to your child's teacher with whatever that is. And if you're not satisfied, go to your child's principal. But I do feel like we're sending the wrong message to our teachers and particularly to your point, Mrs. Herbert, trying to attract new teachers and keep the ones that we have with with a a form for this policy.
Mr. Weaver?
We've dealt with this for 40 years that I know of. I've personally had to deal with teachers this way. I know you have, you have. And simply mostly just a conversation, you can't do this, you're professional, don't do it anymore. And it doesn't happen. The form is, I think, offensive to teachers. And Dr. Lockhart, I think you hit it the way it should be here. The policy update is in there. It's the way it should be. But you don't need a form tracking this. And I think that Teresa McCullough on the way out said that today. You know, this is not what teachers need at the present time. They are professionals. Treat them that way. Don't treat them as students here at this point with a form. And I just had to mention that. I've dealt with it and it's it's not a big issue.
Definitely the tracking, they keep using the word tracking. It's not even that. It is completely misunderstood. There needs to be something that parents can fill out to say, look, this is my concern. It's no different than the bullying form. I mean, we go to the grocery stores, whatever, you get a receipt and you have a survey at the bottom of the receipt that you can fill out. I I don't understand why it's being perceived as this is on a witch hunt for teachers when it's not.
And everyone wants to say that's what this is. We're tracking them. It's not, there's not a button that people are going to look at and see who's done what where. It's just to make sure that things are in place, no different, like I said, than the bullying form and that things are followed up with administrators in the schools. Yes, we want our teachers to have freedom to teach. We definitely do. But there's a difference than when they're teaching something and they're having discussions and when they're putting their personal beliefs into something. There is a big difference. And that personal belief does influence our children. When a teacher says to a student, white cops are killing black people, that's wrong. When a teacher says to a student, if you don't go get your COVID shots, you're part of the problem and why we'll never get out of this, that's wrong. Those are the problems that I hear from parents, I personally see with my kids. And those are things that have to stop because that is what causes the divide. That is what causes people to go, wait a minute, how is this allowed? I can't do that at my job, so why do they get to do that? It draws concern. I I'm sorry, the teachers seem to think this is a witch hunt or we're trying to make them sound like they're not important. Everyone else has had accountable in their jobs. Everyone else has to follow rules. Now, we talk about inclusiveness. Well, how is a student supposed to feel welcome in a classroom if they know what their teacher's views are different than theirs? If they full well knowing that, how are they supposed to feel welcome? I I honestly, I think I'm I'm for this, you know? I'm and parents, when there's concerns, parents need to make sure that their voices are heard.
And if I can just do one couple of seconds before you. I I think the rhetoric, like I say, for and against was so wrong. I look at this as as a modified, very necessary policy. The form is one more way to report. It's not a tracking mechanism and it and it's no more of a document than an email or a note sent in or whatever. It's it's just one more option. And I don't think I don't I know I don't intend for it to be negative to a teacher. I I think it's just it's no different than calling the principal. Ms. Vigney?
I I think the same thing. There was a lot of just misinformation and confusion and things getting really blown out of proportion. Like, I just wanted to reiterate that the intent of this policy is not to provide an opportunity for parents to file false or frivolous allegations or for us to have a witch hunt. Like, there's absolutely nothing of that sort. It's just meant to be a layer of transparency and accountability to promote and ensure public trust in in the school system. That's all we're trying to do. I think some trust has been lost along the process because of seeing things that are happening as part of the pandemic and and part of virtual learning. And there is such a polarized political climate right now. And and it's been brought to the the forefront. So we're we're just trying to, I think there's been a little bit of loss of public trust in the school system. We haven't lost that trust, but this is just to add a layer of accountability and transparency for the public. They know and understand this is what's expected. This is what's in the policy. And if I have a concern or a question, okay, I know now I'm supposed to go talk to the teacher and I'm supposed to talk to the principal. And if I don't think that I'm getting satisfactory explanations or whatever, that there I have someone that I can, some concern form that I can fill out, right? It's not meant to track individual teachers or target individual teachers. And when we were talking about reporting, it it would literally just be to try to understand trends and how big of a perceived problem there is from the community, right? And and what are the major topics that we're seeing? There's there's parts of those elements, like everything that we've been talking about. What's really funny to me is later on, we're going to be looking at the the bullying and harassment policy. And what we've been asking for as part of this policy is a lot of those elements are already in that policy. But yet here, it's it's been completely demonized. Where really, we're just trying to trying to provide some transparency to the community. And it's definitely not meant to stymie any discussions in the classroom between students, right? Like, when when they're learning about political concepts in their history classes or when poli sci classes, there's supposed to be debate and discussion amongst the students. It's just meant to make sure that there's not a bias introduced into the discussion from the educators. And 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 I don't think that there's a big issue. Like, we know that there's, we don't think it's in the curriculum. So we don't want to stymie that discussion between students either. So I think this has just been misconstrued, blown out of proportion. I did want to make a motion to add a couple of pieces to to the guidelines section, very basic, not prescriptive. But I think that as an extra layer of transparency to the community where we make some references, right? Like, you know, there there's been lots of stuff about progressive discipline. I certainly don't want any of that in this policy. But if we make reference to where those where those provisions are in the negotiated agreements, if we make reference to the formal, the formal concern form. So that, Mr. Kyler, is is it okay for for me to go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, I guess you're amending our motion to accept this.
Right, right. So I'm making.
Excuse me, could I just say something before you start making those?
Sure.
I don't mind the policy. I don't mind that policy at all. But when it's connected to this, that's negativity. If we could do this somewhere, somehow, for everything, I don't have a problem with it. But when you attach it to this, and I have a social studies teacher talking about the elections and someone makes a misstep, then they'll they can go home and say that. And he said, she said, and I don't want it to be that. I do like this form. You can make complaints about, well, in, you know, something's really going wrong awry in the cafeteria and it needs to be addressed, you know? Or if my child was pointed out in class today, that's fine. But I don't like these together because it looks like we're pinpointing, we're targeting teachers. Does that make sense?
That makes that makes sense, but the one point is it's one thing if social studies is talking about the election. It's a whole other thing if world history or maths talking about the election. That's not in the curriculum.
Right.
And and whether they send an email or call the teacher or call the principal or fill out that form, I don't see the difference. But but that's me. And and you were next and then back to Donna and then you have a card up, right? Yep, so.
Well, I think it just again comes back to community perception. And I just have another example of how this could be inadvertently negatively affected. So in eighth grade English class, we are, we, students read To Kill a Mockingbird. And as part of that English class curriculum, we learn about lynching and post reconstruction, post Civil War era segregation in the South and the social sort of consequences of that, which is part of the English curriculum. We are also taught in English class to make connections. So not only connections to past events, but also connections to real world events, to current events that happen. And of course, we can't put every single current event that happens into our curriculum. But say a teacher wants to bring in or a student wants to bring in the connection of the case of Ahmaud Arbery as an example of a modern day lynching. The issue comes therein with some in the community would consider that political. Whereas some would consider that, "Well, that trial has happened, that verdict has come out, so this is a fact. How is this political?" So, it's just instances like that and then just getting into the nitty-gritty of that, I think, is what is so off-putting about this policy for me as a student.
Dr. Dorsey?
I'll just make these last few comments. Again, teachers are professionals. And again, I heard the word accountable and accountability mentioned. Well, they are held accountable. And again, they're held accountable for teaching the curriculum. If things are not being done appropriately, that is being handled. I mean, the administrators, the supervisors, we have steps in place to really work with teachers who are not following the curriculum. So, the accountability piece is there. And again, we have steps in place already to take care of staff members who may not be following the curriculum. And I just wanted to comment as well. I heard somebody mention about the bullying form that will be, or the bullying that we'll be talking about a little bit later. Well, that's concerning students. When we're talking about bullying, we're referring to students. Here, we're talking about the staff members. So, I don't think we need to put them at that same level as saying, "Okay, now bullying, yeah, we're going to..." Because by the state standards, we have to track the bullying incidents. So, again, I don't want to equate what the students are doing with bullying with the teachers and teaching the curriculum. So, again, I'll just make one final comment that, again, this form does not go in line with us respecting our teachers and treating them as professionals.
Can I make the motion? And then we can have additional discussion. We know that our teachers are professionals. We do respect them as professionals. These types of policies and these types of things exist in every industry for employees. We're not, it's nothing different. So, I, like I said, I think that this is just, the rhetoric and the pushback has just been not necess... I'll leave it at that. I would like to make a motion. Under the current Section 5 guidelines, it currently says, "The superintendent shall issue regulations and periodic guidelines to implement this policy." I would like to add three bullet points just to reference other items so that the public understands where these things are and what the elements are. So, it would say, "These regulations shall include provision for the following. One, the use of the formal concern form found at the link", and provide the link where that information is. "Two, instructional and administrative staff will be trained on the content of this policy and associated regulations annually. And guidance for any, for non-compliance shall reference the negotiated agreements", and just have the links for each of the negotiated agreements. So, just keep it very basic. I was also going to ask for something under the reports section. But I think that based on all the discussion and all of the pushback, I would say to leave that piece out, just understanding that the board would potentially occasionally like to be able to request, like, "Okay, well, how many times was a form filled out?", like, not necessarily in connection with this policy even, but just how many times was a form filled out? Are there any issues? Like, is it more often at certain schools than others? Like, just trying to understand trends or issues or concerns that are coming up from parents. So, just understanding that we might ask those questions occasionally and would like to see very summary-level data. I think that we could leave that piece out of out of this policy. So, I just make a recommendation to add that, those three items under guidelines. And it's not even stating, you know, any specifics about administrative regulations. It's simply saying that we're basically referencing a couple of other items. And that's something that we do in a lot of our policies. So, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on this amendment to the motion? No discussion? Dr. Law?
Right. I do remain concerned about connecting the form to the policy. I mean, we have a ton of policies that if a parent has a concern, we're not referencing the negotiated agreement or here's a form to fill out. The training piece was, I think we included that in the draft regs we submitted. I just feel like we're creating a perception. I know the perception exists. I feel like we're fueling that perception further.
And I know that we don't have any control over the administrative regulations, right? Like, that could be taken out at any time, which is... But I think that we've talked about, I've actually spoken with several teachers that had said they actually kind of welcomed this and they welcomed the professional development because they want the guidance. They want to make sure that they're doing the right things. And so, I I would just like to see those pieces. And I think that it's not meant in a negative way. And I think if we don't portray it in a negative way and if we're being consistent with policies across the board, like, so when we update policies in the future, I think it makes sense to make references to other things that are out there because half the time, the community doesn't know where to go, what exactly they should be doing, what forms do I fill out, what do I... So, just making the references, I think, is helpful to the community that we are serving.
So, restate, you said a couple of things you weren't adding, but then there are three things you want to add under five.
Okay, right. Under five, I was going to say after the words that are already there. So, "These regulations shall include provision for the following. One, the use of the formal concern form found at this link", give the link. "Instructional and administrative staff will be trained on the content of this policy and associated regulations annually. And guidance for non-compliance shall refer to these negotiated agreements and provide the links to the negotiated agreements."
My question would be with the form, is that implying that you have to use the form? You can't talk to the teacher, the principal, or send an email, or?
No, it's just making provision for it so that the form is out there and just showing folks where it is.
Any more questions? I don't know. You have to holler if I'm out of line. I understand what you're saying. In the regulation and the fact that the form submitted now, there's no guarantee that it can be out there for all policies, which I almost think if we, if somehow we could say, "We want this form on the website for parents, families, whoever, to report whatever", I do really like the training. The links, I'm not sure if we're consistent with other policies or not. So, I don't know how you feel about the pieces. All or nothing? What do you think? And I do agree, a lot of this is the misconception both sides have on what this isn't going to do a lot. And I'll be honest, if I'm a teacher, this doesn't intimidate me because I'm going to do my job and nobody's ever going to fill out the form. I don't understand the witch hunt comments and the whatever. Again, HR has a book this thick where I work. And I, as executive vice president, I don't get to challenge too many pages of it and I'm definitely not insulted by it.
Right. I have to go through training and fill out certifications and everything else on a regular, all the time.
I understand the perception stuff, but...
If everyone's concern is the form, then just put a link to the form on the document and then put the form on the homepage of the website. It's, I mean, no different than COVID info, bullying form. And the bullying form has, you know, references to HR, how, you know, an employee can file a report and everything, so...
Do we just say references of interest?
I think perhaps the confusion is the form is part of the presentation this evening. It's not part of the policy.
Right.
It's not part of the regulations. And I don't think that it was the intent of the superintendent or of Ms. McCabe to imply that the form is supposed to be part of the policy or part of the regulations.
Right.
The form, which I believe Ms. McCabe indicated, is virtually identical to forms found in Howard County, Frederick County, and Montgomery County for much more general purposes. And the confusion and the concern is that it is stapled to Action Item 8F. But the form itself is not presented to the board for action. The form is for the superintendent to put out as something on the website. So, if you have a concern that you think that the teacher smelled of alcohol, you can fill out this form.
Can you turn your mic on, Ed? Sorry.
If you have a concern that the teacher is inappropriately dressed, fill out the form. If you have a concern that the teacher is not instructing the students properly, fill out the form. It's not specific to proposed revisions to Board Policy GBI. And Board Policy GBI has been in existence since 1990. It was revised in 1998 and the proposed revisions are here in 2022. So, the concern, I think, is the linkage of the form. And that, I think, is perhaps unfortunate because it's giving a different twist than was ever intended. And you heard from members of the community with very polar viewpoints. And the whole idea behind this policy is to be right down the middle. You heard a lot of concerns about curriculum, but this policy has nothing to do with curriculum. This policy has nothing to do with the materials of instruction, the course of instruction, anything that is being taught in accordance with the curriculum as aligned by Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards, State Board of Education regulations. This policy and the regulations are designed to make sure that teachers adhere to the curriculum and not deviate by injecting personal political viewpoints that are contrary to the curriculum and, as has been suggested, may make some students feel unwelcome. Whatever those viewpoints might be, left, right, whatever, the whole idea is to be neutral. So, my concern here in hearing all the discussion is the tying of this form, which really should be a separate document. It is only presented in this discussion because it came up. It is not designed to be tracked. And so, if we could somehow put this over here and keep the policy separate, I think that's probably along the lines of what the board initially asked for six months ago.
So, that being said, we look at this policy, except the changes, like you say, it's been around a long time. And it also talks about elections and a lot of other things.
Right.
If we do that, can we, with a separate motion, say we would like this reporting form be added to our website and be an opportunity for people to report anything?
Well, I think it was presented because that was the intent of the superintendent to do that. I think it's the linkage to this particular
Exactly, exactly.
That's causing the concerns from both sides.
So, then the... So, does it make sense to reference the form in the policy or do we... Because we were talking about making references, right? Like, references that are valuable to the community to understand what the policy is and what the provisions are. So, we were saying there would be a reference to this form. There would be a reference to the negotiated agreements so that the community can see where those are and find them.
I'm glad we got... Thank you for that differentiation, you know? Because I said, "I don't mind the policy whatsoever. We've had a policy. I don't want that to be combined." And I will vote yes on this if there's no amendments and that the other paper is not attached in any way, shape, or form.
My question would be, the progressive discipline, that exists. Whether we say it in here or we don't say it, that exists and has been used for this policy.
It's in the negotiated agreement.
Yes, yes.
We're bound to abide by progressive discipline.
Yeah.
And discipline doesn't even come to the board unless you are sitting as an appellate body.
Yes. And the form, if it's going to be used, I don't know if it's negative, positive, needs to be tied for this. If it's going to be used, they can use it for that. I do like the amendment of training. I think, you're right. I think there's people that have requested that. What do you think of that part of this?
Training is in the regs right now.
Right. We included it in the regulations.
Yeah. So, if it's already in the regulations, there's nothing wrong with saying it here because the board feels that it's that important. We want to make sure it stays in the regulations. Is that...
That's really just what it was meant, was that we just, we think it's important and we want it to make sure that it stays in the regulations. So, and we're just trying to make reference to things, right? So that the public understands the process, they understand what the policy means.
So, what is your amendment now?
Well, I had three items to add, right? So, let me just put this out there as a possibility. So, if we kept under the guidelines, so currently it says, "The superintendent shall issue regulations and periodic guidelines to implement this policy", if we said, "These regulations shall include provision for instructional and administrative staff to be trained on the content of this policy and associated regulations annually", and then add a section that says, "Reference, important references", or just references, and say, "The formal concern form is found at this link and negotiated agreements are found at these links."
What, and again, Mr. Mill, I'd be curious of your thoughts on this. What if you just said there will be progressive discipline per whatever current regulate... My problem, and we got into that with some other things, if you reference something and then it changes next year, do you change it? If you reference KOMAR and that changes next year, do you? You know, we even talked about the one just saying, "As seen in KOMAR", or "As seen in whatever", if we make this too specific, are we tying our hands?
Well, if you make it too specific, it lends itself to repeated revisions every time something else changes. But progressive discipline is there whether you have But progressive discipline is there whether you have it referenced in a policy or not. It, it, it's part of the negotiated collective bargaining agreement and has been, I think, as long as I've been involved with the school board, and that's going back to the eighties. I mean, that's old language, as is the academic freedom section in, in Article Five of the negotiated agreement. There's nothing in this policy as written that adds or detracts from the provisions in the negotiated agreement. They're there. And the only way the provisions in the negotiated agreement can change is if during the course of regular collective bargaining, there is an amendment to the language in the negotiated agreement. I don't know that we want to invite further negotiations on those terms. You've got enough to negotiate with the blueprint coming up. You know, it's there, it's always been there, and it's going to remain there. So I don't know that you need to put one policy in another policy. But that's just my thinking.
Well, I, I was just thinking, just as a layer, because when the community looks at this, they want to know what the situation is and how it's handled. And they don't, they can't find it. They don't know that it's in the, they don't know that it's in the negotiated agreements. And if, even if they did know it was in the negotiated agreements, they don't know where to find them to take a look at it. So it's just a layer of transparency to say, here's the reference. Like, we're not saying that, like, you can't change it, it's just, just a link. So as long as those files are always at the same place on an annual basis as they change, you can reference those documents.
Any more comments?
I'll just make the one comment that, again, as Mr. Amelia said, I mean, we've had this political neutral stance for years. So I'm for saying, yes, we're going to be politically neutral. And to me, that even carries over, you know, when you're talking about your, your board seats. Well, no one needs to know what party you belong to if it's a nonpartisan board that you're running for. So I can carry it, you know, to other levels as well. But I'm saying I really can follow the political neutrality policy, the way that it's outlined in blue numbers one through nine. And, but I can't support anything that will reference any kind of form because, again, I, I just don't think, I don't think that it's needed. And as I've said before, I mean, we pulled out the calendar the, the one time and, and looked at the steps to be followed as they're outlined there when there are issues or concerns. So again, I'm for being politically neutral, but I'm certainly not for any kind of form to, to capture anything that you would be trying to capture here. Because, again, I think we need to treat our professionals as professional.
Can't, can't you put the form on the website as a special item, just separate it for anything concerned? And just use it for any parent to look at it anytime, to deal with? They should be able to find that somewhere on there.
That's what I said initially. I think the other school systems that Ms. McCabe referenced, they created those things out of a different context. And they've been probably on their website for, you know, some iteration for years. I think it's the connection to, that, that we've discussed.
So what is that? I don't, I can obviously, I can vote for the training. I, I, I think the progressive discipline is covered, and, and I think the form doesn't have to be leaked. That's my opinion. What do you guys?
I just wanted references.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
Just the reference link into the policy, that way it's there and if anybody needs it. And it's, again, it's no different than some other policies we have where it references whatever the different policy is for another policy. But whatever.
As I said.
I don't think it's that hard.
Well, I will vote for the policy, but I will not vote, I do not, I will not vote for any amendments.
Point of order, so the motion currently on the floor is that for the amendment, correct?
It's correct.
Thank you.
So, and the motion on the floor is for the training to be included and reference to the form and the negotiated agreements.
Right, the three, the three bullets that you outlined in your motion and was seconded by Mrs. Pataglia, that's currently on the floor. So.
Yep.
When you get to the point where you call for a vote, it's on that motion to amend.
Amending this to those three things.
The proposed policy.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
May?
Yeah, so it does not carry.
What was, what were you?
I'm a no.
Okay.
I can't do all three things.
So, so the, the motion to amend has been denied.
It's denied.
And now you go back to the original motion.
Unless somebody else wants to make a motion to amend.
I would like to make a motion to amend that we just include the instructional and administrative staff to be trained on the content of this policy and associated regulations annually.
Second?
What is it, training?
Training.
Just the second bullet point that I originally had said.
The training bulletin?
Yep.
The training bullet point.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
So that, so that passes. So now, are we ready to vote on the motion to approve this with the amendment of adding that one item? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that passed.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kyler, I, I would like to officially make a motion outside of this policy just to say that we do approve the formal concern form and that it be put on the website for use.
For any use.
For any use.
Any concern.
Any concern.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, four to one. Okay, we're now into discussion items, the superintendent's proposed budget.
Okay, board members, at the January board meeting each year, I submit my proposed budget to you for consideration before you adopt your requested budget to the county in February. As you know, we start the budget planning process early, beginning in this, really in the summer. In the fall, we begin discussions with you and hold a budget work session in December to discuss projections and priorities. So Mr. Hartlove will be with us here in just a minute to walk you through a very few slides that outline the budget proposal. But first, I want to make some introductory remarks. So we're still about a week away from having clarity on our state funding for FY23. We're still assuming our estimate based on limited information available from DLS so far that will receive $6.6 million under the blueprint. As we've discussed, we're certain that the requirements under the blueprint will require all of that funding, if not more. As we look ahead until there's much more detailed guidance from the state on blueprint, we can assume at minimum that the blueprint funded while, the blueprint funds while well-received will all go to the requirements, and we must hope that it's sufficient just for that purpose. That means that for all other system needs and priorities, we need to look at local funding. At the local level, we know the county has $6.4 million for us in their five-year plan, and we're certainly grateful that they have an increase for us in their plan. We've also discussed all of our priorities, compensation for all our employees beyond just what's required by the blueprint, additional considerations we've talked about with bus contractors beyond the two point, the $2 million I've already committed following the committee's report. Other items that are a result or byproduct of the blueprint. And then there's all the priorities that we have discussed and gathered through community input and town halls and prior budget years, including additional help with security, student health, mental health, technology support, et cetera. Considering that entire picture has led me to conclude that we will require additional funding just to meet any one of these priorities. Therefore, as Mr. Hartlove will present here in just a minute, you're going to see, I'm recommending we request an additional $4 million in local ongoing revenue. Hopefully, as the presentation unfolds, my rationale for that request will be even clearer, and we can certainly discuss these items throughout the presentation. So with that, Mr. Hartlove.
Good evening, board members, Commissioner Weaver. So what you're going to see tonight is very similar to what we presented back in December at the work session. We don't have a lot of additional information, as the superintendent said in his opening remarks. But we have a little bit, we'll, we'll, I'll point out the places where we're a little, we're a little bit more refined than what we were, what we were back in December. So we start with state revenue, and this is the exact same slide from, from December. We don't have any additional information. But as, as Dr. Lockard mentioned, we, this, once the governor's budget comes out and we have a chance to digest it, when it comes out, it's kind of, it tends to be difficult to kind of really understand exactly what it means for Carol. By the end of this month, we should have a pretty good idea of what that revenue number is and also some of the, some of the requirements, where some of those dollars are being directed and what that means to us from a spending perspective. So when we come, the next time we meet is, I believe, February 2nd for the hearing and work session. Hopefully, we'll have an update, I, I believe we will have an updated state revenue figure at that time. So that will be very informative for discussion at that point. But at this point, we're going with a DLS estimate of 6.6 million. So I'm not going to spend too much time on that. Local revenue, this is a changed slide. The first bullet's the same, that's what's in there, in, in the county's ongoing plan, a $6.4 million increase in ongoing revenue. As the superintendent said in his opening remarks, we are, we're going to go forward with an additional $4 million. And you'll see how we, you know, we, we have several things that we have not, we don't have enough detail to actually say what they're going to cost yet. Employee negotiations are just starting. And, you know, improvements from, from the, that are required from the state, we don't know at this point. So we know we're going to have more needs than just $6 million. And that's basically why we, we decided to ask for additional dollars. And we'll talk about the, the items in a little bit more detail in a moment. So preliminary expenditures, this goes back to the September BOE meeting, the report that Mr. O'Neill did, the, from the Transportation Reimbursement Formula Committee. This, this basically puts all of those items that were agreed to in the budget. So, so that, and that's the same as, as what we had talked about back in December, 2.2 million. A little bit, a little bit of refinement here, inflationary impacts, these are, these are the things that we all deal with and even in our home lives. The, basically, what we mean by inflationary impacts is to, is to have those same benefits for our employees, the same insurance, levels of insurance for our, for our school system, pay our utility bills, et cetera, those types of things, just to kind of pay the increases on those items. It's approximately $2.3 million. Well, I have the detail of that in one and another slide in a moment. At the, at the, at the December work session, we estimated 2.5, so it's a little bit more refined. That number should be the one that sticks throughout the rest of the, of the bud, the budget process. The rest of these items are just carryforwards from December. The Title I, we talked about, the eSmart grant pickup, the, the additional square footage at the Career and Tech Center requiring, if we want to keep our same formula, our same formula of, of FTE to square footage, we need to add to FTE at the Career and Tech Center. This is another one straightforward, straightforward from December, 10, it's an additional 10K. This is part of the blueprint, the one requirement that we do have a very good handle on at this point. It's an additional, it's a 10K add-on for teachers who have or go and get their National Board certification. Just to, to be specific on that, we already, we already do have teachers who get the, who have National Board certification and receive, I believe they've received $5,000. So those folks would be getting an additional five. If you go out and get it and you're not currently getting the, the, a, an add-on, you would get $10,000. So it's a $10,000, it's not $10,000 in addition to the $5,000 that you're already getting, it's, it's $10,000 in total. And again, we still have the unknowns of, of other blueprint requirements for this upcoming year and the unknowns of, of, that we would typically have at this point in time with regards to salaries. So we talked about revenue earlier on, here are the specific dollar amounts. So we are looking at an ongoing increase from the county. We're requesting an ongoing increase in the superintendent's proposed operating budget of $10,404,540. That would take our total revenue request to the county to $215,22,400. And that represents about a 5% increase in revenue. State revenue, this is, we're going with that preliminary guidance. We are very, we're hopeful, you know, there's been a lot of discussion statewide as to what, what revenue we really are going to receive. We've, we've talked to some folks in Frederick and Washington County. They have a little bit more optimistic view of what we're going to be getting. So hopefully, they're right and we are wrong, and, and we get more than what this, than, than the 6.6. We're hopeful that this is a worst-case scenario, that we get an additional $6.6 million from the state. Total of almost $17 million in new revenue. Now we go back and we talk about the expenditures that we've identified already. The employee share, these are now the, the specific numbers, the employee share of, I'm sorry, the BOE share of employee benefits, 2.3 million approximately. Bus contractors, that's the same number from the earlier slide, 2.2 million. The Title I pickups comes, comes forward, the National Board certified teachers, eSmart pickup. Non-public placements, this is a new item, we did not have this in the superintendent's in the, in the work session discussion back in December. As we started looking more and more at the budget, we, we, we believe that we need to bump that number up because the trend is that the non-public placements, it's not the number of placements, but it's the cost of those placements. They are also looking at higher teacher salaries, and that, 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 of course, ripples into the cost of those non-public placements. That represents a 4% increase in non-public placements. So that is a new item. The custodians are just brought forward from December. Insurances, that detail is, is new, $92,569. The driver there is property and fire insurance, that has a fairly significant increase. The rest of our insurances are pretty level. So it's a total increase that we know of without the negotiations and without any other requirements from the blueprint. The expenditure increase that we're looking at is $6,876,104. So we bring it all together on this slide. And this slide is updated because we have the additional revenue, the $4 million additional in there for the county, the requested dollars from the county. You see a net available balance after we look at our increase, our, our estimated increase in revenues less our, our estimated increase in expenditures. The, the available balance is $10,121,856. Back in, in, at December's meeting, that was 6.1 million. We did not believe that 6.1 million was enough to cover employee salaries and negotiations costs, other blueprint requirements, and then any additional bus contractor request. It just, it just, we didn't feel that it was adequate enough, and to put it into perspective, if you look at our, just. you look at our, just our salary increase potential cost, a step for all of our employees is 5.2 million. So if we just gave everyone a step, that would use up most of the 6.1.
Chris, can I interject for a second? Thank you. Yeah, I mean, this is a really important point to make, which is why we're requesting those additional funds. There's 7.4 million of that $10 million right there, and that's, that's not close to some of the requirements that we have to reach. And so our concern is that while sure $10 million left over after those expenses sounds like a lot, we're the county's largest employer. And so you can see just from that slide right there that it doesn't go that far.
Right.
So I just want to make that point. I know, you know, when we're maybe looking at other aspects of needs and priorities, but when you're talking about thousands of employees, and we're a people business, that therein necessitates the, why we're making the request that we're making.
Right, right. So that's, you know, that I think kind of sums it up. That's why the request for the additional $4 million. So none of, these are just benchmarks. They're not, that's not, that's not, these are not negotiated figures. This is just to kind of give folks an idea of what things cost. So kind of switching gears here, this is just, we typically at these meetings just try to give you an update on where fund balance sits, and I'm happy to say that our fund balance is very, we're in a very healthy position. It's important to understand for folks, anyone who's not familiar with our budget, you know, fund balance is kind of like your savings account, you know, so, you know, these are not, this doesn't mean we have $15 million that we can spend every year, but what it means is, is we have 15.4 million in our account, in our rainy day fund for one day. Thank you, I think he said rainy day fund. It allows us to, to deal with any kind of contingencies or things like, you know, being in this pandemic, all the things that our employees have done, the one-time funds have, I think, been very useful in trying to recognize what our employees have done. It's a good use of the funding because it's not promised to be in your salary every year, but it's a way that we can recognize folks. It's also, we go back to the, I believe, the award of bids, we were talking about the infrastructure renewal project. Those are other types of things that we tend to use these dollars for, to put dollars there, so those are one-time uses as well. But we're, by the board policy DBDA, you need, we need to be between 1% floor and 5% max. We're at 4.33%, so we're right where we want to be. So that's, you know, I'm trying to be an optimistic person, you know, so I feel like with this, with, you know, the additional dollars from the state, which is more than what we've received in, you know, in many years, we're actually not in a bad place. We just have a lot of, we have dollars coming in, but we also have a lot of requirements for those dollars. So it's a, you know, it's a good news, bad news type of thing. So that's kind of, you know, it's not a lot of additional information because not a lot has changed since last month, but there is, I think we're right here at a moment where we're going to be getting the governor's budget, and that's going to be very informative. Hopefully, we come to you on February 2nd, and the state dollars are higher than what we have in this budget. So that's going to, so the next step really is February 2nd. We have another, we have a hearing, followed by a work session, and then at next month's board meeting, you will adopt, the Board of Ed will adopt your request to the county, your official request to the county for, in effect, revenue, what revenue you're ultimately going to ask for, and that should be a much more complete budget at that point in time because we'll have a lot better information. So that's, that's what we have today. Just a couple of things. The budget will be out on the board, out on the website immediately following the meeting, as will this presentation, and as soon as we get the governor's budget, we will be digesting that and tearing it apart and trying to figure out what it means for Carroll County Public Schools. That's it.
Mr. Hartlove, on a later note, first of all, you forgot our $100,000 new salaries in there, that should have been another half million from that bus driver. Number two.
Stop perpetuating that rumor, Martha.
Yeah, right. We need that 4 million. And number three, Mr. Stemms stood up there tonight and said, you know, that the Board of Education has not been caring for the school bus drivers. I've always been a proponent and a rah-rah person for the bus contractors. In fact, this whole board has, and he needs to be reminded, and everybody needs to be reminded, that all those bus contractors, they all got paid when they weren't working. And I don't appreciate when somebody comes up there and knocks us for not being concerned about someone when we really are concerned, and we still need to work on that. But I, you know, I just want to make sure that this board has voted unanimously the whole time through COVID for anything that the buses, bus contractors needed so far. We're still working on other things, but I just want to make sure that I've been a cheerleader the whole time for bus drivers, and everyone has voted yes every time for something for the bus contractor. So I wanted that to be corrected and that everybody knows it. So that was not a, that was not a true statement that we don't care.
And certainly, this budget is a significant, it's a 10% increase, so it's a significant commitment.
And it's a lot of money.
Any other questions on the budget?
Oh, I just wanted to kind of thank you for saying that, Ms. Herbert. I completely agree with you. I mean, I think the fact that we have the 2.2 million in there, right, we had the, we had the committee that we developed and listened to the recommendations from the contractors, and based on all of that, we do care. We gave bonuses to the drivers in the fall, we, or we give bonuses to the contractors to give to the drivers because the drivers are not our employees.
Boys, yes.
Right? So we did that, we had the committee, we took the recommendations, we've got the 2.2 million as a priority in our budget for the bus contractors. And wasn't there another element that we wanted to potentially discuss?
Yeah, and first off, to piggyback both of your comments, I think all the bargaining units, all of our employees and the bus contractors have gotten paid since COVID started, and it is hard to hear people get up at that mic, not you, and say, "We don't respect them and we don't care about them, and we spent a lot of money not caring about them." Now, as far as bus drivers, yes, there is bus driver shortage, there's other shortages. And Mr. O'Neill, tell me if I'm confused on this, which is 50/50. I would like to make a motion that we authorize the committee that's been set up with the bus contractors to negotiate a 5% increase in bus driver salary effective January 3rd through the end of the year, or a $1,000 bonus, which is similar to what Dr. Lockard has proposed for our employees, which may actually be more money in their pockets, and Mr. O'Neill, it's up to you to argue about a raise versus a bonus, and whether they want more or less money or whatever, that that's your option. But I want to put one qualification on it. If, while you're in the middle of negotiating this, there is a sick-out or a bus driver slowdown, or buses do anything to hurt us getting our valuable students to school, this proposal goes away. Would anybody like to second that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
So we're leaving it as an option between those two, and the costing isn't significantly different, right? And that would come from fund balance.
To get from January 3rd to July 1 would come from fund balance, and I think the point Mr. Kyler was making was when we costed out a 5% increase for that period of time, depending on the rate each contractor's paying, that's approximately $760, a little higher than that, in the driver's pocket, whereas a $1,000 bonus would be $1,000 in the driver's pocket, and since you're discussing something similar for employees, it made sense to have an option here. But then, I guess, for the contractors and the drivers they represent, there's the consideration of ongoing pay in base versus one-time pay for that half of the year, but it's within the, you know, the realm of fund balance to do that.
Ms. Herbert.
I just can't thank the bus drivers enough. I know they're having a heck of a time right now with COVID. Also, I appreciate every day that they get our children to school, and so I just want to make sure, and I could, we can't say anything, but we always have stuff in the making, and I definitely will vote yes on this.
Any other comments?
I'll just say that we certainly do value the drivers and the service that they provide, so I'm all for this as well.
Commissioner Weaver?
Just go ahead with your vote first. I'll make a comment on the budget in a minute.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Any other questions on the budget?
Yeah, now I'd like to. Okay, before I came over tonight, we have the requested budget for the next six years and the recommendations for the next six years for the two systems, and also then we get the superintendent's operating budget for this year. That's on, isn't it? Yeah, okay, I'm about to talk into it. Okay, so we have the recommendations, and I was just glancing through these roughly, and I think, Gary, you alluded to the prior adopted is 215 million projected in the future. No, that was adopted, and then the request is 408 million on that, which leaves us a deficit of about 165 million over the next six years to 2028. However, for this year, the good thing is, I look here, between the changes requested and adopted, it's only $11 million difference. So it's much smaller for this year than what we are dealing with. Now, I would suggest, we have a meeting coming up, I think, the 23rd, and it's a good thing we probably canceled that previous meeting, and that's right when we're starting our budget deliberations. So just have this information now, have your proposed budget. I think that needs to be a topic of discussion at that joint meeting to try to get to Dr. Lockard's $4 million increase here, and I don't know if that's in addition to the 11 million, or that's just 4 million in that, I haven't looked at all of these, because in this book, 200-some pages, the Board of Ed is about 12 pages. The rest of it is all the other requests the county has to deal with. So we'll have to spend some time reading and digesting and seeing where we are in this whole thing, but I think you need to make your point at a joint meeting, and you'll be here for that, I hope, and start to go through everything on that, and just explain to the Board of Commissioners the differences in what you're actually needing. I'll tell you, the bus service, the teachers, you have all good valid points. You don't have a bad point that you're making, however, money is only, there's only so much of it, and we have to do the best to divvy it out to all 200 pages in this book. So that's my only suggestion. And Kenny, you said I didn't talk much this meeting, so I'm trying to make up for it now. So, okay.
Commissioner Weaver, just to make, to be specific, in your plan that was passed last year, you have, I believe, $211,22,400 in for us. We've just bumped that up. Instead of it being 211, we've made it 215, is what we're requesting. So it's what's in your plan plus $4 million.
That was in '28, I was looking at, so.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, the bullying policy discussion, Dr. Lockard.
So, board members, Mr. Streeker will make his way to the podium. These changes are going to align board policy and our administrative regulation with the Maryland Model Policy, which is required under Maryland Education Code. So, Mr. Streeker.
Good evening, board members. Just want to go over a couple of things, I think I've got PowerPoint queued up. Move past the title slide. So in reviewing the bully policy regulation in alignment with the Maryland Model Policy that was just put out in December, a couple of updates we need to make. One addition, and then they're highlighted on the PowerPoint there, is that in consultation with Mr. O'Neill, we're adding a limitation of liability which exists in the new Maryland Model Policy, and we've aligned our definitions in the policy with the Model Policy to our regulation, and then also, our regulation and policy had some conflicting definitions within them. They didn't line up. So I made, in the proposed regulation and the proposed policy, all the definitions are identical. And then we also changed some victim, verbiage that's in the Model Policy, it's suggestion from victim to target. There's some research that supports, you know, when you identify somebody as a victim, there's a sense that minimizes the person instead of them being a target, because the target's more accurate, they might not, I guess, the connotation that goes with that. And then there's a procedural change. One of the things that, as I reviewed our current practice, and what we currently do is when a report is filed through the bullying system, we follow the same practice one way or the other, where it comes to interviewing the students, interviewing the victim, or the, I got to change my own words, the target, as well as the alleged perpetrator. We notify their parents. All those practices are in place. The one thing that's different in our current regulation is if it's not sent through a bullying report system, it's just handled, we handle it through the lens of school discipline, and we don't actually populate the bully reporting form. So the proposed regulation that I think is a more accurate reflection of what we would do to come in line with the Model Policy is that we would, when instances or occurrences come to the attention of school administration, and after they investigate, if they determine it's bullying, we would go ahead and put that information into the bullying reporting system. So just from a data alignment perspective, then we're more aligned and more, I think, more reflectively reporting our occurrences of bullying. A lot of things come to the attention of administrators that may be teasing, taunting, it might be a student-to-student conflict that might not be bullying, and again, if that comes to the administrator's attention, they're going to deal with it, but if after the investigation, they determine it's bullying, they would then put it in the form. If it comes to us through the form, regardless of if it's determined to be bullying or not, we still follow the process in the form, and that's kind of outlined by the requirements of what the policy, the Maryland Model Policy requires us to do.
May I ask a question, Mr. Streeker?
Sure.
So if I, as principal, would determine that, yes, this was a bullying incident, if I would go ahead then and fill out the form, would I contact the parent to let the parent know that I have designated it as a bullying incident and I'm now completing the bullying form?
Yes, that's a great clarification, Dr. Dors. As a matter of fact, I'm hoping you've already contacted the parent, right, as the principal, as it came to you, but you would notify them that at the outcome, you know, that most of these occurrences either are observed, you know, could be reported by students in general, they're reported by students, they're observed by staff, or they're reported by families. So when that information comes to us, we would, you know, let's say a student reported something happened to them. As we're investigating, when we were finished, we always notify, good practice is always notify the parent regardless of what the issue is, that their child was involved in the situation, and if we determined it to be bullying, we would certainly let the parent know that we've determined it to be bullying, and we're going to go ahead and follow up in our policy. And it's, we're doing that now, we're just not recording it that way. So, I mean, I could walk through the definitions part, but... but I mean, the changes themselves are outlined in the policy and reg. So I guess my preference would take questions that you might have about the changes, rather than read you eight pages at 10:30 at night. Unless you'd like to hear me read, I can also, I could try to rap or beatbox or something like that. You never know what you're going to get.
Doesn't matter.
Start at the end and come this way, because now she's up.
So how does this specifically apply to cyberbullying or bullying done online? Because I've heard from students that the way it's currently done, oftentimes if it's not done on school grounds and they report to an administrator, the administrator doesn't really take any disciplinary actions because it wasn't done on school grounds.
That's, whenever there's bullying, whether it's in-person, that's outlined in the regulation. Whether, and that's not, this is not new to us. So I think it's important, I think, appreciate the clarification. If there's a nexus to school or causes a substantial disruption to the school, it is something we address. So if a student is a victim of cyberbullying that happens at 8 o'clock at night, then we do address it. One of the challenges that we have, of course, is that we don't have the control over 8 o'clock at night. But then what we do do is put supportive measures in place at school to support the target and also, you know, try to inform and, you know, apply consequences to the student. But one of the challenges, the consequences we have when it doesn't happen within our purview, those can be hindered through that, but we certainly do address those issues if there's a nexus to school.
And are the same sort of disciplinary consequences offered that would occur in a normal bullying situation? That would occur at school?
Yes. I mean, we have the authority to suspend a student for a disciplinary action that happens off school campus. That, I mean, suspension, I go there because that's our ultimate, you know, consequence. We do have the authority to suspend a student for a bullying or harassment issue that happens outside the school day. It wouldn't be the first thing we do, but as we work through the lens of progressive discipline, if that continued and it has a substantial impact to the school, and clearly to a student, we have the authority to do that.
All right, thank you.
And thanks, I appreciate the answer to that, because I had a very similar question when I was reading the definition where it says, you know, under bullying, harassment, intimidation, it says it occurs on school property, at a school activity event, or on a school bus, but then goes on to talk about cyberbullying. So I appreciate the understanding that you do actually have the authority to have the same disciplinary actions or investigation, or, you know, things go on if it's off of school property through cyberbullying. The, one of the things that I noticed was that, so I actually went and printed out the reg, and the reporting requirements are pretty specific. Do we have this covered, the ability to be able to respond to the?
We're doing that now.
Okay.
Yes.
In terms of, like, reporting on all the specific information and, there's also stuff in here.
The follow-through with the victim, after 10 days, we follow through with the, currently the reported as victim, the target, as well as the alleged perpetrator that happens within 10 days. And then follow-up with the target after, 20 days after that. So that's currently in practice.
Okay, okay. And this is just meant to, because I was thinking about it, this is really just meant to be student-on-student bullying, correct?
It is, just by the title alone, it's student bullying, harassment, intimidation, discrimination, hazing.
Right, so, but it's just student-on-student, right? Like, you could technically have student-on-teacher bullying in the high schools and things like that.
We would be addressing that. I mean, typically, that would be, that could be construed as bullying, if the student is bullying. But most often, that's classified under disrespect when it becomes a staff issue.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And the one thing that I really didn't understand was the limitations of liability section.
Sure.
Can you help me understand what the purpose of that is?
I think, Mr. Mealy, do you want to take that?
Well, that is verbatim from Section 7-424.1. And we did not have that in the earlier rendition, but it is now in the Model Policy, and so it was included this time around. And as it states, if a school employee makes the appropriate report, that employee is not going to be held liable in the event of subsequent legal action that may be brought for, hypothetically, say, well, you covered this, but you didn't cover that. And so I'm bringing a suit against you for this. What it also provides, however, is that while there's no liability for an employee, it doesn't limit the right of a parent or a student to bring legal action. They always have that right. And so the way that works out is, if they bring a legal action arising out of a bullying issue, and there is, for whatever reason, some element of negligence on the part of the employee, the Board of Ed would be liable for that negligence, but not the employee individually. So I think that the reason why the Model Policy has that language in there, and I believe, as we discussed in going over this, this is kind of an assurance both to employees and to parents and students that while the employee doesn't risk liability for complying with the board policy and the administrative regulation, and conversely, the student or the student's parents do have recourse under law if something wasn't done properly and there's harm as a result. So that's the reason why it's there.
I do want to point, the question about substantially disruption, that's actually on, it's page 2 of 8 of the regulation, it's in the middle. And it is an addition, but it's been our operational practice for some time. But it is now added specifically, the "or" that substantially disrupts the orderly operation of a school. In the middle of, again, regulation, page 2 of 8.
I'm good.
I'm good.
And I should probably know this, but this update has been required by the state with a pretty tight timeframe that seems like a lot of the jurisdictions are throwing their arms up and saying it's impossible, but you guys are complying. Or you'll comply with an unapproved copy, or we're okay, right?
We're, I mean, we've, I've been in consultation with MSDE folks, and by getting it here this evening, and one of the other things I want to make clear, this regulation and policy would go into effect in the 22-23 school year. So we stay operationally the same. Part of that's because of the data collection aspect that goes along with it. The state provides every five years, another change that's made is that we're going to review this every five years instead of every three years. And the reason for that is because the state, in the state statute, it says it needs to be reviewed every five years. So the state has an obligation to update their policy, their Model Policy, every five years. And then in turn, we have the same obligation. And they're, like everybody else with the impact of COVID, you know, things are a little bit behind. There are a couple of months later, and they're, we're supposed to have this done by January 1, but they're also supposed to have theirs finished by September 1. We got it mid-December, so we're accelerating through. And there's some other aspects that we have to, if you go to the next slide, that might help outline some of those, Mr. Kyler. Another, other provisions that are included in the Model Policy requirement is that we do need to gather input from stakeholders in general. So not, you know, this is step one of that, to present it to you all in our draft. We'll be visiting with the CCSGA, CAC, as it's outlined. We'll go to Teacher Advisory Council, County Council PTAs, and also community members through the lens of public feedback. So we, we need to get feedback on the revisions and consider them as we go through. And one of the reasons, one of the places that that's most of it is that we have definitions in our policy that do not exist in the state policy. Like hazing, discrimination do not exist in the state policy. So that was born out of years prior. That was a concern that the community had that were then added. So we're allowed to add to, but we can't take away from.
Any more questions?
Mr. Kyler, we had talked about, so we knew that we were going to be reviewing this policy, and we had talked about trying to get input from the CAC potentially.
Yes.
On this policy. So is there, is there time to do that with the next CAC meeting?
I'm on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're going to report on that in a couple of minutes.
Oh, perfect.
Yep, good question.
Already set up, that's a good setup.
Good question. No more questions on this? Then the next discussion item is student enrollment and attendance policy. Dr. Lockard?
Oh, you can stay right there and...
I could get some steps in, I might wrap this one, you never know. So let me share the update with this, is, this is in alignment with Maryland law that passed. It's, really their alignment is because of the situation that happened in another jurisdiction where a registered sex offender was enrolled in school. And the law changed this summer that we don't permit registered sex offenders to enroll in school. Their only option is home instruction or specified, different locations, but not in the public school. So the, what you have in front of you is, the only change we made, the guidelines, and I bolded the change because it's already all in caps, is Maryland Senate Bill 515, which passed this summer, which is the legislative decision about that. And then in the regulation, where it's probably more the meat, is where we outline the changes of, in letter C, an eligible student who's a registered sex offender and where they can receive an education. And I think the most important thing to communicate to the community is they would not be in one of our public schools.
I agree.
Mr. Vigni.
So, Mr. Streeker, under that Section C on page 2 of the policy, so it says that they may receive an education in any of the following locations. So under number 3, it is a non, it's listed as a non-public educational program. Like, do they, do they get a choice? I mean, non-public can be very, very expensive.
When, they don't get a choice, we could be in a situation, I think conceivably, where we can have a student that has a disability, that needs services that cannot be met through the other provisions here. That would be the place, I have not experienced that, I don't think that's something we encounter very often. That would be the place where I see that that could happen.
Okay, okay, so it's not really a choice, it's just you, we determine what the best
Right.
option is for a given situation.
Correct, and any non-public, any non-public placement through the lens of special education is an IEP team decision. So that would be through the lens, through the IEP team. So conceivably, if we had a student who's on the register, on the sex offender registry, and had an IEP, and we were meeting to see how we would provide their services through home instruction, and conceivably, we couldn't provide those services. Then the IEP team would have to convene to determine how they could provide those services and where they would be, and one of those options possibly could be a non-public setting, as this is written. That's my understanding of it. Certainly, if we encountered that, I would be consulting, you know, with Ed and his team to make sure that that's how we go. And really, Nick's team, Special Ed, would be navigating that part. But that's how I understand that part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's search update. All Board members have signed confidentiality agreements for this process. We want to be as transparent as possible, but within those guidelines. We started by looking at possibilities for a consultant to conduct the search. On December 8th, our last board meeting, the Board approved a professional services contract with the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, MAB, to conduct the search. We met with MAB virtually on December 21st and have a face-to-face meeting with them scheduled for January 26th, 2022. We also seek community and stakeholder input. There is a survey on our website, it can be completed online or in hard copy. And what it says on our website. The Board of Education is looking for broad input as it undertakes this important process. As a stakeholder, your anonymous response will be used throughout the hiring process. If you are completing a hard copy of this survey, please use the back of the paper if more room is required. Responses will be accepted until Tuesday, January 18th, 2022 at 5:00 PM. And we will include an update on this process at every regular meeting. Board members, any comments?
Mr. Kyler, I did want to comment on, there was, one of the folks from Citizen Participation had made a comment about how there's no kind of controls over the survey and how many people can fill it out, and you could fill it, whether you need to live in Carroll County, or, you know, if you fill it out 25, each person fills it out 25 times. There's no controls on that, but I don't think, I just wanted to kind of address that as part of this discussion. I don't think that's really necessary, right? I mean, we're trying to, it doesn't make sense for somebody to fill out the survey 25 times. It's not like we're taking, it's not like a majority wins on what the characteristics is. We're trying to get the totality of what people think would be good to have.
Yeah.
Right, like, it's not like, okay, well, if 500 people say this, you know, and, but 200 people say the opposite, right? That the 500 wins, like, that's not, that's not it. We're just trying to understand the totality of the feedback and input that people want to have, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, okay.
Yep, I agree. Any other comments? Okay, Community Advisory Council update, Ms. Pataglia.
The next meeting will be next Thursday at 7:00 PM here in the boardroom. Topics on the agenda include an update on the bullying policy, feedback on the new recovery plan, and COVID-19-related updates. And this is from the one that we had rescheduled from December for some of the conversations we had last month.
Any questions, comments? Unfinished business or new business? Does anyone have any new business?
Just real quick, 4H signups are up on the website. If you want to join 4H, contact Maryland Agriculture Center and Ex-Enver Carroll County.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to follow up on the questions from outdoor school, because we did talk about that at the end of last month's meeting, and we had one person with Citizen Participation tonight, just trying to understand if there is an expectation. I know we said we were going to try to get outdoor school back to an overnight program as soon as possible. Wanted to see if there are any expectations for that.
And I think there may be a concern in the other direction, that if we get too short, can we even do it? But is that correct?
That's correct. At this point, as you already know, we had to take the evening nurse and the overnight nurse positions from outdoor school just to keep our school staffed during the day. And every time we hire new, every time nurses leave and we hire new, others leave, or we have others on COVID isolation or quarantine. So we've really been struggling with our nurse workforce. You know, we're at the point now where we have moved nurses around to fill in the gaps so much that even schools that are supposed to have two nurses, right now may only have one nurse, because we took their second nurse to keep another building open. So if things get worse as far as nurses getting COVID or being out, we could have to take the daytime nurse from outdoor school and postpone outdoor school for a while until we get our nurse workforce back and running. So we hope to not have to do that, but that's where we are at this point. And if we were to have outdoor school be an overnight experience right now, we would have to close two schools during the day in order to take two nurses to put them back at outdoor school in order to have the overnight experience.
And I understand, I mean, this is, kids look forward to this like they do homecoming and prom and outdoor graduations and everything we've been through, and it's tough. But, and I wanted to make sure, if anybody's still listening, that it could even go by the wayside. I mean, it's that tight right now for nurses, and it's a shame, but it's the facts.
That's one of the reasons why we were trying to talk about what would alleviate some of the stress on the nurses.
Yep.
And again, it's such a wonderful program, as we had shared at the one meeting.
And again, it's such a wonderful program, as we had shared at the, the one meeting, that again, I know everybody really wants their, their children to really be able to take full advantage of the outdoor school, and it would be great if we could offer it at this point, but with what you're sharing, you know, it's not possible at this time. So, again, it's not that we don't want to have it available to the students, because, you know, they remember that experience as sixth graders, they remember that for the rest of their lives.
Okay. Anything else?
I wanna start on a new topic, but I just wanna acknowledge our teachers and the fact that teacher burnout is a very real thing happening right now. And I know that many of them are hanging on by a thread. So, what are we sort of doing to help alleviate some of their stress in the upcoming months because of the compounding of the last two years?
Well, one of the things we've been trying to do all year long is not put any more on their plates and pause as much of the things that aren't a mandate or a requirement from the state for us to do in terms of, you know, professional development and, and the like. I know that our principals, where they can, they're trying to find ways in which they can get creative, and maybe it's, I've seen, I've been in some schools where they've had some, some rotations where some other people have covered, while teachers get a little bit of additional time. That's not everywhere, and that's not uniform, but I know we're looking for things like that to do, not put more on their plate. You heard of, a monetary incentive this evening that I've proposed. You know, we're trying to provide as much support out to schools as we can to, to alleviate some of the, some of the issues as well. And I'll tell you, Devanchi, I appreciate you recognizing that. We've recognized it all along, and we wish we had some sort of magic, something to, to make a lot of that stress and a lot of those, those things that are really impacting folks less. I think, I think the more routine we stay, the longer we stay in our routine, the more consistent school is, it, it will get better. But I know how challenging that is. I know what our teachers are dealing with, and our administrators, and our staffs, because of the inconsistencies we've experienced over the last two years. So, it's easy, I know it's easy for me to sit here and say, oh, we just gotta stay in school longer. That's not really what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, it's taking us a while to get back to that consistent, day-to-day approach that we've known for so long and kinda took for granted, I guess, until something like this comes along. So, we're trying, as a system, to, to keep taking things off plates instead of trying to add them to it. And I, we heard tonight, there's, there seems like there's always a new change in guidance or a new whatever. We, we're trying to disseminate as much of that as we can for folks. And like I said, in the meantime, yes, there are some requirements that we have to fulfill, but we're trying to do everything we can to make, to make our teachers' lives just focused on their kids and not a ton of extra that, that sometimes we as school systems inadvertently do.
I think we're also hoping that the changes that we made to the quarantining tonight will help as well.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. You're right, Ms. Sivigni, when a teacher's responsible for, oh, somebody's not gonna be here for X number of days, and I gotta try to keep them caught up. Again, it's that, that consistency that I'm talking of, that we just haven't been in that, in that groove for a while. And I know, you know, I know when I talk to my colleagues around the state, that this is an issue that everybody is, is wrestling with. Doesn't make it any better, but I, I know that, that folks are struggling, and, and that's real.
And, and I think you guys have done a great job of trying to lessen the load on them without sacrificing student time in school. And, and I, I don't understand some of the other counties, and fortunately don't have to, but you said consistency about 12 times in what you just said, and when you take a day off or you do something that's inconsistent, you're, you're not helping that case, I don't think. And, and I think, like I say, you guys have done a lot to, to try to help the teachers, 'cause they've got a tough job, the nurses, everybody right now, but without sacrificing consistency and students in school. And, and I think the state, the State Health Department, they're all pushing keep kids in school. I heard one say the other day, "It's so easy to stop school. It's very hard then to restart it." And, and I think that's back to the consistency you're referring to. So, good job, keep it up. Any more comments, questions? Okay. 6:00 PM Wednesday, February 2nd, we have an operating budget hearing followed by a work session here. 5:00 PM Wednesday, February 9th, we have a board meeting with Citizen Participation here. And Wednesday, February 23rd, the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners have a joint meeting also here. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some have.
We did not miss a beat on that.
I've gotta make one point for the, the ladies I work with. It's almost comfortable sitting here, because you guys never let me make a motion. So, here, I just let you guys do it, and it's okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Excuse me, we're returning to closed session.
Returning to closed.
Yes.
Yes.